Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. I want to go ahead and just do some quick remarks. Thanking everyone for being here tonight, whether you're here in person or you're watching the livestream on YouTube or joining us through Zoom to provide public comment. This is the first time, as many of you know, while City Hall is undergoing important upgrades, we've temporarily relocated here. But for the first time, we've been able to restore the Zoom capability and participation option in this space. So bringing this capacity back in a new setting has been no easy feat, as you can imagine, and I just want to thank our staff for their hard work in making it possible. It reflects our commitment to making our meetings accessible and inclusive as possible as they can be, no matter where we meet. So for anyone joining us remotely tonight, please know that the full meeting, including presentation materials, can be viewed on our YouTube channel, and those wishing to speak during public comments should use the Zoom to participate. And because this is our first time running Zoom from this location, we are testing the technology. It might not be perfect, and while we hope everything does run smoothly, I do hope that people can have some grace for this process. And if we do experience any technical difficulty with Zoom, the meeting will continue here in person and on YouTube, and members of the public will still be able to watch the full meeting on livestream. So I appreciate your patience as we reintroduce this participation option, and I'm grateful to see so many of you here tonight and engaged tonight. So thank you for joining us. And with that, Mr. City Clerk, I'll go ahead and call this regular session to order, and if you can do roll call, please.
Councilmember Duran?
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Manganay is here. Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
Councilmember Campos?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Here.
And Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Here.
Seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilmember Schumacher, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
If I could ask everybody to rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and start with special presentations and announcements. September is Suicide Prevention Month, time to raise awareness about suicide as a critical public health issue affecting individuals, families, and communities. Every life lost to suicide leaves a lasting impact on loved ones, workplaces, schools, and our whole community. Reducing the stigma around mental health is essential so that those who are struggling feel safe in seeking the help they need. Locally, Ventura County Behavioral Health is funding free suicide prevention trainings through the Mental Health Services Act, MHSA. These evidence-based programs empower community members to step in and speak up and save lives. And tonight, the city of Ventura reaffirms its commitment to promoting mental health and well-being for all of our residents. By issuing this proclamation, we honor those we have lost, support those who are struggling, and commit to building a compassionate, informed, and resilient community. And now, I, Dr. Jeanette Sanchez Palacios, Mayor of the city of San Bueno Ventura, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of San Bueno Ventura. And I'd like to invite Maya Zumaia to accept the proclamation. Maya, are you here? Oh, there you are. And we'll do a quick photo. If you want to share a few words, you're more than welcome to.
My glasses are here. A heartfelt thank you to the city of Ventura for presenting me with the suicide proclamation. It goes without saying that so many in our community are walking through trying times, and this recognition reminds us of how vital it is to come together. We all have a role to play in saving lives, so please take advantage of the free suicide prevention trainings. I have witnessed lives being saved through individuals who have taken the time to take this training. Special thank you to the Ventura Police Explorers for hosting a training, and I would just compel all of you to take the time and take this training. There are one-hour classes, three-and-a-half-hour classes if you want more skills, but we are doing lifesaving work in this public health crisis of suicide. So if anybody is interested, my email is mzhopeforlife@gmail.com. Thank you. If we can all come together to save lives, I really appreciate you guys putting this on the agenda today. Thank you.
Our next special presentation is the Recognition of National Hispanic or Latino Heritage Month. Each year from September 15th through October 15th, we celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to honor the history, culture, and countless contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities across our country and right here in Ventura. And last night, for the first time, is my understanding, we were able to kick off Mexican Independence Day and celebrate Hispanic Latino Heritage Month at City Hall, and we had different representatives from throughout the county cities. We had mayors, we had councilmembers, school board members, supervisors, and it just, I think it showed the openness and willingness that here in Ventura, we have as a community to embrace everyone from different backgrounds and from different places. And so this year's national theme, collective heritage, honoring the past and inspiring the future, calls us to reflect on the legacy of our ancestors while empowering the next generation to dream even bigger. And as a proud Latina, I'm especially honored to have been able to help kick off this month's celebration. And so tonight, I wanted to highlight Latino Outdoors Ventura, whose work beautifully embodies this spirit. They connect our community to the outdoors, creating welcoming spaces where Latino youth and families can explore, lead, and see themselves reflected in nature. By fostering belonging in outdoor spaces, they are inspiring future leaders and strengthening cultural pride. We thank them for the dedication for opening the doors to our natural beauty that surrounds us and for showing up and for showing that our heritage thrives not only in our traditions, but also in our stewardship of the land. And so now, I, Dr. Jeanette Sanchez Palacios, Mayor of the city of San Bueno Ventura, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of San Bueno Ventura. Thank you for that. And they're not here, unfortunately, but wanted to honor them. Thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and move on to our closed session report. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, the council took up all six items on the closed session agenda, and then on item six, the mayor accused due to a conflict, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you for that. On to City Council Communications. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, I got to join a variety of members of the Community Development Department for the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund Dinner in Moore Park. Underwood Farms hosted us. It's a great organization that's trying to bring affordable housing to Ventura County. It was their capital raise event, and I just wanted to thank the staff for being there and supporting a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Manganay?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been going to so many wonderful events. The Botanical Gardens had their fundraiser, the Museum of Ventura County had their Taste of History event, and I was just really thrilled to, and it always reminds me whenever I go to these events of how many people care about the wonderful organizations and gems that we have in this in this city, and just so lucky to have that for all of our families here. And so please continue to support those organizations that make our city great. Also, I want to applaud Ventura Pop for their block party last Sunday. I attended for a few minutes before going to the Botanical Gardens event, and I saw musicians that I've never seen before, families enjoying the whole day, businesses with their doors wide open. It was just a lot of fun, and I hope that, you know, just that there was a lot of work that was put for that event, and I just want to applaud those organizers that put all of that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Manganay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to let the community know that this Thursday, 7:00 PM, at Ventura County Credit Union on Vista del Mar, Alessandro Drive, Pierpont Bay Community Council will have its monthly meeting. I'll be giving a council update. And two weekends ago, I had the pleasure of attending the Ventura City Firefighters Association 9/11 Memorial Stair Climb. I was accompanied by two members of the city manager's executive staff. I'm proud to report that I beat one of them in the race. I won't tell you which one I beat, but I did beat one. So, but it was a great event. There was 175 participants, I was told. They had to cut everyone off. So if you hear about this event next year, give it a shot. It is tough. It's hard. But I will tell you, 11 flights of stairs at the Crown Plaza. The last four flights or so, you see these firefighters in full gear, carrying tanks. I mean, these guys are as fit a human beings as you'll see, and they're dying. I mean, they're they're like struggling every step. So for me, I kept seeing these guys, and I think, like, I mean, I can't complain, right? You can't complain when you see these guys. So it was a great event. So next year, I hope everyone can attend. There was a big event out front, so even if you don't want to do the stair climb, you could still go donate to the association, and it's an awesome thing happening.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter?
Thank you, Mayor. I have slides up. Are they, Michael, are the slides on here, too? Ah, okay. So you'll have to kind of read them. I can't completely. This picture we have here is a discussion about the Ventura Connects app for your phones. Recently, I've been getting more and more emails to tell me about problems that people see in the city. This app, which works on iPhones or Androids, either one, is very simple to use. Any any resident, anyone coming across an obstacle or something needing repair, can report it through this app, Ventura Connects. You can add pictures, if you have a picture of whatever the problem is, and when you submit it, if you want to be anonymous, you can, or you can put your email or text number, and the city will let you know the status of that. So it's it's a lot easier than having the middleman of me or my fellow council members. And this directs the request right to the department where it belongs. Next slide, please. So the Art Walk is coming up, September 27th and 28th. We will have another meeting about it, but I got about four emails asking me to tell you about it tonight. So here it is. They have a website, artwalkventura.org, where you can see the map and all the venues. It's primarily the downtown and west side, but everybody is welcome. Please come in and participate. Next slide. Today is Mexican Independence Day. Also, it's appropriate that we declared Latin Heritage Month, but today is also Mexican Independence Day, and I know a lot of people who would normally come to council meetings are not here to participate, so we want to celebrate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter, followed by Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to share that I was able to get away and go meet some good friends of mine overseas and see our French exchange student that very much enriched her life six years ago, and to see how he's prospering in France with his girlfriend. And and just getting away sometimes, just seeing different places. Of course, there's so much beauty out there and so many neat people to meet and share memories with or make memories for, but coming home is always a blessing. It absolutely is. I mean, we do live in paradise, and we have a very passionate, engaged community. And seeing all the people involved in so many things, from the meetings that I know I attend, like Beacon, trying to protect and deal what we can for beach erosion and control and moving forward, which we were having a meeting this Friday, by the way, to we'll be hearing the State of the City address on the 18th, all about what's going on in our city, given by our mayor. And then we also have looking at our assets and things that we could do to help create the best future for our community. The parking garage at the beach, we had gone out last year to get a request for interest on what people might want to do on that site. And I will be hearing that for the first time, just to hear what that interest is on the 25th and Econo Development Meeting at 3:30 here at City Hall. Along with that, like Councilmember Schumacher, attending the Botanical Gardens is especially near and dear to me as a founding member and a landscaper of most my life. What is what all those volunteers are doing and what they're creating for the future of the city and for enjoyment today in community building is just phenomenal. If you hadn't been up there, it's, I think, about 140,000 plants planted there. On one sad note, in a way, is I sit on the Ventura College Foundation, and after a very good meeting, unfortunately, the president of Ventura College resigned, and other things transpired that day that led to that. And I think you probably know her. It's Claudia Habib. And she has been quite an inspiration and somebody that shares the passion for our community and has offered so much from a, at a very trying time for higher education. So it was a real disappointment last night to hear that she suddenly resigned from that position. So I just want to share that that disappointment, that we lost a great opportunity for whatever reason, and we need to move forward. And finally, I guess that's probably pretty much about it. So it's good to be here tonight, and great to see so many of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, tonight, I come with a heavy heart to speak about the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk, a loss that has shaken our nation. Charlie was more than a commentator or political activist. He was a man of faith, a husband, the father of a young family. His voice was one that challenged people to think, to engage, and to speak out about what they believed, whether or not one agreed with his views. His courage to stand publicly for his convictions is something we can all respect. This murder is a sobering reminder that violence is never the answer. Shooting a person because of their political views, their race, their religion, or any other difference is not only wrong, it's a direct attack on the very foundation of a free and civil society. Scripture tells us in Romans 1221, "Do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." That is our call tonight, to choose good over evil, peace over violence, dialogue over division. In just the past month, dozens of people have been killed across this country in politically or hate-motivated violence. This cannot become our new normal. Hatred because of our differences must stop. So tonight, I propose that we close this meeting in memory of Charlie Kirk to honor his life.
Hey, I'm sorry. Please, 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 can we keep the quorum? Thank you. Keep the quorum.
I propose that we close this meeting in honor and in memory of Charlie Kirk to honor his life.
Thank you. Please, please, please.
To honor his life, his faith, and his family, and to make a clear statement that in our city, our county, and our community, we will stand together against senseless murders and acts of hate. We must not let violence win. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duran. And while I hear your words and your request, I cannot adjourn in memory of this individual who unfortunately, please, please hold, hold your applause, please. Unfortunately, the individual is best known for promoting divisive rhetoric and attacking Unfortunately, the individual is best known for promoting divisive rhetoric and attacks on our vulnerable groups. And out of respect for the tradition of honoring those who uplift rather than divide, I will not be adjourning in his memory tonight. Thank you. Can can we please hold the applause? Usually, we do the sign language to keep the quorum and keep the meeting moving. So at this time, I'd like to move on on with our agenda and move to city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excited to announce and remind everyone that we have our State of the City event tomorrow afternoon. This is a little different this year. It will be at City Hall, starting at 4:00 PM with a street festival, cha-cha truck, some music and dancing, and then followed by a presentation on the steps of City Hall by the mayor at 6:00 PM, delivering our State of the City. There will be materials in English and Spanish available, and there's more information available on the city's website. This Saturday, September 20th, is our Coastal Cleanup. There is still an opportunity for you to sign up if you're interested in making Ventura's coast just a little bit more beautiful. You can visit vcoastcleanup.org to learn more and to participate. We will have a city team down on the promenade, and we will be making it spick and span. So I hope to see you there. And after more than nearly five years of public input and engagement and discussions, we're approaching the last two opportunities for public input on our general plan. On Wednesday, September 24th, there will be a Planning Commission, a general plan adoption meeting from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. That will be in the community meeting room at City Hall. And then on Tuesday, October 21st, right here in this room, there will be a city council general plan adoption meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Documents, materials, and details are available for your review on the city's website. And our next meetings of the city council will be on September 23rd, and then we'll have three meetings in October on the 7th, 14th, and 21st. That concludes my remarks, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to our public communications portion of this agenda. And as I was saying earlier, this portion of the public communications is where members of the public can speak on any city, any city related topic that is not listed on our agenda tonight. And in order to keep the quorum and ensure inclusivity and respectfulness, I do ask folks to use the American Sign Language, sign for applause, which is raising your hands and twisting them in the air, instead of the actual applause. And so please note that under the Brown Act, the city council cannot discuss, deliberate, or take any action on the items that are raised during this public communications portion. The initial public communications period is limited to the first 20 speakers, with priority given to in-person participants. And if you wish to speak, please sign up now, either with the clerk or by using the raised hand feature if you are joining us virtually. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public speakers for this portion?
Thank you, Mayor. We have five speakers for general public comment.
Okay. And if it's, and since it's fewer than 10, they'll each get three minutes to speak. So if you can please call the first speaker, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment now.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a reminder to our speakers to speak very clearly into the microphone. And if I could have you, if you have a seat next to you, if you could raise your hand for the folks in the back, feel free to come in and take a seat for those that are available. So again, if you have an open seat next to you, feel free, raise your hand. And folks in the back, feel free to to grab a seat. Our first speaker this evening is John Sanders Jones, followed by John Gleason.
Good evening, councilmembers and fellow community members. Tonight, I'd like to revisit a message I originally shared back on social media back in 2017. I may have echoed these sentiments in previous remarks before the council. While Facebook has done a better job of reserving my written words than I have my spoken ones, the heart of the message remains unchanged and is perhaps even more urgent today when I first wrote it. I am a dreamer. I dream that Congress will work together alongside and one another to come up with an improved DACA, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program. I dream that our nation will recognize and appreciate the value of every human life without exception or prerequisite or condition. I dream that each and every one of us will work harder to empathize with those with different viewpoints. I dream that I may grow when I acknowledge my failings and shortcomings. I dream that I may find greater beauty hidden in the plain and simple. I dream that I will be ever more grateful and thankful for all that I am blessed with. Today, in 2025, I'm still a dreamer. I dream that we may speak with intention and integrity, guided by Socrates' three timeless filters. Is it true? Is it kind? Is it necessary? I dream that in moments of grief, division, and uncertainty, we choose words that heal rather than harm, that we pause before we speak, not out of fear, but out of respect for one another's humanity. I dream that our conversations reflect the same empathy, gratitude, and growth I hoped for years ago, that even in the face of tragedy, we remain committed to truth, compassion, and purpose.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Gleason. Again, while John comes up, if you have an open seat, go ahead and raise your hand for the folks in the back. Raise your hand if you have an open seat. John Gleason, followed by Barbara Brown.
On first Sundays, I've been trying to go to Dudley Museum, and their elevator is not working. And they're not sure when it's going to get fixed, so they could have more visitors, because there's a lot of stairs that other people can't do. So, thank you.
Next speaker, Barbara Brown, followed by Wendy Chato.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Brown, and I am here to welcome you all to the college area, our city council, our city staff, and everybody in the audience. I know most of you in the audience tonight are here for Main Street Moves, which is an important and significant topic of interest for everyone. But I'll bet most of you don't come to city council meetings regularly. It's a jaunt across town at night, after work, but you still want to be as informed as possible, and that's where community councils come in. There are five community councils in the city where you can learn more about what's going on. The College Area Community Council is an organization designed as a conduit between the city and our community to create community connection and opportunities for neighborhood problem solving. For example, as fire season approaches on September 24th, speakers from Firewise will present an important but humorously titled presentation, "How to Burn Down Your House." It is a fun way to learn the serious steps needed for home fire prevention. We'll talk about the significant increases in fire insurance. Ventura Police Department will provide crime stats for this area. Ventura College will talk about its exciting 100th anniversary celebratory events, and our Ventura Unified School District trustees will share some of the current but significant challenges our school system is facing. If you live or have a business in the college area, from the hillside to the 126 freeway, from Mills to Hill Street, you are welcome to attend our monthly meetings on the fourth Wednesday of the month. Our Zoom link is on our website at cacventura.com. Each month, we have a city council member from our district come and speak. Ryan Schumacher and Doug Halter speak every month, and they will continue to speak to you and share with you all of the news going on with the city when you can't attend these meetings. Thank you.
Wendy Chato, followed by our final speaker, Casey Rodriguez.
My name is Wendy Chato, and I have major concerns about the sidewalks in Ventura. They're lifted. And on my way here tonight, I was on Ashwood and Telegraph, and there's an area where they put asphalt, but it's not hard enough, and I got stuck. I had to call the 911 to get help getting out, and the police came out. And I very much appreciate them for coming out. But when I, when I can't get out, I'm frustrated. And I think some of the sidewalks, like on Telephone by the bus stop on Victorian Telephone, it is so high that I feel like I'm going to fall. And also, the one on on the opposite side by Phil, they're both too high, and my wheels in the front lift, and then I fall forward because it's too high. And there is a lot of sidewalks exactly like that. I would, and I've contacted on the app, Ventura Connects, and they don't respond, or they say, oh, it'll be a couple weeks, and then it doesn't happen, or it's months and months. And this started in, when I've reported them, they've been in in July. So it's really frustrating for people with walkers and for wheelchairs to get the, to through certain areas. I will not go that way, and it takes longer to get home or wherever I need to go. So if they can get fixed, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Casey Rodriguez. And one more time, if you don't mind, raise your hand if you have an open seat next to you. For the folks in the back, feel free to take a seat.
Tonight, I acknowledge my privilege to stand here when many neighbors are afraid to leave their houses. As a Ventura Art and Culture Commissioner, speaking for myself tonight, I have been championing for better, genuine recognition of each Heritage Month of the year. Happy National Hispanic Month, as well as Happy Mexican Independence Day, a day where we remember and celebrate the fact that Mexicans are resilient and will continue to be so. Today, I want to say I truly know how crucial each Hispanic, Latino, Mexican resident is for our city, even though they remain some of our most unappreciated hard workers in our city and are extremely important to our city's revenue. May we not forget that. I, for one, truly know how vital each Hispanic, Latino, Mexican is to keeping our city great, doing a lot of jobs most people won't do, and I hope more residents truly learn how important and welcome they are. Instead of just culture appropriating their culture, such as Taco Tuesday and Kubia dancing, as well as learn how to keep these communities safe, such as engaging, working together, learning through organizations like VC Defensa and 805 Adocu Fund, Libra 805. Thank you, Mayor. Much respect.
Our final speaker and our first virtual speaker, so bear with me, is Trevor Gottman. Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself. Trevor, you can see the timer in the council screen. You'll have three minutes. Trevor, we're having a hard time hearing you. Okay, Trevor, unfortunately, we're having a hard time right now getting the Zoom audio back into the room. If you wouldn't mind, we can call you again at the second round of general public comments. And apologies for that. Mayor, that concludes general public comment. For our our virtual speakers on the Zoom, we are having a slight audio feedback. So again, you can watch the meeting on YouTube, and we will take public comments, general public comments at the second round. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Manager, do we have any follow-up to the public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Speaker mentioned Dudley House. We do have a failure of the lift system there. It's, it's old and proprietary. We've looked at a design and purchase of a new one. It's an ongoing investigation, kind of a one-off item. So it will be unfortunately a period of time before that that lift is repaired at the Dudley House. The sidewalks, we all know our sidewalks need a lot of work in town. We have a number of efforts underway to manage and repair those. If you notice, people came around and measured deviations and marked them with numbers and so forth. We've geotagged all of those. We have crews going around grinding sidewalks and patching and repairing and replacing when and where we can. It's a very slow process. We have thousands and thousands of these things to repair. So we're, we know about that. We're working hard on it, and we'll get those done as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to our agenda, on our agenda, we've got the consent items now. There are four consent items on tonight's agenda for consideration. And so any items that council would like to have questions on, comments, or no votes? Councilmember Schumacher?
I have a question on two. And before, after we approve consent items, I'd like to request for us to move Main Street Moves as right after, for us to discuss instead of the last item with respect to the community members who are here today, and also the families, and I see babies as well. So if that can, do we do that through voting, or?
I can move the agenda items, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have a question on two. Any other questions, comments, or no votes on?
No order. Just for the public hearing notices, is it, I just want to defer to that, because we do have the two public hearing items. Is that?
There are, Mayor, there are the noticed public hearings, but I think it is within the mayor's prerogative. It says taken up at the meeting, but the clerk is correct. There are a couple of public hearings, but I think as long as the council gets...
As long as they're heard tonight, right?
Exactly, Mayor. And I guess within the context of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Nope? Okay, so I'll go ahead. Question on two, Councilmember Schumacher.
Sure. For the city attorney, my understanding for two is, and I understand that it was 4.5 and 6.1, and then the last one. And the last one, can you just help me understand? I know that we wanted to see if we can, at the end of each meeting, add to the agenda for future agenda items. My understanding was is that it would be a council member who would get their second, and then it would fall into the agenda? Or do we need to vote on that for it to be on the agenda for future items?
I'm going to offer a third response. Councilmember Schumacher, basically, two council members would propose an item. So a council member would say, I, and council member so-and-so would like to propose the following item. That basically tenders the question and issue, but it's basically just, does the council wish to have a future agenda item come forward on whatever that is? That would take four votes, like it usually would. But in order to tender the item in the context of the protocols as they're proposed, it would take two council members to even put it out there. So if one council member were to say, I'm interested in this, who's giving me a second? That wouldn't be appropriate. You need to have the two out of the gate. That's at least my understanding of what the council wanted to come back with.
Okay. And I guess, so if we had maybe like four items at the end of the meeting that we wanted to see in the future, would we vote on each one, or we would vote on?
No, you'd vote on each one. In other words, first council member says, this is an item that I and another council member have, we'd like to come forward with this. Are there four votes? There are, there aren't. Next council member says, okay, I and another council member forward, and then there'd be a motion and see if you have four votes.
And then my final question is that if it gets voted down, say that, you know, an item, for example, Councilmember McReynolds and Councilmember Mangone bring an item, and we all vote it down, what would their options be for it to come back?
I'm going to look real quick. I don't know that there's, I don't know that we had a prohibition. We didn't have a, sometimes rules like this have a prohibition on if it's voted down, can't come back for six or 12 months, something like that. I believe the clerk has indicated that's not in this language.
Yeah, Councilmember Schumacher, currently in the adopted protocols, if you recall at the last council discussion, council didn't provide direction in terms of a specific cooling period. And so the resolution and protocols as written today does not include that provision, other than the two council members.
So we can just keep bringing it back over and over, okay, until we all get tired and bring back more protocols? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments on consent agendas. I'll go ahead and see if there are any public speakers on any of these consent items.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no public comments on consent items. Thank you, Mayor. There are no public comments on consent items.
Okay, so at this point, I will ask for a motion to accept consent items.
Move to approve consent, uh, agenda?
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Um, and just want to check with you, Mr. City Clerk. Um, how many speakers do we have for item number eight?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We currently have sixty-five speakers for item eight.
Okay. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and move the item up. Um, I will be giving, uh, each speaker a minute, um, to speak.
Mayor, could we, since it's not a long meeting ahead of us, give them a minute and a half?
Sixty-five speakers.
It'll be two hours. Little over an hour and a half. Because I, I remember the first CARE Act meeting. People prepared three minutes, and they were very emotional and stressed. And it, it might help it go smoother if you're willing.
Thank you for that. Um, you okay with a minute and a half? Okay, okay with a minute and a half? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a minute and a half. And have staff come up? So item number eight, uh, moved up. Uh, it's the Resolution to Terminate Vehicle Code Closure and Alternatives and Third Amendment to Agreement CD 2025 dash zero two with RRM Design Group to complete the Vision Plan and create a capital improvement slash implementation plan for the Main Street Moves closure area. Um, and we have our community development team here to give us a staff presentation. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, uh, members of the audience, those of you watching at home. My name is Rachel Diamond. I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight, I have with me at the table Chris De La Vega, Assistant City Attorney, Shanna Farley, the Planning Manager, and A.J. Bernhardt, making his first appearance at City Council, a senior planner in community development. Um, tonight, we'll be speaking about the Main Street Moves Project, including, uh, vehicle code closure termination and alternatives, as well as the Main Street Vision Plan. Um, so we have a number of recommendations for City Council this evening. Uh, the first is to provide staff with direction to pursue one of the following options for the Main Street Moves Program. Option A is to reopen the street by adopting the Resolution to terminate the vehicle code closure by November 3rd, 2025. Option B is to maintain the street closure. Um, and with that, we'd want you to provide feedback on the draft Vision Plan to help guide future improvements and completion of the plan. Um, and with that, authorize a Contract Amendment Number Three with the RRM Design Group contract, uh, with an additional $118,200 to complete the Vision Plan and create a capital improvement implementation plan. Option C is to direct staff to plan for a seasonal summer closure and/or a weekend closure. And option D is to study and return with a plan for our Main Street Moves boundary reduction. Um, in addition to that, we're looking for direction on whether the City Council would like us to study and bring back an agenda item to establish an entertainment zone within the Main Street Moves area. Um, this can be done with any of the options that you select. Um, and then additionally, we have a sequa finding here, um, that no additional environmental review is required for the project. Uh, so a little bit of background about how we got here. Uh, this has been, uh, over five years in the making. On June 16th of 2020, Main Street was closed to vehicles during the pandemic under a special event permit. Um, and that special event permit was continued through July 1st of 2024. At that time, the City Council adopted a new type of closure utilizing the vehicle code. And that, um, that vehicle code closure was, um, extended indefinitely in January of this year. Also in January of this year, the City Council certified an environmental impact report. Uh, after an eighteen-month process of working through that environmental impact report, it was quite lengthy. Um, and at that time, the City Council, um, also looking at a number of options, directed staff to pursue the pedestrian mall law process. And so on July 8th, 2025, there was a pedestrian mall law hearing that was held, and that process was terminated at that, uh, time. Um, the reason that the, um, the process was terminated was due to there being forty-nine objections representing over fifty percent of the frontages of the Main Street Moves area. Um, in addition to that, there were forty-five claims for damages totaling $230.7 million. Because that, um, pedestrian mall law hearing process was terminated, those claims are not being heard by the City Council. So that process ended, and now we're here still under the vehicle code closure and discussing options for moving forward. Um, there was a survey conducted in 2024. You've seen a lot of these results before. We get into some detail about the survey results in the staff report and a number of previous staff reports that you've seen. Um, but there was a bifurcation of the survey between property owners as well as business owners. Um, and so there was kind of a, a wide range of answer options for people. Um, property owners, um, thirty-seven percent of property owners wanted to reopen Main Street and return the street to kind of pre-pandemic conditions. Twenty-five percent wanted Main Street completely closed as it is today. Um, and, uh, you know, there was another kind of smaller group of around ten percent wanting a seasonal closure, a smaller seasonal closure, um, and always closed with a smaller boundary. Um, those options being available to you today as well. And those numbers were slightly different for business owners. Um, and again, you can see that on your screen. I won't go through it. Uh, this is a pretty lengthy presentation, so thank you to the audience and to the council for entertaining all this information. It is quite a lot of information, so I appreciate all of your time. Um, we did provide a number of, um, sales tax indicators um, to help explain kind of the situation, both downtown and specifically within the Main Street Moves closure. Obviously, we are, um, seasonal, uh, city, and, um, this sales tax summary shows, uh, Main Street Moves in blue, downtown in orange, and then downtown without Main Street Moves. Um, and you know, there is some similar correlation, but effectively, since, uh, the first quarter of 2021, there's been a slight decline, um, in Main Street Moves and, um, a, a very slight increase overall in downtown. There are a number of factors that come into play here, though. Obviously, these are just straight dollars and don't factor in the number of businesses that are actually in business. Um, vacancy has fluctuated over time, and I did provide some vacancy data in the staff report as well. Um, this also provides you with some annual sales tax totals for a variety of commercial centers in the city. And you can see that, um, again, a little challenging to read here, um, but Main Street Moves in dark blue. Um, slight decline from twenty-two to twenty-four, which is fairly similar to the slight decline that we're seeing citywide and within most of our commercial cores. Um, since the pedestrian mall law hearing, um, termination, we did want to go back to property owners and businesses and hear once more what they had to say about the situation and provided them with some alternatives to the existing conditions to really hear what their goals are and what kind of feedback they have, um, on the, um, future of Main Street. So we did have a property owner feedback session on August 26th. We had sixteen people in attendance. Um, a majority urged immediate reopening of Main Street, followed by, uh, an analysis of hybrid or seasonal closures or event-only closures. Uh, there was one, um, in full support of, uh, full closure with upgrades. Um, and some common themes that we heard from property owners were really the need for urgent action and a decision to move forward, as well as independent economic analysis and investment in parking, the bollards, and restrooms. Uh, we then held a feedback session with business owners, uh, which was very well-attended. There were about thirty attendees representing businesses, mostly within the closure, um, otherwise adjacent to the closure downtown. A majority of the business owners, uh, conversely, actually wanted to keep Main Street pedestrianized and closed to vehicles. So we saw kind of the opposite feedback from the business owners. Um, there were also a few people that were in support of a hybrid weekday open, weekend closed, um, with a few people also urging full reopening. Um, some common themes we heard from business owners were the need for certainty and clear direction. Again, uh, I think that was really the commonality, is just wanting to have some certainty about the future of Main Street. There were a lot of, uh, comments about the equity between restaurants and retailers, clarity on funding timelines and parklets, and emphasis on safety and, um, transparent data. So 2025 has been a very busy year for Main Street Moves. There have been a number of, of key actions that have occurred, um, via staff, and I will say that a wide range of city staff have been involved in this project, and it's truly been very collaborative to work on kind of the next iteration of Main Street. The EIR was certified, like I said, after an eighteen-month process that was very complicated in order to get the alternatives and the project description itself, um, nailed down. And so after that entire process, um, the city did retain RRM Design Group to conduct outreach and prepare a Main Street Vision Plan. And the original plan was really to have a, a vision for a complete closure. Um, obviously, we have a number of options before you today, and the Vision Plan Draft, and it is very much a draft and, um, able to, um, be changed still at this point. Um, the draft itself can be amended to accommodate any of the options that you choose today. Um, so while it's been designed for a complete closure, the goal was always to make it flexible enough to allow for changes in the future, for the street to reopen at some point, or to allow for a hybrid or reopening. So whatever option the council does select this evening, we are requesting that, um, we're able to come back with an amendment to that contract to then adjust the Vision Plan, to either finish it as is or to adjust it to whatever option that you do select this evening. We also started working on, um, the Ballard and Planter Project. This, um, the Bollards and Plantards were also designed by RRM. And I want to be very clear that regardless of the decision that you make this evening, the Bollards will be installed. Um, we have $2 million in our CIP budgeted for the Bollards. We're working on construction drawings right now, and our goal is to finish the Ballard installation by spring of 2026. Um, as part of that, we also completed a full ALTA survey of the Main Street Moves area, utilizing city staff. Our surveying team went out and worked on that. Um, and we also did a water study of the Main Street Moves area, um, which was super important, as many of you know, to, uh, development project of any kind. It was important for us to understand the need for infrastructure improvements once the parklets become permanent, which again, can be part of any of the options that are before you this evening. And so, um, we are happy to see that no infrastructure improvements would be needed to support, um, a full, um, you know, kind of realization of as many parklets as you could fit on Main Street, um, that would work within our program. We also applied for a Safe Streets for All grant to support safety enhancements and planning in the Main Street Moves area. We should find out later this fall the, um, determination and award of that grant, but, um, the city had applied for almost $3 million in funding. Um, specifically, it's related to safety, but, um, a vast majority of the improvements that would be made on Main Street can be tied to safety, particularly the Bollards. A lot of, um, you know, pedestrian safety improvements in and around the closure, um, could be utilized for that. So we are looking, we're hoping to get that grant and again, be able to utilize that, um, for some of the projects that we know are happening. Uh, we also launched a temporary bathroom pilot program. There are six restrooms within two banks of, uh, VIP rental, uh, restrooms that we put one in front of the mini park and one on the southern end of the closure on California. They've been extremely successful, um, to the point where we now, um, empty them four days a week because of the popularity of them. We also, um, pay for janitorial services and maintenance with both our janitorial contract through the city, as well as with our partners at DVP. And so they've been really successful. Our plan is to remove them at the end of September. Um, we also developed a parklet permitting program and retained RRM to prepare pre-approved parklet construction drawings. You'll hear about some of that information later this evening. Initially, we were having that before this conversation. Um, but we are almost done with those pre-approved parklet construction drawings, and so individual businesses will be able to use those pre-approved designs to very quickly obtain a building permit and utilize a standardized design for their parklet, or they could design their own. So there are a number of options before you, and I'll walk you through them and kind of go through, um, each of the key factors in each of those. And I just want to remind you again that all of these include the Bollards. Every single one will have the same Ballard plan. It just depends on whether the Bollards will be in place regularly or not, depending on the, the option. So option A before you is what was requested at the pedestrian mall law hearing in July, and it was to return, um, with an option that would allow the city to reopen the streets by November 3rd. And so should you want to move forward with this option, you would adopt the Resolution in Attachment A to reopen Main Street by November 3rd, 2025, um, thus terminating the vehicle code closure. So, um, the boundary of Main Street Moves would be effectively dissolved. Um, a full vehicle, um, restoration would occur. We would have a hundred ninety-six parking spaces reactivated. There's a possibility for adding about seventeen additional spaces as well that we've looked at. Um, but we're, uh, working on that, uh, further. Um, also, as part of Main Street Moves, the city banned bicycles from the, the closure area. And the way that the regulation is written, it's, um, the bicycles aren't allowed when the street is closed, so no further action would be required to allow bicycles to come back to Main Street. I will add that, um, the Gold Coast Bus Service, um, that used to go on Main Street would actually no longer return to Main Street. Gold Coast does want to keep the bus running on Santa Clara. It works better for them. So it does actually free up some space on Main Street, potentially for parklets or for other amenities, um, and the bus stops wouldn't need to be restored. Um, we would require that all of the parklets be removed by October 15th, if you choose this option. What that would do is allow the city to basically clean up the street, restripe any places as necessary. I will say it's in pretty good shape, so there isn't a ton of restriping that needs to occur, but we would need to put the parking blocks back in, um, because we did remove those. Additionally, um, we initially thought that we would put back individual parking meters, but instead, we would put parking, park mobile stations, um, on each block so that people could pay for their parking at centralized locations and pay by space. Um, so it's likely that we'll have to renumber all of the spaces for that park mobile system. And as I said previously, we do have a vision plan for a street closure, but it's very easily adjusted for a street reopening. There's a number of factors or, um, features that we could still utilize in an open street. The new landscaping, lighting, signage, um, traffic calming, all of those could be adjusted, um, to create an open street plan. Um, some benefits for reopening the street, including restoring vehicle access, bike access, the additional parking, and circulation for businesses and customers. Some drawbacks would be reduced pedestrian areas, the reduction of public space, and the loss of that placemaking that's happened with the closure. Um, you know, some of the, uh, future improvements to the street are unknown at this time. Um, but including the Bollards and the improvements that we know to occur, we're looking at about $3,478,200 for a reopening of the street. And I did include some of the details in the supplemental staff report that was issued today that outlines all of those costs. And again, I just want to reiterate, the Bollards are in there. They're in every single option. We have $2 million already budgeted for it. Um, between that and the already budgeted funding, um, I'll talk about the, the difference a little bit later in the staff report. So option B is maintaining the existing closure under the vehicle code. Um, should the council want to move forward with, uh, maintaining the existing closure, there would be, while we do want the direction from you, there would be no additional council action needed. Um, so you would maintain the existing vehicle code closure. It's in perpetuity. Um, so there's no vehicle code action that needs to be taken. Um, we would maintain the current setup until the Bollards were installed. And then once those Bollards were installed, we would adjust at California Street and pull back the, um, the closure to allow for alley access, um, in the alley that's just south of Main Street. We would require that all the parklets be removed and replaced by January 2026. The reason that we, uh, picked that date is really to allow businesses to have more time to plan for their new parklets, utilize the pre-approved parklet plans if they so choose, and get building permits in place prior to having to remove their, their parklets. Um, in this case, they would be able to rebuild the non-fortified version of parklets, should they choose. Businesses could also elect to build fortified parklets if they like. Generally, that means that they have water barriers inside of them that, um, would be safer for vehicles, um, driving by. And that's something that would be required if you pick any of the options that allow vehicles on the street at any time of the year. Um, the Vision Plan, which we'll talk more about in a little bit, um, is, would be continued for closed street. is, would be continued for closed street. And we'd have that enhanced placemaking. We are asking that you approve an amendment to that contract so that we could complete that Vision Plan. Obviously, looking for feedback from you, but we would also have additional workshops with the community. This is really the first time they're seeing this Vision Plan. I know it's the first time you're all seeing this Vision Plan. We rushed to get it into shape that we could present it as a draft so that you could see kind of what it could be. But there's certainly a lot of room for improvement on that plan and of course, completion. Some benefits to keeping the street closed include a safer pedestrian space, 13,500 square feet of outdoor dining, plus additional outdoor square footage for retail and other uses, public events, and emissions reduction in this specific area. Some of the drawbacks to keeping the street closed are the continued loss of parking, continued lack of bicycle access, and of course, direct vehicle access to businesses in the front. This cost is based on a cost estimate that we did based on the draft Vision Plan that we have today. It's certainly not a perfect number, but it gives you a good idea. For the first one to two years, we're looking at just under $6 million. Again, that's including the Bollards and the about a little over $3 million that we have budgeted. And then between three and 10 years to realize the full Vision Plan, it would be about $23.5 million. I did mention the primary access to buildings, which has been of concern related to the closure that businesses are unable to access in the front of their buildings. So I did want to point out what businesses have access, secondary access behind their buildings, because there are quite a few. Within the closure, you're looking at 48 parcels or 67% of Main Street Moves parcels that have access and parking behind their building, either through an alley or a parking lot. There are three parcels or 4% that have a, a secondary access that is compromised. And then 21 parcels or 29% of the total parcels have no secondary access and have lost access completely from the front and rear. There are a few that have some, you know, side access with side streets, but otherwise, this helps to identify that. I just wanted to point that out. Moving on to Option C, this would be to plan for seasonal summer closure and/or weekend closure. So there's kind of a few options within this option. The first being that you could decide to keep the street closed and move forward with Option C, or you could decide to reopen the street as we are talking about in Option A, and then plan for Option C. So there's kind of a few ways that you can do this. And then of course, within this option, there's also the seasonal summer closure, which typically would be between Memorial Day and Labor Day, although, you know, certainly whatever length of time the council wished we could do that. Or weekends, both within that seasonal amount of time or throughout the year. The boundary would still remain the same under this option. And we would of course have yearly transitions or weekly transitions, depending on which direction you wanted to move in. Because of the kind of on and off nature of this option, the parklets would need to be fortified, which means that all of the parklets would need to be removed. If you chose to reopen the street immediately, we would follow that same schedule of having parklets be removed by October. If you wanted to keep the street open or closed while we explored this, we would wait until January to require them to be removed. But generally, what we would do is require all fortified parklets. But with this option, because of the seasonal and temporary nature, we could look at amending the design guidelines so that we could have additional options that are a little less formal than parklets. Think bistro seating that's put out into the street when you have a weekend closure that allows for more creative options and, and very temporary options. As far as the Vision Plan, this is something that could absolutely be adjusted for a hybrid option. So it would allow for that opening and closing. And we'd of course really need to rely on additional traffic calming for this type of plan and a seasonal activation plan to help us activate the street during those closures. Some benefits of this option are the flexibility for peak demand, increased pedestrian space, and for the events in summer and weekends. The vehicle access, of course, being off-season or in off-peak days, for example, Monday through Thursday, would also be a benefit. Some drawbacks are, this is very complicated. I can't stress that enough. This is a very complicated option, and there's a reason why this doesn't happen very often. And the constant changes to the traffic patterns can be very undesirable and challenging to help people understand when the street is closed and when the street is open and, and how to operate with such changes. This one also is a little bit similar to a reopening plan in terms of cost. And then of course, there's additional costs depending on how much of a kind of future streetscape we would adopt. So kind of the base price for this is about $3.5 million, again, with Bollards. And Bollards would really be a key portion of this open and closed type situation since it would help facilitate that. Moving on to the last option for you this evening is to plan for a Main Street Moves boundary reduction. This is something that we've also heard from the community as we have taken in comments. We could look at reducing the closure area to one to two blocks, and it could be used, could be closed under the vehicle code as it is today or under future pedestrian mall law process. Because you terminated the process in July, if you wanted to pursue the pedestrian mall law process, we would have to wait until July 2026 to re-entertain any new process. Since by state law, you do have to wait 365 days until that next process starts. A smaller area is easier to manage. It certainly costs less. And it would help to keep the farmer's market and Figaroa Mall linked, should we choose to close the 200 block, potentially in addition to the 300 block. It would tie into the Figaroa Mall very nicely since that's closed to, to vehicles as well. So parklets would be slightly different in this scenario. Obviously, it would be kind of a partial reopening and a partial closure. Same with Option C. You could move forward with this option and immediately reopen while we study this. Or you could decide to keep the street closed. Again, while we study Option D, we'll come back to you with details. Parklets that would be inside the closure could be non-fortified if they wished, but anything outside of the closure would be required to be fortified in the future. Again, depending on how you want to move forward, if we reopen immediately in November, then October 15th, all of the parklets would be removed. Again, if you decided to keep the street closed, we'd still have all of those parklets out by January. The Vision Plan would effectively be scaled down. So we would just take a portion of that. In some of the facts and figures, we estimated the pricing based on two blocks. So you'll see that some of the visioning implementation is about 2/5 of the total cost. Again, if you went with one block, it would be even less. And so we would also want to do an activation plan with this and really any of the options, working with our partners at DVP, DVO in the Chamber. And we'd also work on additional targeted traffic calming. You know, with the change in closure, we would want to adjust to make sure that we have safety in the newly opened areas. Some benefits of this option is that it does maintain placemaking and pedestrian safety in these locations. And it would restore some parking and some vehicle access on those reopen blocks. Some drawbacks, a little less cohesive. The smaller area sometimes doesn't have the critical mass of the larger closure. And it would, if you only closed the, this portion of the street, you would lose the stage and four-way closure at California. However, we certainly could look at maintaining that four-way closure as the location of the closure. The reason that we looked at this more particularly in this conversation is because the 200 block had more support for the closure overall during the pedestrian mall law process. So again, we looked at taking the implementation plan and scaling it down. Doing a one-to-two-block closure would cost about $4 million over one to two years, and then almost $8 million between three and 10 years to implement a vision. And again, with all of these, we're looking at coming back to you with an amendment to the Vision Plan contract so that we could complete it based on whichever option that you choose this evening. So an additional question that we are asking this evening very generally is, does the city council want staff to return with a proposed entertainment zone for consideration? Obviously, state law has changed. SB 969 now allows cities to establish entertainment zones that basically allow for businesses that have alcohol use permits and different alcohol licensing to allow patrons to leave their business with an alcoholic beverage in hand, effectively an open container, and participate in drinking that open container, both in the right-of-way and then in other participating businesses. So it allows for people to flow in and out of participating businesses within a specific boundary. Generally, these are thought of as thing that, things that happen within a closed street. But the state law does allow for this type of entertainment zone to be established in an open street as well. So really, any of the scenarios could allow this, and you certainly could tailor it. For example, if you wanted to do a hybrid process where we had a seasonal closure, you could also opt to only allow an entertainment zone while the closure is occurring or year-round. There's a lot of options on the table. It's something that we've talked about throughout this process, but really wanted to kind of get a clear understanding of what direction you want to go in. And then again, if you want us to study this and come back with an option for you to adopt it, we certainly can. So that is a question before you this evening. So I wanted to get a little bit into parklet impacts of these various options. I did speak a little bit about fortified versus non-fortified. But the reality is that in reopening the street or even keeping the street closed, new parklets will need to comply with our design guidelines that were adopted in 2024. And I do speak a little bit about it in the staff report and kind of why the design guidelines weren't immediately adopted in 2024 at the time summer was coming. And we wanted to allow businesses to have more time to have their existing parklets that were built under the special event permits. And then later, we had the EIR in process. And then we wanted to have pre-approved parklet designs for businesses to be able to save some money on design so that they could focus on constructing these newer parklets. So we anticipate having the permit process launched in late September, early October. Again, you have an item later this evening on, on this topic as well that gets into a lot more detail about the process. But one of the things that happens when you reopen the street is there's a lot of restricted areas for parklets. And so I won't read all of them, but there are limitations of where you can put parklets that would then need to be followed. Should the street be reopened, 13 parklets of the existing parklets would be impacted. And if the street remains closed, three parklets are impacted. And of course, there's still room for other businesses to have parklets that don't exist yet. And so some of those spaces are restricted as well. And so I'll just kind of walk us through very briefly a map that shows you where existing parklets are and where some of these restrictions are. So as you can see on the left, there's some restriction symbols. Accessible parking needs to remain in place or needs, when it comes back, should the street reopen, would need to be remaining in place. We also have alleys, crosswalks, driveways that need sight distance requirements, crosswalks, curb returns, and fire hydrants. And so fire hydrants are really the key issue that we need to avoid for a closed street that will still impact those three parklets. So as you can see on Main Street from Fur to Chestnut, none of the existing parklets would be impacted in either scenario, but there are some locations where new parklets would not be able to go. On Main Street from Chestnut to California, there are a number of parklets that will be impacted, including Dargans, the former Snapper Jacks and Immigrant Sun, Very Ventura, and Maki. Some of these would need to very severely reduce the size of their parklets, and some would just have, you know, minor changes. It really depends on the location. And some could also adjust up or down the block, depending on their location to, to meet some of these requirements. On Main Street from California to Oak, Finney's would be impacted. And I apologize, the color here, we've got, Finney's has two. On Main Street, they're impacted in an open street scenario. I'm sorry, on California, in an open street scenario. And then the one on Main Street is impacted by both scenarios. Gibson's, the Saloon, and Latitudes would also be heavily impacted in an open street scenario. On Main Street from Oak to Palm, you have Casabella, Bank of Italy, and Star Lounge that are impacted. Casabella in either scenario, and Star Lounge and Bank of Italy just in an open street scenario. And then on Main Street from Palm to Figaroa, Capriccio would be impacted and would not be able to return in its current location in either scenario. And then this shows restrictions on California north of Maine. There are no parklets there today, but there would be pretty severe limitations to having any parklets in those, that location kind of behind the stage. And then south of Main Street on California, as I mentioned earlier, Finney's would be impacted in an open street scenario at the corner. So moving on to the Vision Plan. You know, the, the Vision Plan was led by RRM Design Group, who did pretty extensive community engagement with the public, business owners and property owners. The plan includes a framework of short and long-term improvements. It's adaptive to closure, hybrid, or open street models. Again, depending on what you choose today, we would adapt the plan moving forward to adjust to the option that you choose. And some key themes that you'll see in the plan are activity nodes, shaded seating, public restrooms, enhanced gateways at the ends of the closure, as well as flexible gathering spaces. What you don't see in the plan are parklets themselves generally. There's just space for them to exist, but they kind of planned around them. So there was 500 responses to a community questionnaire. People are obviously very interested and invested, as you can see in the audience. There were, was a community visioning session on May 31st, a business owner meeting on June 11th, a property owner meeting on July 1st. There were a number of one-on-one meetings with stakeholders to get opinions on a, on a personal level. And then there's an executive summary of all of this feedback in Appendix A of the Vision Plan. So what was crafted was a vision statement to kind of guide the vision itself. Ventura's downtown Main Street will be revitalized as a vibrant, walkable, and inclusive destination that reflects the city's unique character and cultural heritage. This flexible, people-focused corridor will feature welcoming public spaces, diverse amenities, and safe, accessible environments for all ages, supporting a thriving local economy and reinforcing Main Street's identity as Ventura's premier downtown destination. And that really, that vision really drives the entirety of this plan. And again, I know we have a lot of other things to talk about, so I'll kind of walk through very briefly. And certainly, we can get into this more if you have questions. There were three renderings done to give you an idea of what Main Street could be, as I like to say, when it grows up. This is a rendering showing Maine and California facing the stage and looking up towards City Hall in the backdrop. There's a stage, as I said, that's reimagined in somewhat of a band shell. There's artistic paving on the street and obviously, a lot of people gathering. There is a water feature in this rendering as well. Obviously, all of these things can be changed however you see fit. Should we move forward, really with any option, we would reengage with the community to get their feedback on this. As I've said, this is the first time most of the people in the community are really seeing this plan. This is a rendering showing Main Street. And on the right is the EP Foster Library. And what we wanted to do is really work with the library to create a children's area. They already do a lot of activation outside of the library for children and adults. I love to play with slime outside. And they've been really great about activating the street. This is a perfect place for an outdoor play area for children. So you can see in the foreground a children's play area as well as bulbouts with additional landscaping and some playful seating. That's definitely a theme that carries throughout the Vision Plan is to create opportunities for people to sit down and relax and people-watch and take a break from shopping and eating. This also shows additional games in the street as well as overhead lighting to really activate the street itself. We would of course also have additional signage and a gateway further up the street from this. Speaking of gateways, this is an example of what a gateway could look like. On the opposite end of the closure, right next to the Mission at Maine and Figaroa, we're looking at creating two arched gateways within the closure to welcome people into Main Street. And so this could occur regardless of the scenario that you choose. And again, this is just an idea, a concept of what could happen. But certainly, this could be done by an artist or some additional rendering or different type of idea for a gateway. There's a lot of ambient lighting and additional landscapes, landscape added. But one thing that I think is important to note is the Bollards also installed. Obviously, very different from the Meridian barriers and gates that we have today. The Bollards that were selected previously, that were picked by RRM Design Group, are gorgeous Bollards that are custom for the city and truly create a kind of visual interest as well. So there's a number of components of the plan. And again, I think we could talk about this for many hours, so I really want to keep this brief. And I'll just say that there are kind of four key components to the plan. Gateways and signage, such as the removal- Gateways and signage, such as the removable bollards, primary entrances like the overhead arch element, secondary entrances with event banners or pilasters on the sidewalk, additional informational kiosks and directional wayfinding signage. There are right-of-way improvements, like lithocrete mosaic paving at intersections, and we went with a Spanish tile theme, which I think is really prevalent in downtown and really connects to our history, as well as decorative paving in crosswalks and sidewalks with bulbouts at mid-block crossings and intersections. There's painted roadways with opportunities for both public art and the ability for people to do chalk art, which is very popular in Ventura, as well as looking at ADA and drop-off parking adjacent to the closure. That's something that's really important, that's somewhat missing from the closure today, is kind of drop-off and pickup zones as well. The plan includes a lot of site furnishings and landscaping, including in-ground planters and enhanced landscaping, new trees on Main Street as well, keeping the existing ones but adding more trees, movable umbrellas and furnishings, whimsical bike racks, fun seating, public art and entertainment. I mentioned the string lights before, as well as permanent public restrooms. This is something that we've obviously seen how important the restrooms are today, and creating an opportunity for two public restrooms within the closure or directly adjacent to the closure, depending on the option that you select this evening. And then the plan really focuses on gathering play and activity areas and a variety of nodes throughout the area. Like I mentioned before, kid-friendly spaces next to the library, dog-friendly spaces throughout, potentially a splash pad, fire pits, game zones, green space for relaxation, yoga and exercise, the outdoor play area, as well as interactive children's science exhibits and learning activities that would tie into the EP Foster Library. So we did include some site plans and details. And again, rather than get into every single component, it's a little complicated. Just generally, the Vision Plan West, the west end of the project, would have a gateway entry at Main and Figueroa. There would be dog-friendly spaces, a lot of opportunities for both permanent and temporary public art, as well as soft green spaces. The east end of the plan would include California and Main, really the heart of downtown, a permanent place structure by the library, a number of bulbouts and landscaping, and painted roadways and artistic intersections. So how do we finalize this plan? Like I said, this is a draft. We heard you at the pedestrian mall law hearing when you said, please continue the vision process, and let's see where it goes. This is how far we could get in this short amount of time, and I really want to thank our partners at RRM, who did a fantastic job working with the community, getting feedback and getting us this far. Should you want to move forward with a full closure, we have an ad service agreement that's in your staff report. The projected fee is $118,200 that we already have budgeted to complete the plan, but council would need to approve an amendment since it's over that threshold that's required for council approval. To finalize the plan, it would take approximately eight months. In October, we would conduct outreach meetings with the public, property owners and business owners to gain feedback on the plan. November and December, there would be refinement of the draft and coordination with a third-party cost estimator and a presentation of the final plan to city council. And then from January through June, that Vision Plan would be turned into a capital improvement and implementation plan, identifying the key priority projects that you wanted to work on in the first two years, and then detailed specs, pricing, and phasing. And we would work with the Economic Development Subcommittee, which has also become the Main Street Moves Subcommittee as needed to work through some of those issues. As I said many times in this presentation, whatever option you choose, we can adjust this. So if you choose Option B, we have kind of everything right in front of you to approve a contract amendment. Should you choose another option, we can adjust this and bring it back to you for another contract amendment, so that we can adjust the Vision Plan and still help us realize, you know, kind of an improved Main Street with whatever option it is that you do want to move forward with. So a little bit about our budget. Over '22 through '25, this shows you '22 through '26, and how much we've had budgeted and how much we've actually spent. We have a lot of money that came from the investment plan, about $1.8 million. There was the parks budget in 2023 that paid for the Meridian bollards, and then we also put some of our last year's community development budget towards some costs. In addition to that, we also have the $2 million in CIP for bollards. So the total Main Street Moves budget from '22 through '26 is $2,294,000. And we, the actual money that we've spent and is obligated, which means that we have contracts in place to actually spend the money, is a little under $1.2 million. So we have a little over $1 million left in that budget. Again, plus the $2 million that we have for the bollards. We've started to spend that a little bit as we're working towards construction drawings, but we're really trying to be prudent with that money so it can go towards expedient construction in the spring. This gives you some information about what we've spent this fiscal year. Obviously, the numbers are a little bit low in terms of what we've actually spent versus obligation. That just means we haven't been billed yet in a lot of cases. So we have spent quite a bit of money and have an obligation for the portable restrooms. We've exhausted our money for the visioning plan thus far, hence the request for the amendment. We've spent about $35,000 in the parklet designs, and then we also have cost estimating for the Vision Plan that we've spent but haven't been billed for, as well as money for downtown Ventura partners for maintenance, janitorial services, and then we had a little bit of money spent on signage and building maintenance and repair with the bathrooms. So in total, you know, we've got about $235,000 of this year's budget that we've both spent and are obligated to spend this year. Again, some of that could go down depending on the option that you choose today. So the financial impact of this project, I talked a little bit about it with each of the options, but like I said, we have about $3.2 million for this fiscal year, and, or it's now, it's $3.102,778 remaining. So what I show you is each of the options, their rough cost estimate on the left column, and then on the right, it's that rough cost estimate minus the money that we actually have budgeted. So should you want to move forward with any of these options, these would be the additional obligation for budgeting that we estimate would be needed to accomplish these options. So there are a number of council strategic priorities that are met by this program itself, including economic vitality and development, as well as infrastructure. Main Street Moves kind of straddles both of those. And again, I'll go back to the recommendation that we are asking for today, which is to direct staff to pursue one of the four options that we've outlined in the staff report and in the presentation, as well as directing staff on whether to study and bring back an agenda item to establish an entertainment zone. And then, of course, we have the CEQA findings that no additional environmental review is required for the project. So again, thank you for your time. I really appreciate having this conversation this evening, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, staff. That was a lot. Appreciate it. Member, member, member. If it's okay with council, I'd like to go to our public comment, if that's okay. Yep. So Mr. City Clerk, can we get ready to start calling?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are up to 72 speakers.
Okay. So 72 speakers now?
Yes.
No, we'll keep it at a minute and a half, no seating of time.
Thank you, Mayor. So speakers will have a minute and a half. Our first speaker this evening is Assemblymember Steve Bennett, followed by Amber Thompson.
Good evening. Really appreciate this opportunity and the 90 seconds. You know, there is no city in the County of Ventura that can more easily connect their beach with their downtown corridor. And the potential that the city of Ventura has is really tremendous. And what I would encourage you to do as the leaders of our city, as the people who need to carry out the vision of our citizens, is to think not three or five years down the road, but 15 and 20 years down the road. Gerdas famous line, "Once you commit, you have no idea how much energy and creativity and passion will come forward." We've only experimented with a temporary closure, and it has already touched the soul of so many people in Ventura. Imagine if we go from a temporary closure to a genuine commitment. Imagine people walking from the beach up California Street through a true town square at California and Main Street, continuing on up to City Hall and the Botanical Garden up there, and then continuing up to the hillsides that the Hillside Conservancy has. This is an opportunity, a tremendous opportunity, and the potential for the city of Ventura is enormous. I strongly encourage you to be the leaders that you asked us to support and make this vision come true for the city of Ventura and the citizens of Ventura. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Amber Thompson, followed by Benjamin Smith, Carolyn Stewart, Reema Munna, Alyssa Gutierrez, Zachary Kitt, Nick Herson.
Can I just have a point of order, Mayor? If I can just, I know that this is going to be a, one of those topics that's going to bring two different sides, and I want to just echo what Councilmember Duran had said. Please don't attack each other. I think what we're trying to build here is a nonviolent, non-aggressive discussion and just really making sure that we have a really thorough outlook as to what we, what can be done here in Ventura. I really want to make sure that, you know, downtown is one of those places. This city is a place that we all love, and let's just make sure that we value that today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you can start.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Amber Thompson. I'm your California State Delegate to the Democratic Party here in Ventura County. Tonight's decision is not simply about whether cars return to Main Street. It is about whether the council will stand with the people of Ventura or with a handful of wealthy landlords chasing higher appraisals. Main Street Moves works. The data is clear. Grocery receipts are higher than ever, vacancies are lower than in the rest of Ventura, and families have a safe, vibrant space to gather. This program has proven itself not just as a pandemic measure, but as an engine of community and economic resilience. The opposition is not about what's good for our city, it's about what's good for property values. Council, don't surrender the voice of the people to private profit. The question before you tonight is simple. Will Ventura move to the future with a thriving, family-friendly downtown, or will you turn your back and side with moneyed interests at the expense of our residents? I urge you, do your job and continue this council's legacy of standing with the people. Vote yes to keep Main Street closed to cars and open to our community. Thank you.
Benjamin Smith, Carolyn Stewart, Reema Munna.
I'd love to, I'd love to piggyback off of that. Like, the biggest issue here is going to be rent. All these restaurants, all these businesses closing down is because of rent. We have the same rental rate as Santa Barbara on State Street right now. With less expendable income and less people, tourist-wise, definitely, there's no way that a business can survive that without the money coming in. The other side is having Main Street closed to cars with the parklets and everything, we've easily created 100 to 200 jobs on that street. We close that down, guess what? You're getting rid of people's jobs. I don't think you guys really want that on your heads. I don't think so. Also, shout out, great little presentation. That was awesome. Bollards word of the day, I think. Also, shout out to you guys for staying under budget on this so far. That's awesome. Thank you.
Carolyn Stewart. Just a reminder to our speakers to speak as closely into the microphone as possible. You can go ahead and move it down if it's...
Thank you.
There you go.
I'm Carolyn Stewart. I live in District 3. Since Main Street has been closed to cars, it is now friendly for all people and families. People can walk down the street without worrying about being run over by impatient drivers. There are photo ops, events, bands to enjoy. I walk down Main Street, I go into shops I didn't realize were there before. We need to be forward-thinking and make Main Street a fun place to be. There are places in other cities and countries that have areas, parks, and places for people to meet up, have food, and enjoy the outside. We live in a beach town with gorgeous weather. The parklets have been one of the best things to come from this. My nephew can run down Main from the library to Rocket Fizz or to get ice cream without me telling him to stay on the sidewalk or to watch for cars constantly. Please keep Main Street car-free. Let's be a city that is unique and can be a fun destination, not just for locals, but our tourists. Let's make it a pedestrian mall for everyone to enjoy, and I love the children's area in front of the library. Thank you for your time.
Reema Munna, followed by Alyssa Gutierrez.
Good evening. I'm here to make a statement about the importance of keeping Main Street fully closed to cars. Main Street Moves has shaped the way our six-year-old daughter has grown up. Ever since she took her first steps, we have let her walk up and down Main Street, feeling safe that nothing was going to happen to her. We have spent countless hours making the shops, cafes, and downtown area part of our weekly, even daily, walk. Who doesn't want to stroll down the street, watch the sunset, and get dinner all at the same time? I have heard from countless people that the cafes and restaurants spilling out onto the streets have given the city a very European feel, satisfying tourists and local shoppers. Parking is ample, there are free lots on every other block, and walking anywhere is never long but short, no matter where you are going. The open street fosters community, finally, a place where families can feel safe and entertained at the same time. It is very hard to find anywhere in Ventura that is walkable, that satisfies everybody's needs. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alyssa Gutierrez. Alyssa, do you have the PowerPoint presentation? Great, we'll pull it up right now. The speaker won't display on the TV, which isn't ideal. It's over here, but you'll have a minute and 30 seconds.
I'll wait for a minute, so I think I'll be done.
Okay, great. And just give us a second while we pull up the presentation. And just go ahead and say next slide when, when you're ready.
Good evening, all. The Main Street Moves area is unique to the rest of the city. Though often compared to the Geo area downtown with whole, Main Street Moves is fundamentally different in its business mix and its development potential. Main Street Moves is a small area, about 3% of one square mile, but its 100-plus storefronts provide an outsized percentage of the city's shopping, dining, bars, and personal care services, many of which are small, family-owned and operated businesses. It also contains much of our city's cultural heritage, serving as a connection between our past and present. This is in stark contrast to the surrounding square mile, referred to as the downtown with whole. As the slide shows, you can find grocery stores, gas stations, lumber, car parts, hardware, and other recession-proof essentials not offered in the Main Street Moves area. This area has also seen many new developments and adaptive reuse since 2020, including over 400 new housing units. Please keep these differences in mind. No statistics or sales figures will ever demonstrate the full value of Main Street Moves, but direct comparisons to other areas present a misleading picture. Thank you.
Next speaker is Zachary Kitt. Keep the presentation up for the next several speakers. Okay. Yeah, whenever you're ready. Just let us know, next slide, whenever you're ready to change it.
Next slide, please. All right. So we know that the Main Street Moves area is unique, but what if Ventura had a similar mix of, sorry, what if Ventura itself had a similar mix of businesses to Main Street Moves? So the bar chart here shows recent sales tax data for the city, broken out by business type, which we got from the California Tax and Fee Administration. The line chart to the right shows sales tax trends for Main Street Moves, orange, and the city, blue, going back to 2021, the earliest data the city has. Next slide, please. We know that Main Street Moves lacks certain businesses based off business license data, so this is the city's tax revenue without those types. As you see, the sales tax trend changes. Next slide, please. We can also adjust the remaining categories so they're proportional, meaning if Main Street Moves has three times as many restaurants, the citywide restaurant revenue is multiplied by three. These changes make the citywide business mix look a lot more like Main Street Moves. And when we compare apples to apples like so, next slide, please, the sales tax trends behave similarly. I believe they reflect the wider economy. There is one exception. The Main Street Moves area grew faster than the reference model at the beginning of 2021. Thank you.
Next speaker, Nick Herson. Next speaker, Nick Herson.
All right, thanks for having me. I'm here with some more data to present. I want to quickly review the facts surrounding vacancy rates. So first off, retail space, as opposed to commercial office space, is the metric in question here. Those who cite high vacancy rates are doing so by lumping in commercial office space in their calculations, when in fact, these are two separate markets which should remain separate in this conversation. So the question is, is Main Street Moves good for the health of retail storefronts? Yes, it is. And we can refer to the data here, which we collected just by walking up and down various commercial areas. Put plainly, the Main Street Moves retail vacancy rate is below the citywide rate of 7%, which is great. Compare this to the collection, a destination of frequent comparison, which has a vacancy rate of 11.5%. Even worse still is the Pacific View Mall, an aging facility with a staggering vacancy rate of nearly 30%. I encourage you to keep this in mind when making your decision tonight. Thank you.
Edith Espajo, followed by Sam Felte.
Hello, City Council and city staff. I'm here to talk about the popularity of Main Street Moves. Main Street Moves is widely loved, and I have the data to back it up. Our team canvassed for less than two months in Ventura. We gathered a total of 5,442 unique signatures. We went through each entry to remove fake names and duplicates, and this was done by just a handful of volunteers during their spare time. The letter reads, "I want Main Street Moves to be permanent. Please do not reopen Main Street to cars." And if you'd like to know, our highest number of signatures came from Districts Two and Seven. I have here on the slide a map that represents non-resident signatures within the county and a map that represents non-resident signatures within the state. On the left, those numbers are how many folks from each city signed our petition, and on the right, those are unique cities that folks visited from. Next slide, please. And just for fun, these two maps represent non-resident signatures within the U.S. and the world. As you can see, the support is strong and centered within the county because we are a unique destination. And dozens of businesses also support Main Street Moves. If you can please go to the next slide. Businesses and institutions, there's just a list of over 45 that have been coming out in support. So please listen to your constituents and keep Main Street closed to cars. Thank you.
Sam Felte, followed by Camille Holden. Sam, are we keeping the PowerPoint up?
Counsel, thank you. Another data point I want to talk about, about the economic health of downtown, is how often businesses turnover. In other words, the churn rate. Even with our low vacancy rate, if storefronts are constantly changing, that'd be a measure of poor economic health. Long-lasting businesses help create a sense of permanence downtown. So is downtown disproportionately newer businesses? The answer is a resounding no. The churn rate is at a normal level. The Bureau of Labor Statistics puts the churn rate for California at between 4% to 5% per year, depending on the year and the specific sector. Downtown Main Street's churn rate is right in the middle of that range. The average age of a business is also healthy. In Main Street, in the Main Street Moves area, it's around 11, which maps with basically everything else, as you can see from the PowerPoint. Main Street continues to have a healthy mix of new and old businesses. The vacancy rate is low, and the turnover rate is in line with the rest of the state. Thank you.
Camille Holden.
Good evening. One of the arguments for reopening Main Street is accessibility. People worry that those with mobility challenges will be left out, and they're right to raise that concern. Fortunately, there are proven successful ways to address it. Santa Barbara launched the State Street Loop this May, as you can see up on the slide. And in just a few months, it's already served more than 8,600 riders, and they're considering not only continuing the program, but also expanding it. For riders, the service is free, easy to use, and includes an ADA accessible cart that carries wheelchairs and companions. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. Ventura's downtown is smaller than State Street by a lot. That means we could meet the same accessibility goals with fewer carts on a smaller budget while still ensuring that everyone can enjoy Main Street. So the choice isn't between walkability or serving people with mobility needs. We can do both. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jamir Davis. Is that the last speaker for the presentation? Great, thank you so much. Before our next speaker comes up, if you have an empty chair next to you, again, one more time, go ahead and raise your hand. For the folks standing in the back, feel free to take a seat if you'd like. Go ahead and keep those hands up. I know we have quite a few folks in the back. Go ahead, Jamir.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to support a full closure of Main Street. There's been a discussion about a hybrid closure as a compromise, but it doesn't address two key issues of accessibility and aesthetic improvements. A full closure would allow the city to install more transformative, appealing, and permanent improvements that residents and businesses have been asking for. True ADA accessibility, better lighting, seating, public restrooms, bathrooms, and more. On this slide, there are some of the opportunities available for a full closure. Full closure also makes more sense for small businesses. It's more affordable, provides more reliable business model, and based on the proposed hyperclosure, businesses would be required to replace the current parklets with fortified ones, pay a higher parklet rent, and higher insurance costs. The Hyper Solution was also the least popular amongst the local businesses on the closed area of Main Street when surveyed in 2024. A good compromise has aspects that appeal to all parties. That is not the case for the hybrid option. Again, I strongly encourage a support of a full closure of Main Street. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bryce Bryan, followed by Kristi Weir, Jeff Ingram, Evelyn Arnold, and Father Tom.
Good evening, City Council. Bryce Bryan here. We are the owners of the theater complex, and many of our folks enjoy going there and watching the movies and so forth. Tonight, I'd like to really urge the council to vote for Option A with a future look for an Option D. And the reason is, the thing that we love about Main Street, and I love Main Street, is what makes Main Street so great is the vibrant businesses that are in our community. And what we've seen is we've seen a drop. We were 100% full before COVID. 100% full when real COVID stopped, when I say that, in the next few years. But with the closure, we lost 20%. And we have a vacancy of 20%. And my fear, and we have communication and a very difficult time releasing those spaces. Everybody asks, what's going to happen with Main Street? 95% of those people that we've looked at want Main Street open in terms of new tenants. So my fear is, the thing we love the most about Main Street is that we would lose. So why Option B and C won't work? And we were all shocked last time we met that there was $230 million of claims. Those claims will not go away with B and C. They will turn into lawsuits. We have never been a part of a lawsuit. We've been supportive of the city. Our predecessor built the parking structure for free so that people could enjoy Main Street. And I'm out of time, but thank you for your time.
Kristi Weir, followed by Jeff Ingram, Evelyn Arnold, Father Tom, Lynn Thomas, Chris Frederick, Clyde Mears.
Good evening. The one main overarching consideration before you tonight is what is best for the future of this entire community, not just the downtown. You are deciding what to do with public property, five blocks of Main Street, but we need to decide how can that be used in the most beneficial way for all of our residents. You have heard overwhelming support for a car-free zone. One very small section of our city where the street is filled with people. People walking, people dining, shopping, sitting, dancing, gathering, all ages, safe, enjoying a shared community space. A space that features unique, locally-owned shops and restaurants, not chains. Not meant for quick stops, not meant for vehicles parking and staying five minutes. The entire rest of the city is filled with strip malls that have quick-stop parking everywhere in the entire city. Historic downtown is different. It's a place to linger, to enjoy, to slow down, to explore on foot, to live in community with our neighbors. Your decision tonight is whether to preserve and improve what has become a very popular and very loved car-free public space. We don't want a downtown full of chains that want cars. Please vote in favor of Option B. Thank you.
Jeff Ingram, followed by Evelyn Arnold.
Hello, good evening. My name's Jeff Ingram. I was a former resident of Ventura. Practiced law here and resided here from 1974 to 1988. I still own property in the county, but not in Ventura.
Jeff, apologies. Can I have you speak clearly into the mic?
Certainly. I'm here from the city of Grass Valley, where we had the same situation five years ago. Fearing the unknown, both sides engaged in a lot of heated arguments as to the anticipated success or failure of a permanent enclosure. The council took the brave step to keep the enclosure permanent so that the city could create a new and beautiful park, an urban park. Whether lit up at night or on a warm sunny day or on a snowy winter evening, the improvements that we have made are substantial and make it a wonderful place to gather, eat, shop, or just enjoy the beautiful surroundings. Grass Valley, which used to be second to Nevada City at Sister City rivalry, so to speak, is now known as Hallmark Town. The unknown in Grass Valley is now reality. The entire community loves its new park, where we have a venue for farmer's markets, car shows, museums, dances, and festivals. Our closure was a complete success. I anticipate your closure will be just as successful.
Evelyn Arnold. Followed by Father Tom.
Good evening. A couple of weeks ago, I was downtown, and there was a little girl that was taking names to keep Main Street closed. So I had to ask her, when do you come down here? Because I go down there every single day during the day. And she said, Thursday at 4:00, and it's popping. And I had to chuckle to myself because it's not popping. There's no popping going down on Main Street during the day or at night. Only on the weekends. We have a walking mall. It's called the Promenade. And we have a children's section at the beach for the children to play. The farmer's market can close one block for a day, a half a day, and you don't have to close the whole entire five blocks. I mean, who are we shutting it down for? Weekend warriors? Because that's the only time that it so-called pops. Downtown is the heart of Ventura. Don't kill it. What about the handicap? Not everyone has a wheelchair who is handicapped. Councilman Duran, I know your father, and he can't come downtown because it's closed. He has a walker. He's not. He doesn't have a wheelchair. Councilwoman Campos, you said that some of your friends can't come down and have lunch with you downtown because they don't have a wheelchair. Just remember the residents that have lived here for over 40 years that want Main Street back. Thank you.
Father Tom, Lynn Thomas, Chris Frederick, Clyde Mears, Carolyn Russell, Kalen Javali.
Good evening. Well, Mission Ventura is a faith community, but it also has real estate. In fact, I believe I represent the largest footprint of real estate on Main Street in the 200 block. I wholeheartedly support the closure of Main Street and the future establishment of a pedestrian mall. As stated in the past, I see the positive effects of the community gathering, walking down Main Street, and evidence of the security that has been brought because of the closure. Remember, I've lived there on Main Street for 15 years, and I see all those wonderful things happening. I believe statistics demonstrate the significant reduced empty retail space in the downtown district compared to Midtown, where Main Street is open, Mission Plaza, and the Pacific View Mall. There's no comparison that Main Street is thriving in comparison to those. So while there is no one reason for vacant real estate in the downtown corridor, I have heard from shop owners for the past 15 years, and time and again, that they need to close their business due to the significantly higher lease rate imposed upon them. I work with our leasees, and I keep our retail stores occupied. I support the permanent closure of Main Street. Our gift shop is 200% better. We're not about money, but it does help keep the place going. And I vote that you choose Option B. Thank you very much.
Lynn Thomas, Chris Frederick, Clyde Mears.
Hello. My name is Lynn Thomas, and I used to live in Westlake Village, and it's a very beautiful place. But I decided to move to Ventura. And the reason and the place that I decided to live in was because I can leave my house and I can walk, and I can walk down Main Street. I can go shopping. I can eat. I can walk to the grocery store. I can come back. There's no traffic, no people that I have to watch out for, or cars. I can walk to the beach. I can come back. And I know lots of people who do that, who walk everywhere that they go. They walk to their job. They walk to the beach. And other people who come. When I first came to Ventura, the first time I ever came, we couldn't park on Main Street. We drove down, and all we did was stop and wait for a light, and stop and wait for a light, and stop and wait for a light. And then we decided it's better to just drive to the beach and avoid coming here. So I can tell you that when you have a place to park, and then you can get out, and then you can walk, and you can discover all of those places at once, is really beneficial, not just to me, but to everyone. And I really appreciate it, and I know a lot of other people do too. And I think you should keep the area closed and just work on improving it and making it more inviting. Thank you.
Chris Frederick.
All right, I'm Chris Frederick, and I have lived in Ventura for about 33 years. And I've watched it change substantially over that time. And in my opinion, not every decision was great, but the trajectory has been great. And what I just saw presented here from the folks here, amazing. I love that. I love the way it looks, and I can imagine that being the downtown. At the moment, it's stuck, right? Because somebody's constantly fighting and proposing lawsuits. And so downtown is in kind of a mired state. So I would very much encourage the city council to vote for Option B. I think it would be a tremendous improvement. And I happen to agree with Steve Bennett as well. Having a long-term vision instead of a piecemeal, sort of a put-together, would benefit this city greatly. So again, please, consider that and consider Option B.
Clyde Mears, Carolyn Russell, Kalen Javali, Casey Rodriguez.
I'm Clyde, owner of Olive Ventura. The people of Ventura know what makes Main Street special. It's the sense of community and the vibrant atmosphere. Olive Ventura customers agree. Keeping Main Street closed to vehicles creates a safe, walkable space where people can linger, explore, and discover businesses, and spend more time with family and friends. You cannot do that in a car whizzing by at 30 to 40 miles an hour. Olive Ventura has been introduced countless times by the people who frequently walk and shop Main Street, and we appreciate them. Many business owners have valued the increased foot traffic, increased visibility, family-friendly atmosphere, and the car-free zone provides. Residents love it, too. I've been told by residents that they love the quieter streets, overall safer environment, and downtown area where events thrive. Reopening Main Street to vehicles would destroy the community's character, thereby harming small businesses, and set back for a number of years. Olive Ventura supports a closed Main Street and the continuation of building a downtown area for people, not cars.
Carolyn Russell, Kalen Javali, Casey Rodriguez, Corinne Pagano, John Perry.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Russell, and good evening, council and community members. I want to say I really appreciate everybody that had great formats that were up there in presentations. say I really appreciate everybody that had great formats that were up there in presentations. What I wanted to speak on was what the other lady just had said, and that's, use your memory. Do you remember what it was like going down to Main Street? You wanted to go to a movie or a restaurant, and you got stuck in that traffic, and you went, oh, my gosh, I didn't mean to go down Main Street. And so you quickly veer off because you're stuck behind some car that's waiting for someone to back out, and then you move up, and then there's another one. And in the meantime, people are walking by or whatever, and they're all smelling exhaust and having to be amongst all the car fumes and everything else. So relying back on memory, it wasn't that pleasant when we had cars going down there, and lots of stopping as well. A second area I wanted to talk about was mental health. We are in a culture right now, and we have a lot of feelings of isolation, loneliness, lack of a sense of belonging. Opening up this and having this all closed off, and opening up to dancing, to restaurants, being outdoors, we are developing a community, and people are thriving and enjoying this, and having more of a sense of community and less loss. So I do encourage you to vote for B, for the permanent closure. There's no cost you can put on developing community.
Kalen Javali, Casey Rodriguez, Corinne Pagano, John Perry, Jeff Stewart.
Hello, council members. My name is Kalen Javali, and I urge you to keep Main Street closed to cars. I am a local land use planner, and I moved to Ventura a little over a year ago. And one of the primary reasons I moved here was because Main Street was closed to cars. I specifically loved how the city was prioritizing walkable, car-free community spaces in the central part of the city. Now, more than ever, young people like myself are seeking these accessible spaces to establish connections and roots in places like Ventura. Young people, those with disabilities, and children deserve equal access to community spaces, especially in a city that has historically and continues to price us out. Ventura needs to focus on creating more of these spaces, not less. And in my opinion, the benefit of two hundred additional parking spaces downtown does not justify the loss of invaluable community space. Citizens have less expendable income nowadays, but that is not a reason to take away a free public gathering space. And vehicles do not equate economic success. I am proud to be a part of a community that values public spaces as much as the city of Ventura. And on that note, I urge you to, I urge the city council to keep Main Street closed to cars, to continue to foster an accessible and safe community for all. Thank you so much for your time.
Casey Rodriguez.
Stand with community. Keep Main Street closed to cars with slight adjustment. Provide mobile service for those in need. For everyone plays a crucial role in community building. Main Street closure has provided a priceless space where community gathers, where citizens are empowered by our shared humanity, shining light to our commonalities, and building a city full of love and peace. Nuturing and uplifting safe community spaces is true beauty and only answer to healing our city and country, not lavish corporations and businesses. Throughout this year, council has emphasized our enculture generates substantial financial assets for our city. Assets will be profoundly lost if we open the streets. In regards to Main Street Vision Plan, please reach out to Schumash Elder, Julie Timmott Stinsley. For Schumash Culture is the original culture of this land. Thank you, Councilwoman Campos, for always being your district's hero. Ventura Pop for all your hard work outside. Take a look, that's a glimpse of the community we are building. And lastly, thank you, The Happy Place for dinner tonight.
Corinne Pagano, John Perry, Jeff Stewart, Tom Hill, Riley N., Jason Adcock, Barbara Brown.
Hello, city council. I'm Corinne Pagano. I'm owner of Night Owl Cider Works at 607 East Main Street, along with my husband and cider maker, John. Please vote for option B to keep Main Street car-free and not reduce the closure area. Also, we request research on an entertainment zone, please. Unlike many others, we are recent investors in downtown Main Street. Many folks reflect on Main Street Ventura of the past. We are focused on downtown Main Street of the future. We opened in January, and some of you are at our ribbon cutting. And we're family-owned. We have seven kids. One of our kids is the general manager and is a resident of downtown Ventura and walks to work. We've invested over $100,000 in our business and into bringing people into downtown Ventura to build community. A large part of our business plan is events, and our parklet has been a major benefit to us in bringing additional people into our tasting room and building around that community by expanding our seating area both inside and outside. We chose our location to be part of the downtown business community, and we're thrilled in February when we thought the closure would be permanent, and equally disappointed that we are revisiting this decision as we've modified our business plan and made investments to take advantage of the street closure. The future of Main Street will have a direct impact on the viability of our business in its current location and the removal of seating available and events on our parklet. New innovative businesses like ours will benefit from Main Street being a community and visitor destination. Small family businesses are uniting to make Main Street amazing, and we-
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Perry, followed by Jeff Stewart, Tom Hill.
Good evening. I have to apologize that I didn't get my act together enough to be able to get an artist's rendering of my concept of what Ventura, Main Street could be. But I have provided copies for the council here, and I have some flyers I can hand out later if anybody's interested. My recommendation is that we not only go ahead with the vision plan, but we take it to one step further, one level higher, that will really make Main Street into a tourist attraction, a destination. And that is to introduce into the park area that would become a sizable number of large sculptures. You know, when you have a few public sculptures around, it's very pleasant, and people enjoy them. But when you reach a critical mass of art, you have essentially an outdoor art museum. And you have a place where art lovers and other people will come from miles away just to see this. And it would really make the Main Street into something more than just a pedestrian shopping center. It would be an outdoor art park. And the benefit of that would be the art galleries would probably flourish, interior design stores, furniture stores, there are already a number of them on the street. They're doing very well. And other art-related stores would be attracted to the area, and it would be a stimulus and a very positive major uptick to the whole concept. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a resident of District Three of Ventura native, born just a couple miles from here in what was then known as Foster Memorial. I did move away for a time, and I couldn't wait to return to Ventura. I am thrilled to be back in my hometown, and I was especially happy to find that we have made it easier, safer, and better to explore Ventura by way of Main Street Moves. You know, thanks to Ventura Pops, who did a great job tonight, but they also set up some special things going on Sunday. I spent most of my days Sunday downtown, and it really wasn't enough. It wasn't enough time. I enjoyed it so much seeing things that I hadn't seen down there before, because I took a little more time, and it only made me want to go back and keep spending more time there and more. So I love it. Thank you to the staff for the Ventura Vision Plan, too. That was excellent, and I liked what I heard from Mr. Perry before me. I do suggest, obviously I support Main Street Moves full-on in the pedestrian mall someday soon. I do suggest that we fix the common verbiage, however, because good is, I mean, open is inherently positive word, closed is inherently negative. What the majority of us are trying to do is keep Main Street safe and open for pedestrians by keeping it closed to cars in the areas described. Cars would make it less safe, less available to pedestrians, and less desirable place to be. Let's keep Main Street open to pedestrians and closed to cars. Thank you. I hope you're able to do the right thing tonight.
Tom Hill, Riley N., Jason Adcock, Barbara Brown, Amy Rogers, Aaron Duncan, Jennifer S.
Good evening. My name's Tom Hill, and I'm the founder, owner of Iron and Resin. And we're on, we have our flagship brand store downtown Main Street, 324 East Main Street. We've been there going on fourteen years now. And, you know, as a brand that's built on building community, we love Main Street Moves. The street closure's been great for us. And just to kind of share some information about our business, since the closure, 2021, 2020, beginning of COVID, we had to close for about a year and a half to do an earthquake retrofit. So we sort of missed the beginning of COVID and reopened our first full year in 2021. That year, we did sixty percent above our best year ever prior to the closure. And since then, we've done consistently between thirty and forty-six percent up over our best year. So for us, from a business perspective, the closure's been fantastic. We also have the benefit of, you know, being on Main Street all day, every day, and talking to customers. And, you know, in this day and age, when you can pull out a device in your pocket, push a button, and have, you know, a product or a meal show up on your doorstep within hours, you know, there's this overarching need now for, you know, human connection, community, people to have a place to gather. And the only place that exists in Ventura, in the city right now, that you can do that is downtown. So I encourage you to vote for option B, keep the street closed.
Thank you. Riley N., Jason Adcock, Barbara Brown.
Hi, my name is Riley Neizdell. I have lived in my apartment in downtown Ventura, I rent, I don't own, for eight years. I've personally loved it being open to pedestrians this whole time and closed to cars. But I have also just loved the safety overall that it's brought to downtown. I think everyone probably recognizes the guys in the red jackets on their bicycles. But they're super helpful. And I was the general manager of Lure Fish House in downtown Ventura for two years, 2022 to 2024. And now I oversee Ventura, Santa Barbara, and Slow. I worked for Lure for ten years. But I was the GM when our parklet was being built, and it was a huge, amazing thing for everyone involved. And I'd also just like, to everyone that has a parklet, we employ more people because of our parklets. All of the restaurants, I assume, the retailers as well. But if we take out all of the parklets, there are quite a few people that are going to be losing their jobs over this next season. And I just think it's really important to remember that. And I just want to say, too, like, the Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica is one of the biggest attractions in all of LA. And I think we've kind of created our own little cute, fun version in Ventura, and I'd like to see it stay thriving and beautiful for everyone involved. Thank you.
Jason Adcock.
I'm the front desk manager at the Amonzi Hotel, which is located just two blocks south of Main Street. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our business that we would like to see Main Street remain open to pedestrians and closed to vehicles. We believe that the street closure has had a positive impact on our business, and by extension, the greater economic development in Ventura. As a hotelier, I attempt to work as an ambassador for our city. The downtown area is uniquely situated as a tourist destination with plentiful outdoor activities, historical locations, boutique shopping, multiple entertainment venues, and some of the best dining options in the Central Coast. Of course, we are also blessed with the very best year-round weather in the world. An outdoor pedestrian mall within walking distance of the iconic Ventura here represents a unique opportunity to leverage these strengths for the economic development of the downtown area. I have seen firsthand the positive reaction that my customers, my guests at my hotel, have had to the Main Street Moves project, and witnessed many returning customers who are eager to visit the street closure and spend money there. Tourist dollars are not only a boon for local businesses, they also contribute valuable tax revenue to the city. Not only do we support the street closure, we support further developing the street closure into a permanent fixture with green spaces, public artworks, family-friendly features. We believe that Main Street Moves is only beginning to realize its potential, and we encourage the council to seize this opportunity.
Barbara Brown, Amy Rogers, Aaron Duncan, Jennifer S., Eric Berg, Lip Wit, Anita Rafferty.
First, I just, so I'm Barbara Brown. I just want to say to Rachel Diamond and staff that that was a really great presentation, super thorough, very informative, and kind of exciting, actually. So thank you for that. As a longtime advocate for businesses and jobs, and a business owner myself, part-time, part-closed seems like a business nightmare. How do you plan for that? How do you hire up for that? How do you create supplies for that? I don't know anybody that wants a two-day-a-week job, and I don't know anybody that wants a two-day-a-week job on Saturday and Sunday. So if we're about jobs, if we're about employment, if we care about the economic vitality of our community, then I think part-closed and part-open would be very difficult. In addition to that, I can't imagine what a nightmare it would be for city staff. It just seems almost impossible. And as far as I know, a significant amount of the city staff doesn't work the weekends. So that, you know, that's another thing to weigh into this. How are we going to do this? Secondly, from a very rough count, my guess is that we will lose from three hundred to five hundred revenue-generating tables. We don't want to do that. Those are jobs. And on top of that, these business owners have invested heavily in these parklets. Lure is a great example. Those are really nice.
Thank you.
They have floor, okay.
Aaron Duncan, Jennifer S., Eric Berg, Aaron Duncan, Jennifer S.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. Thank you for that great presentation. I live in District Seven. I've lived here for almost three years. And recognizing my privilege, I say very jokingly that I'm a refugee of Simi Valley. I came to Ventura strictly because of the community that I felt visiting, and through my friends who lived here for many years. My family has a history here, so this is rooted in community that I wanted to partake in. I just want to share that I also have family and friends that don't live here in Ventura, and I am now the host of almost everyone I know, because they all want to come to Ventura on any three-day weekend, any chance to visit. They're coming to me. This has been such an important part of developing my life here in Ventura. And from all the people I know, everywhere that I go, this is a high point of Ventura. I can speak just to acknowledge how hard it is to work. I work for a neighboring agency. I work as staff presenting to members for decisions. I know the conversations that happen and the hard work that it takes to get an item to you. I just want council members to remember that the people who had the time to come out today, myself and my neighbors, were people of great privilege, who had the time and the resources to come and sit here all night with you. Please remember that we are a sampling, and you represent the entire city. So we are speaking on behalf of all of our neighbors who couldn't make it out tonight. So thank you for your consideration.
Aaron Duncan, Eric Berg, Lip Wit.
Thank you, city council, for taking the time to hear us. Eight and a half years ago, a chef and a bartender loved the town so much that they opened a beer and pizza joint in an old insurance building on Fern Main. I'm Aaron Duncan. My partner, Jen, we own Fluid State. We had no idea that, how literal we were going to have to take that name when we opened it, but here we are. After the Thomas fire, we dusted ourselves off and got to building our business, because we felt like, that felt like a massive emergency. And we slowly grew it, and by 2019, we felt pretty confident that things were headed in the right direction. And then COVID threw us a curveball. And the city, the city's response helped a lot. Now, in 2025, our sales are sixty-four percent higher than they were in 2019. And it's no small part because of the closure and the giant parklet we have in front of us. Obviously, a car for Main Street helped. Fluid State joins over forty-five downtown businesses. Fluid State joins over 45 downtown businesses and most of our very local customers that support a permanent closure. Now, all we need is you. Um, we've been waiting with these pallets and these, this dilapidated closure for so long because we've just never had a, had the green light, uh, no pun intended. Um, and, uh, and we cannot wait. I know that I speak for myself, obviously, and then
Thank you.
Okay. We can't wait to do it.
Eric Berg, Lib Wit, Anita Rafferty, Brian Miller, Colby Holman, Bogdam.
Good evening, staff, my, or Mayor, council members, staff as well, not to discredit. I just actually want to commend, that was one of the best staff presentations I've seen. Incredible job. Um, I'm a Ventura resident, 13 years. I'm also a principal landscape architect and urban designer, um, with Pacific Coast Land Design. Our office is on the 400 block of Main Street, um, and has been there since 2019. I can say firsthand, Main Street is better now than the closure, than before the closure. Quieter, safer, far more inviting to walk, shop, dine, and work. The Pedestrian Mall Act in 1960 was created to save downtowns. And while many early experiments failed, it wasn't, a mall's not a new idea. This has been going on for 60 years. Um, many of them failed. Um, the ones that have succeeded have succeeded because the communities invested in them in a public space and they took pride in it. That is exactly the choice you have in front of you tonight. For five years, Ventura has had its own case study. You've seen that it works, that it's good. Now is the chance to make it great. With more programming and vision effort already underway, what's needed is most is certainty. Certainty to unlock private investment, to justify our public improvements, to solidify this as the heart of Ventura. Do not delay with another short-term fix, extend the closure, and make the commitment. You have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to shape Ventura's future. Please don't squander it.
Lib Wit, Anita Rafferty, Brian Miller.
Howdy. I moved here in the 1900s, so I've been here a while. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, it, I went to Ventura High School, so downtown is part of my experience of this town. It was a huge impression on me. And as soon as I got a license, I stopped going. And, uh, once it, the street closed down, I went back. And you honestly could not pay me to walk, to, to, to drive on that street. If it reopened, I would just give up on it entirely. Uh, if you want, uh, a third place for people to build community and want to stay in your community, and, uh, you want to deal with this bizarre, uh, division that we've got going on right now in, uh, all across, uh, everything, then you need third places where people can meet each other and understand that they're all human beings. And you get that by not having a quick stop and go, everything's centered around cars. Cars have never been the answer, but community is. So please support option B and have a good night.
Anita Rafferty, Brian Miller, Colby Holman, Bogdam, Pete Appel, Eileen Ottenwiler.
Thank you for this meeting. Um, I've been a resident of this beautiful city for 34 years. I've seen many positive changes during my time here. The beautiful botanical gardens installed and then rebuilt again after the fires. The hillside conservancy created to protect our hills and neighborhoods. The bike lanes installed along the coast highway to allow bikers to travel up and down the coast, protected from traffic. And then, the piece de resistance, the closure of our downtown due to the COVID outbreak, that created the closure of streets and the installation of outdoor spaces to our, on our downtown streets. I am in favor of Main Street remaining open to pedestrians. There are many beach cities in California that have closed their main streets, too many to name. We have frequently visited the cities of Laguna Beach and Santa Barbara that have permanently closed their main downtown streets to traffic with much success. We need to walk the streets in these towns in ours. We have discovered, we have discovered so many places to shop and dine that we may not have discovered otherwise if we were driving to our destination. Like many European countries, where it's uncommon, it's common place to walk. I want the same for our cities, not just here in California, but all over the United States. There are so many health benefits to walking. When you are shopping, you forget you are exercising. I understand there are folks that are unable to walk. There is free
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if you hear your name being called for public comment, feel free to line up, or there's some seats now in the front to help expedite the public comment process. Go ahead and line up. Brian Miller, Colby Holman, Bogdam, Pete Appel, Eileen Ottenwiler, Claire Goodrich.
Good evening. My name's Brian Miller. I'm the owner of American Flags and Cutlery. Uh, I've been up here a couple times and I've told most of you how I feel about Main Street Moves. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for downtown. I personally, like many others have stated, I hated driving on Main Street. I love it now. Uh, it's been a great opportunity for our business. We've been able to grow, bring new products and new services to Main Street, uh, to our business, which in turn help our community. Um, I'm going to keep it short and simple there. Uh, so you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Colby Holman.
Hello, council. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Colby Holman, the owner of the Rocket Fizz location here in Ventura. And I'd like to talk about how the Main Street Moves street closure has affected me as a business owner. I've seen a remarkable increase in foot traffic, uh, since the street closure began. At Rocket Fizz, we've had consistently over a 100% increase in revenue, uh, since prior to street closure. Um, our holiday weekends prior to the street being closed have turned into a, an average Saturday now with the closure. Um, and the, the growth that my business has experienced allowed me to hire more employees. I've been able to increase their wages. I carry a great variety of products. And I've been able to expand to another location out in San Luis Obispo. Uh, the Main Street Moves street closure has created a vibrant community space in the heart of Ventura. And I believe with continued investment and enthusiasm towards the Main Street project, we can create a prominent and successful area for businesses and restaurants to succeed. And we'll have a friendly and inviting environment for locals and for tourists and visitors. Thank you.
Bogdam, Pete Appel, Eileen Ottenwiler, Claire Goodrich, Stephen Schaefer, Larry Abell, Jenny Tang, Cynthia Spargna.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a Ventura resident and a property owner. And a few weeks ago, me and my wife were walking down the Main Street Mall, which we love. And we saw somebody collecting signature to keep it car-free. And I was kind of confused. I was like, what, we're actually arguing about it again? And, um, and then I was notified that there is a lawsuit pending against the city. And, uh, being a lawyer myself, I immediately ran home. I downloaded lawsuit and I read it. It's an inverse condemnation claim. And, um, for an inverse condemnation claim, as many of you may know, the most difficult element of that, uh, lawsuit is to prove damages and to prove specific damages. In the lawsuit, the plaintiffs claim 10 specific examples of damages. And with some very basic research, uh, just from public records, I was able to essentially dismiss all 10 of those claims. So I think it's a lawsuit that will be very difficult for the plaintiff to win. And it's a very defensible lawsuit for the city. So I encourage the city to choose option B, to fight the lawsuit and to make Ventura awesome. Thank you.
Bogdam. Oh, that's you. Got it. You want to go again? Just kidding. Uh, Pete Appel, Eileen Ottenwiler, Claire Goodrich, Stephen Schaefer, Larry Abell. Go ahead and just state your name. Eileen?
Hi, yes.
Thank you so much.
Greetings, council members, city staff, and fellow residents. My name is Eileen Ottenwiler and tonight with my colleague, Claire. I'm speaking on behalf of Patagonia, the global outdoor apparel brand based at, uh, 259 West Santa Clara Street in Ventura. We've been based in Ventura since the founding in 1973 and currently employ over 600, uh, people locally and nearly 4,000 globally. In addition to our corporate campuses, we operate retail stores and a surf store in a downtown area. And I personally have lived in District One for the past six and a half years and use Main Street almost every day. Patagonia believes in a more walkable, bikeable Ventura. We think it's the right choice and best for the city's future. We urge the council to listen to the citizens and to, speaking to the long-term vision, stay consistent with the great guidance and input recently concluded in the city's 2050 general plan, which also affirms the benefit of keeping Main Street car-free. So in essence, we support, uh, maintaining the closure. A safe, pedestrian-first Main Street makes Ventura more attractive for prospective employees and directly contributes to recruitment and retention efforts for businesses in the area, including ours. We have many employees who walk and bike commute to work, a lot with their children in tow, uh, to our offices daily. And they've benefited from the closure and the safety that comes with the current policy on Main Street. And on bike access concerns, we strongly encourage the city council to continue to invest in safer corridors for
Thank you.
non-car travel. Thank you.
Claire Goodrich, Stephen Schaefer, Larry Abell, Jenny Tang.
Hi, council members and city staff. Uh, my name is Claire Goodrich and I'm a resident of District One and an employee of Patagonia for the past eight and a half years, um, in continuation of our, our Patagonia comment. Since our founding, we've worked with local groups and people to advocate for the safety and welfare of the city's citizens. From our earliest grants to Friends of the Ventura River in the early 70s to supporting clean, um, grassroots groups advocating for clean air, our employees live, work, and play in Ventura and are invested in the city's success. In addition to the increased safety and retention power that keeping Main Street car-free provides, we believe a car-free zone also encourages human-powered travel, which reduces pollution, strengthens climate resiliency, and contributes to the general well-being of all. Main Street has become a beloved community gathering place for locals and tourists alike, and our employees have enjoyed spending time and patronizing the businesses in the car-free blocks downtown. Many of our employees gather downtown for meetings or lunch by walking or biking from campus. And a downtown free from cars is a draw for families with young children as well. We look forward to learning more about the city's plans, including any additional investments necessary to ensure an equitable access downtown that improves walkability and accessibility, preserving a car-free Main Street for all. We believe this type of investment would only help Ventura while prioritizing the safety of all modes of transportation. And we are here to help support these goals in however way we can. Please vote for the permanent closure of Main Street. Thank you.
Stephen Schaefer, Larry Abell, Jenny Tang, Cynthia Spargna, Martha Kantos, Casey Goff, Dana Worshop.
Awesome job, even for the new guy. I mean, yeah, the staff, that was fantastic. Um, nice super-spreader you've got going here. This is, this is fantastic. Sorry. Um, my name is Steve Schaefer. Um, I guess I'm going to be the poster child for flex hybrid because everybody is either A or B. But whether you call it flex or hybrid or a compromise, we've all gotten used to Ventura High School's flex street closure, so it is possible. Downtown was great in 2010. I don't know if you got my photographs. It was great in 2015. It was great in 2019 with cars. It wasn't that bad. Downtown has supported the new vision plan for 20 years. Close it all 52 weekends, open it all 52 weeks, but invest in it. Close it for farmers markets and street fairs and parades and events. Facilitate fortified parklets for restaurants, subsidize them if you want. On weekdays when it's open, ratchet down auto speeds with humps and bumps and mid-block stop signs at crosswalks. Paint more disabled and 20-minute spaces. Vote for option C, add the bumpouts and the kids' zones. Close upper California streets, set up a parent-permanent stage. Do what it takes to combine the best of A and B. Make Main Street thrive on Tuesdays as well as on Saturdays. Make downtown Ventura the model of how a flex street can be and other cities will come here to see how it's done. Thank you very much.
Larry Abell. Jenny Tang, again, if you would, help us line up. Cynthia Spargna, Martha Kantos, Casey Goff, Dana Worshop, Elizabeth Goldbaum.
Good evening, council members. My name is Larry Obely. I am the current board president of Bike Ventura. Uh, we champion transportation equity, ensuring that everyone has safe transportation access to jobs, education, and healthcare. One of the reasons I moved to Ventura 20 years ago was because of the Ventura River Trail. It's a nine-mile, car-free path from Ventura to Ojai. Serene, safe ride-through countryside, free from all the traffic stress. Now, we have Main Street Moves. This complements creating a free, uh, creating a free, vibrant, pedestrian-only space in downtown Ventura. The only place in the county where walkers are truly, have safe public access. As most know, in the US, cars annually kill 40,000 to 50,000 people. This is a similar number to the gun deaths in this country. So while cars dominate most of Ventura County, uh, I believe Main Street Moves would prioritize and foster community that we love. We must preserve Main Street Moves to keep downtown unique, safe, and alive. Please protect the treasures for all of us. Thank you.
Jenny Tang, Cynthia Spargna, Martha Kantos, Casey Goff, Dana Worshop, Elizabeth Goldbaum, Jan Schuster.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Tang and I'm a resident of District Two. Ever since I've moved to Ventura, strolls on Main Street on weekdays and weekends have been a highlight of my life. Every guest that we host has loved the unique Ventura experience specifically because of Main Street and a feeling, the feeling, the sense of community among walkers, families, and friends. It is clear to everyone here that an open, public space for humans to exist is essential to sustaining community in an era of loneliness and fragmentation. With that, every foot of space we cede to cars, to the interest of profit and property over people, is a foot lost to you and me. A typical sidewalk is three feet in width. That is one and a half of this podium that I stand behind. We cannot live our life within a three-foot path. Kids aren't safe there. Pets aren't safe there. We can't linger there. It would be a heartbreaking shame to lose our prime gathering spot and to be confined in this narrow walkway. The data is clear, our voices are clear, and the opportunity is clear. I truly hope you have the courage to listen and be the leaders that we have voted for. Thank you very much.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. Great presentation, one of the best I've seen in four or five years. I've been coming to these meetings. Uh, I just want to, um, I'm partner and co-partner and owner of Jellyfish Ventura Downtown. And on March 15th, 2020, my sister and I opened the doors to Jellyfish just so that we could close them on March 17th. COVID, COVID shutdowns began. Luckily, Main Street Moves was established and Main Street Ventura was closed to vehicular traffic in June of 2020. The public embraced Ventura because the street was closed. What became an emergency measure evolved into a great destination for families and friends to gather and enjoy the freedom of walking, shopping, and dining in a special community with a special ambiance. Ventura is a beach town, attracting visitors from nearby cities, counties like San Fernando Valley, Simi Valley, High Desert, Santa Clarita, and beyond. We also have many international customers. Just yesterday, I had people in from Germany. Our customers love Main Street. They embrace it. They have such a good time. And we also have countless local Ventorians who tell us how much they enjoy today's vibe on Main Street. They enjoy walking on Main Street, visiting their favorite coffee shops and restaurants and stores. They also recall pre-COVID days when downtown Ventura was dirty and noisy and populated with many transits and/or drug addicts filling the sidewalk. I have someone I know that had a daughter who worked downtown and her husband used to pick up her daughter because, this is years ago, because they were afraid of her, um, in fear of her because of the homeless and, and, um, the drug addicts approaching her. And this location was Jerry's Ice Cream. And this time period was 20 years ago. So it's been tough down there for a long time before the, the current downtown. And it looks, it's getting better. I know
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Kantos.
Hello. Benefits to Main Street closure. No more pedestrian accidents caused by drivers rushing, rushing the pedestrian across the street faster. No more rear-ending cars backing out of the parking spaces. No more soliciting prostitution in front of our businesses. We've created a community among locals, visitors, law enforcement, city officials, and businesses. I've seen families come together, children learn how to walk, people making Ventura their meeting vacation destination. We cannot forget the ambassadors who serves us in a lot, who serves a large area of downtown Ventura. The closure of Main Street helps them to assist us rather fast, many times faster than law enforcement. The cost for full closure is huge, but is one The cost for full closure is huge, but is 100% a community investment. My kids are watching. Thank you.
Casey Goff, Dana Worshop, Elizabeth Goldblum, Jan Schuster, Natalie Johnston, Kenan Rubenstein.
Hi, I'm Casey Goff. I've lived in District Seven for 10 years now. First off, great presentation, Rachel. That was awesome. Main Street Moves has transformed our city in all the ways we want. It's made it more vibrant, welcoming, and active. I have a friend who specifically moved here from Hollywood because she was won over by the pedestrian-friendly Main Street. I know based on your previous votes that this council supports Main Street Moves. I hope this outpouring of support from the public validates that decision. I know we haven't fully adopted the new general plan yet, but you all did approve the mission statement back in 2022, and I just want to call out a key portion of it. We will proactively improve our city in key areas such as retail, tourism, the arts, clean industries, housing, and transit. These areas will be vibrant and accessible, with streets that are safe and attractive for all users, especially for pedestrians and cyclists. Please don't let a few loud and muddied voices drown out the public. Please vote for option B and consider the entertainment venue with it. Thank you so much.
Dana Worshop. What, sorry, what was your name?
I'm Elizabeth.
Go for it.
I won't take long.
And then Dana's next. Okay.
All right, I'm Elizabeth Goldblum. I'm new to Ventura. I've been here three years. I love Main Street, closed to cars, open to pedestrians. You've had some really eloquent speakers here today, and your presentations and all the extra data points. I've been looking at your notes. I've been looking at the legal documents. I've been looking at all the data. I've been talking to people on the streets, and I just encourage you to vote to keep Main Street closed to cars, open to pedestrians. Thank you.
Dana Worshop, Jan Schuster, Natalie Johnston, Kenan Rubenstein, Michelle McKinley.
I am, my name is Dana Worshop, and I'm a resident of District One, and for the last four-something years, close to four years, I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee along with Casey. And Rachel, that was, you and your staff did a stunning job. Thank you. And as Casey said, the vision statement for Main Street Moves is like this little mini version of what the general plan, that I know you're going to get to in the next couple of months for final approval. But Ventura is actually a medium-sized city that has this precious small-town feel, and it's also a beach town. And how to preserve that is something that the general plan tries to address. An overarching vision in it is to create essentially villages or neighborhoods within a larger city where people can come together, where, that are walkable, and where we get to slow down and connect and look at each other in the face, which, golly, we need now as much or more than ever. And that is part of what we, that I think Main Street turns out to be like a perfect place to try to do that. We can't get rid of the 101, alas. But we can, as Assemblymember Bennett said, keep our connection to the ocean, which is the other thing that keeps me sane in Ventura.
Jan Schuster, Natalie Johnston, Kenan Rubenstein, Michelle McKinley, Richard Neve, Gabe Swan, Kristy Grayson-Bates.
Hi, I'm Jan Schuster, and I own Casa Bella Downtown, and I have been there for a little over eight years. And first of all, I want to let you know that because of what's happened here and because of the events that have taken place over the last three weeks, all the business owners have really gathered together, were on a group chat, and there's over 100 of us who are all committed to working together with the city to make this happen. Doesn't mean that all of us want the street to remain closed, but we all are committed to working together, whatever that decision be. And so I think that's just amazing part of what's happened here, because we are committed to making Ventura amazing. On top of that, because I've been here as long as I have, I can see the difference between what was before and what was now. And I went downtown because I thought I was going to get all this walk-by traffic, but that wasn't happening on the 300 block and the 200 block. That was happening in other areas. We're seeing it now because of the closure. We need the closure for us in this area to make it work. So for us, the COVID closure was the silver lining of everything that happened here. We are just so excited now that I see what you guys are planning, because this is the first time we've really seen this. I cannot tell you how excited I am, because I can see the vision and the future of what we're going to do here in Ventura. And I think that we're going to do really great big things. So to me, if you build it, they're going to come. They're going to come. I promise.
Natalie Johnston, Kenan Rubenstein, Michelle McKinley, Richard Neve, Gabe Swan, Kristy Grayson-Bates.
Hi, I'm Natalie Johnston, and I'm a former student at St. Bonaventure. I graduated in 2017, right down the street. And as soon as I was old enough, I was really excited that I was able to take myself on what I called solo dates, where I would go to downtown, and I would go thrifting, I would go see a movie, take myself to dinner. And that was a pretty regular occurrence for me. Never once did I park on Main Street. It just made no sense when I had to pay for it and there was terrible traffic, when there are free lots in a garage just a block or two away. It's pretty easy now for us just to walk a couple of blocks again. And I just, I don't see any drawbacks to keeping it open to pedestrians. I see instead so many benefits. It's easy to cross from one side of the street to the other. The air is cleaner. We have a community space where I've seen people line dancing. And as a substitute teacher, it makes me especially happy to see kids outside that's becoming harder and harder to find. When I think generally about what an ideal urban space looks like to me, it's oriented around people, not cars. I enjoy Main Street even more than I used to, and I ask you to please keep it fully open to pedestrians and also to consider opening it to bikes as well. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenan. I live downtown, and it's my dream to open a board game café on Main Street. Place to bring your family, gather with friends, meet a first date for coffee and a game. Not Monopoly, that game's awful. But there's one about bird sanctuaries, there's one about race cars, Dune, the Desert Planet, they're all very good. The reason this establishment doesn't exist is not because you can't drive down five blocks of Main Street, it's because there's no way to afford Main Street rents running a board game café. I've done the math. There are lots of open spaces, but the prices never come down because the whole supply and demand thing stops working when there's a, what's the word? Monopoly, still awful. As it happens, a handful of monopolists own all the commercial space in town and refuse to lower rents on empty buildings lest they risk devaluing their other investments. The very same monopolists who keep trying to bury our sweet, small, resource-limited city with frivolous lawsuits. Do we have any choice but to give them what they want? Yes, we have lots of choices. We can impose a vacancy tax. We can and should use eminent domain to take over empty buildings. The one thing we can't do is roll over and try to appease our bullies. If we do, if we end Main Street Moves, will they leave us alone? Of course not. They're going to see that we're Marx and find new ways to steal our lunch money. We all learned this as kids, from board games. A monopolist can win, they can get everything they want, and they don't get any nicer. So let's have some spine. Thank you.
Michelle McKinley, Richard Neve, Gabe Swan, Kristy Grayson-Bates, Jennifer Ganshorn, Tina Thayer, Whitney Reed, Adam Leonard.
That was a good one. I just want, I support keeping Main Street closed and urge you all to do the same. I want to make three points. I love so much just seeing people on Main Street, seeing families. They're often rolling by. They're on scooters, they're on wagons with three kids in there, all generations. It's glorious. And teenagers have a safe place to hang out, to get them away from the video games, get them off the computer out on Main Street. It's a beautiful scene. The other couple of points I wanted to make is I don't support these lawsuits. I feel like suing the city of Ventura is the same as suing the residents and the taxpayers of Ventura. So it kind of makes me mad. And the third point I wanted to say is, my sister works for the SBA, and she's involved in the Laguna Beach Chamber of Commerce. She was, we were discussing this. She said Laguna Beach has a terrible problem with small business turnover and restaurant turnover because of the high rents. And it's, they've been increasing for 10, 20 years, and it is that one factor that is hurting the small businesses in Laguna Beach. Thank you.
Evening, council and staff. Nice to see you all again. My name is Dr. Richard Devey. I'm a professor of political science here at Ventura College. I just wanted to sort of amplify and speak to the broader historical context in which we're operating in. Pedestrian malls in the United States are successful when they're envisioned as arts, culture, and entertainment districts, not as shopping malls. If you try that, it will fail, because people are going to shop online, they're going to go, you know, we know the reasons why businesses are all struggling. The way that you create a thriving pedestrian mall is you treat it as an arts and culture area that brings people in. And I, as I wrote in my policy memo, there are four pillars of successful pedestrian malls, which are accessibility, use, design, and comfort. Ventura has an extremely strong foundation in all four of them. So all we need to do is make the pedestrian closure, or sorry, the, we got, getting confused now, going back and forth with lingo. Keep it open to pedestrians and invest in it, right? These are all solvable problems, right? There are issues we need to address, but we can fix those. Those are easy to do, but we can't do anything if we let cars back on the street. Thank you.
Gabe Swan, Kristy Grayson-Bates, Jennifer Ganshorn, Tina Thayer, Whitney Reed, Adam Leonard, Samuel Coats.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm here tonight as a private citizen and volunteer, not in my capacity as a member of the Measure O Committee. Having listened to all these great comments tonight, I'm struck by how many people love and support Main Street Moves and all the different positive ways it's impacted our lives. Main Street Moves is something that overwhelmingly unites the people of this city, and what a great feeling that is right now. That said, you know, it seems like most of the objections we've heard center around the economic impacts. Well, Main Street Moves is good for businesses. They say so themselves. The low vacancy rate and the maturity of the businesses in the closure are just some of the proof presented tonight. Opening to cars actually represents a potentially serious disruption to these successful businesses. The businesses on Main Street are the engine powering downtown, not cars, so we should listen to and support them. A hybrid option has also been pitched as a solution, but, you know, it's expensive for businesses and it's unpredictable for visitors. This easy-to-sell compromise is not what people want. Steve Bennett is right. Think long-term. The majority of residents, visitors, and businesses are on board. All the elements are in place. The beach is just a couple of blocks away. Please commit to the future where you deserve and vote for option B. Thank you.
Next speakers, Kristy Grayson-Bates. Mayor, just for time check, we have 20 speakers left. After Kristy, Jennifer Ganshorn, Tina Thayer, Whitney Reed, Adam Leonard, Samuel Coats, Adrian C.
Hi, I'm Kristy Grayson-Bates. I own Grayson Jewelry over on Oak Street, 37 South Oak Street. I almost feel like I don't really need to say much, because everybody here has spoken a lot of what I would have said already, but I do want to just kind of give a little bit about my background. And I was born and raised here. My dad owned a business here. Now I own a business here, and I hope that my daughter will be able to continue, to continue with my business. I hope that rents will be affordable by then, and I hope that we can continue with the no-cars and the pedestrian mall and make it as beautiful as you guys have made it out to be. It's absolutely amazing. I'm here with Patricia from Fiddle and Fern, and she, and Debbie from Plum Gifts, who's been in business for 20 years.
20 for Debbie, 5 for me.
Also support the closure to cars. I have a little bit of a unique perspective, because I was with Plum Gifts and Fiddle and Fern on Main Street, and now I'm off Main Street. And the amount of noise and pollution that comes through the doors in my business is, it's crazy. And it's, makes such a big difference to me, just for that fact. I love where I am. I'm very, very proud of where I am, and I can't wait for Oak Street to expand, but I, just, everybody here has done such a great job.
Thank you.
And let's keep it closed.
Jennifer Ganshorn, Tina Thayer, Whitney Reed, Adam Leonard, Samuel Coats, Adrian C., Tom Massa.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Ganshorn, and I own Art House &amp; Company. We're at 62 South Oak Street in downtown Ventura. I'm here to express my support for a Main Street which is open to pedestrians and closed to cars. As business owners, we have the unique opportunity to interact with hundreds of people each week and hear direct feedback. My experience with customers has been overwhelmingly in support of keeping Main Street closed to cars. The common feedback, of course, is to improve the aesthetics and the accessibility. I always remind people that that is in the plan. But I want to take a moment to talk about the importance of sanctity of a space. I've created my shop to be a space that sparks imagination and encourages creativity, and people are really responding to it. I call it a refuge for joy. I hear time and time again that my shop has become a happy place for people, a place for them to leave their troubles and worries at the door. Our pedestrian-friendly downtown has all of the ingredients to do just that. When it's designed with intention and accessibility in mind, Ventura can really make a beautiful impact on people's lives. And we have amazing parks and beaches here, but connecting with people and businesses and community and being inspired by design is also a vital part of health and well-being. Thank you.
Tina Thayer, Whitney Reed, Adam Leonard, Samuel Coats, Adrian C., Tom Massa, April Zhang.
Hi, I'm Tina Thayer. I'm one of the co-owners of Paradise Pantry. Again, kind of, everybody has said everything. I mean, it really is. Main Street Moves has changed downtown as having a business. We were 18 years as of June this year. I think I said to Kevin Clarisi a week after the street was closed that I saw more people walk down the street on the 200 block than had ever set foot on our sidewalks. So just walking, looking out the windows for the, basically, 20 years I have standing at 222 East Main Street, I have seen so many more types of people downtown. And we, you know, we've had our business for a long time. We have a really solid customer base. We can survive, you know, we've gone through, we opened in 2007, just in time for an economic crash. So we survived COVID, we've survived the Thomas Fire, like, this community is really strong, and it's really nice to see a place where they can all come to. And I think the biggest thing is to look towards the future, which is a car-free Main Street, as opposed to just trying to like, go back to a past that isn't actually there, because COVID changed the world. So I appreciate your time and just hope that we can officially move forward so that all of us can actually invest and make Ventura as great as it can be. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Whitney, and I'm the owner of Findings Market and Findings Flea in downtown Ventura, as well as produce the Findings Fair. I'm here in strong support of option B to keep Main Street car-free 24/7. As a former DVP board member who helped launch Main Street Moves in 2020, I've believed in this vision since day one. For me and for my businesses, success has come from these three things: community, experience, and consistency. Findings now serves as a platform for nearly 250 small businesses, local makers, fair vendors, curators, and creatives who thrive because Ventura has become a place people want to engage with. This July, after hearing the council would continue Main Street Moves indefinitely, I moved Findings Flea from Palm Street into 230 East Main, a 5,000-square-foot building that sat vacant for over a decade. In our very first month on Main Street, sales increased 250% and hit triple digits, the best month I've had in seven years of retail across any of my businesses. That's proof, Main Street is not dead. It's alive, it's working, and it's creating opportunity and jobs. But consistency matters. Hybrid may sound like a compromise, but it only creates confusion, higher costs, and a street that feels car-filled again. The vision we saw tonight is impossible under hybrid. I want my kids to grow up with the Main Street built for people, not parked cars. Community builds business, business builds property value. Together, those build a stronger Ventura. So tonight, I urge you, don't let fear or intimidation define this decision. Let vision, courage, and the voice of your community do that. Cars don't create community, people do.
Adam Leonard, Samuel Coats, Adrian C., Tom Massa, Gabe Swan, April Zhang, Emily Burney, and Mitchell Boring. Barony, and Mitchell Boring.
Hello, my name's Adam Lenhard. I want to say, first of all, thanks for the mockups. Those looked great today. I like the Option B and the entertainment option seems really cool, too. Last time I was here to speak, about a year ago or so, I mentioned I went to New Orleans, and I went to see an Open Street Fair there, and it really brought a sense of community to our place. And last time I was here, I want to thank Councilmember McReynolds, Shoemaker, Halter, Campos, and Dr. Jeanette for voting yes last time. I'm 25 years old, and my entire political know-how has been really rough in the past few years. You guys have really given me a sense of hope that democracy works. Alex, you're my councilmember. I live in your district, and when I first met you, you were for Main Street, and you voted against it last time. Like, that, you know, that kind of was rough, but, uh, yeah, I know you got young kids, and I doubt, I want to know, like, how often you think about worrying about them having a car come near them when you're on Main Street. I'm a teacher now. I've been teaching fourth and fifth grade students ukulele and agriculture, too. I have a nonprofit teaching urban agriculture, and I've done events on Main Street where I teach people agriculture. Just the other day, I was playing music there, I was running around with the kids, and what I've learned from teaching is it's all about the kids. What we have here is really great for our youth, it's really great for our families, and I don't think there's anything more important than that in community.
Samuel Coats, Adrienne C., Tom Massa, Gabe Swan, April Zhang, Emily Barony, Mitchell Boring, Suzanne Sweden.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Staff. My name's Sam. I'm a lifelong Ventura resident, and my mom is disabled. She uses a walker to get around. And, you know, we used to go to Main Street before this closure happened, and it was just very difficult for her to go anywhere because all the pedestrian traffic was confined to those three-foot-wide sidewalks. And we never used the direct parking because it was really unpleasant to drive on Main Street, and it was always full. You guys have seen the same numbers as I have. It's like 200-odd spaces out of thousands and thousands downtown. It's not a good feeling when your husband and your son have to clear a way for you to just go to the restaurant or see a movie. Since the closure, she's had so much more space to move around, it's just way more pleasant overall. I know other folks with disabilities have raised concerns. I think there have been some good proposals made to address that, like the State Street Loop model, but speaking from our experience, I'd strongly, strongly urge you to adopt Option B and keep the street fully closed the way it is now. Thank you.
Adrienne C., Tom Massa, Gabe Swan, April Zhang, Emily Barony.
Hi, I'm Adrian Coulter, and I'm wearing a T-shirt from the Main Street Bookstore. Seriously, a whole street full of parking spaces in front of it couldn't save my favorite store from the future. New Barnes &amp; Noble, Amazon. What's going to future-proof our downtown is what we're doing now, leaning into the assets of what we have and others don't. We have a beautiful downtown, walking distance to the beach, great weather, lots of outdoor seating, which is important because the COVID of 2020 may not be our last pandemic. Vaccines are harder to get, and visitors from other states may be sharing rubella and polio with us. People aren't going back to dining inside, and we are already ahead of the curve on that. It's already been said before that these assets are why our downtown area has an amazingly low vacancy rate, so I'm not going to go over those numbers. But, so why are the property owners complaining? I call shenanigans on this whole thing. People are saying our downtown rents are more than Santa Barbara's, which is ridiculous, and our landlords may be using their property in, as assets in ways that make offering reasonable rents less important. Take an active hand in protecting this vital part of our city. Keep Main Street Moves a proven winner. Create a citizens' commission to oversee this district in keeping, oops, okay.
Tom Massa, Gabe Swan, April Zhang, Emily Barony, Mitchell Boring, Suzanne Sweden, Nirvana K.
Yeah, hi. I'm Tom Massa. I've been in this area for 61 years, so I've seen quite a bit of change. As most of the people said, I recommend that you vote for Option B. I want to add a little bit of context to some things that I don't think most people know or understand. The area from Santa Barbara to Malibu is called the Gold Coast. It is a destination for the world, and we're right in the middle of it. So whether we like it or not, we have, we have all of the options for having a great tourist area, and having the street closed adds to that. What I, what I want to tell you is, about 10 years ago or so, the Department of Interior did a survey of all of the counties in the contiguous 48 states on livability. Seven out of the top 10 were in California. Number one was Ventura County. Number two was Humboldt. Santa Barbara was upset they got number three. But anyway, so we have the area, we have what you, what you've started is going to, okay, thank you.
Hey Doug, good evening. My name's Gabe Swan. I fully support keeping Main Street closed. I've had an office on Main for about seven years now. My kids are nine and 12, and just last Sunday, I told them they may never be able to traipse down the middle of Main Street anymore without getting run over by a car. And my, my youngest, Rowan, she said, "That's just crazy." And she said that as she was spinning in circles with this bubble wand, you know, just watching the bubbles go off into the distance, but she asked why anyone on the planet would want to, want to open it back up to cars, and I didn't really know what to say to her. Do I talk to her about losing touch with the community we live in? Do I talk to her about the desire for more money rather than a safer place for kids to be kids? Handful of months ago, we, we met friends over at Fluids Day, and the place was packed, and some random strangers just invited us to share their table with them, and within a short period of time, we're sharing stories and having a great time. And what I realized is it's because there's a sense of community that we've built downtown over the last few years, and really a feeling of joy that has managed to transcend some of the ugliness in the world. I'm downtown three to five days a week. I know that it's safe, I know my kids are safe, I see smiling faces, hear conversations, I see people together as a community, and I feel like maybe that's, maybe that's something the building owners are missing, that sense of community. I'll end with this, I, I overheard a police officer at my gym chatting with an older gen, and he said, "I have something that most people never get: enough. I have enough." And I wish those property owners had heard that conversation instead of seeing.
Thank you. April Zhang, Emily Barony, Mitchell Boring, Suzanne Sweden, Nirvana K., Hales King, Carba Eckley, James Brotherton.
Dear Council and community members, my name is April Jong, and I'm a land-use planner that works in downtown Ventura. I'm speaking on behalf of Helen Elroy as well, and I'm asking the Board to vote in favor of keeping Main Street car-free. To me, one of the most appealing aspects of working downtown and living in Ventura in general is my walks through Main Street. A peaceful stroll through downtown and all these amazing vendors solves at least 90% of my problems. In fact, signs backs it up. Studies have shown that exposure to sunlight and fresh, fresh air boosts serotonin, regulate card, um, cardio, circadian rhythms, lower cortisol levels, and can improve focus and reduce negative thoughts. A Main Street crowded by cars, engine exhaust, and occasional honking makes all of this go away. Young people have a financial stake in downtown. We have, we are patrons to Main Street vendors, we bring friends here, we, I work here, I visit and spend at the restaurants and coffee shops downtown at least once a week, I buy drinks at the bars and clubs downtown, I shop at the thrift shops and antique stores on Main Street all the time. I will always support small businesses, and downtown is giving me the opportunity to do so. For the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of young working professionals and residents like me, I strongly urge that the Council maintain the street closure. Give us a walkable city at last. Thank you for your time.
My name is Emily Barony. I'm a small business owner. I've been in business for 14 years, and I'm a very, very proud Westside resident. A number of years ago, I worked alongside many of you in this room to raise the first couple million dollars for the Ventura Botanical Gardens. One of the things we do as fundraisers is we explore what the whys are. Why should I care enough to give you my money? Two of the whys we came up with for the botanical gardens were Ventura and legacy. Ventura is a reason to get off the freeway. Ventura is in support of Main Street. The second one was legacy. What are my grandkids going to say about me? What is the hard thing that I can support in my community to leave it better for the people who come after us? And you want to know what? I'm pretty sure that Main Street Moves is going to be easier than negotiating a 99-year lease with the city of Ventura. I love you all so much. But we can do hard things, and we can leave a legacy for the people who come after us. And so I'm asking you all to do a hard thing and to be creative and be problem solvers because we've done it before and we can do it again. Thank you.
Hi, Council. My name is Mitchell Boring. I represent a nonprofit called Bright. We are all about youth advocacy and substance use prevention, and the National Institute of Health says that one of the best protective factors against addiction and overdose is strong sense of community. According to the California Healthy Kids Survey, cities that have walkable areas have lower addiction and lower overdose. I live downtown, I live on Calorama, and it has been really difficult to be hopeful this year. And when I walked in, I wasn't very hopeful when I saw those people, but then they started to talk, and everyone who came up here made me feel hopeful. The presentation of Main Street Moves and the vision plan made me feel hopeful. Everyone at home on Zoom makes me feel hopeful. Every time the hands go up like this, I get real hopeful, and, Council, I'm maintaining that hope with all of you. Let's keep downtown open to people every day. Thank you.
Suzanne Sweden, Nirvana K., Hales King, Carba Eckley, James Brotherton, Alex de las Casas, Sky Center. Susan Sweden, Nirvana K.
Okay, we're going to test your sound system here. I'd like to start off by saying peace and love to everyone and everything everywhere. And, uh, we're going to test your sound system here. Okay, so I'm going to play the world's smallest harmonica. Keep us walking on Main Street. We don't want no noise pollution, we don't want no air pollution, we like to eat outside and breathe fresh air. Keep us walking on Main Street.
Thank you. Hales King, Carba Eckley, James Brotherton, Alex de las Casas, Sky Center, Jovan Center.
Before I speak, the person before Nirvana K. is here. Can I let them speak first?
Suzanne Sweden, go for it. Thanks, Hales.
Okay. Good evening, Council members. My name is Suzanne Sweden. I moved here 11 years ago. I'm here tonight with many others who care deeply about the future of downtown Ventura. We've shown up, not just for ourselves, but for our community because we believe in keeping Main Street car-free and open to the people, open to future growth and progression. This isn't just about traffic or logistics, it's about connection. It's about creating a space where families, friends, and visitors can walk freely, gather safely, and support our local businesses. And as you can see by the turnout tonight, the majority of our community and business owners agree. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much." And tonight, we are here together. We are united in our vision for a vibrant, walkable downtown that puts people first. So I ask all of you to listen not just to our words, but to our presence. We are here because we care, we are here because we believe in Ventura, and I'll leave you with this: when people come together, something greater than the sum of its parts begins to unfold. Showing up isn't just about being present, it's about being united in purpose, in joy, and in humanity. With the street open, individual cars will drive through Main Street, but if you keep Main Street closed, the masses will continue to build, the masses will continue to mingle together. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I want to echo the sentiments shared here tonight. Having a walkable, pedestrian-focused space creates a true third place, not only to attract tourists, but to create a safe, vibrant, walkable space for the residents of our community. I personally think the latter should be the focus of the city. I have seen new and old businesses support our ped mall and invest in their outside spaces. I personally have been to more of the shops downtown and more frequently since the closure. You see how many people are here tonight in support of keeping the ped mall. Those who have pointed out some of the concerns about accessibility, having a permanent ped mall actually makes the space more accessible. Many sidewalks downtown are already too rough for a wheelchair. Imagine trying to cross a busy Main Street with potentially buzzed drivers, distracted drivers zooming by, and imagine trying to cross a quiet street with people and no pressure to avoid cars. Vacancy of buildings has also come up, and so has the unsustainable cost. I work in District 1 and live in District 6. I personally can't find anywhere to live near work that, because the rent is too high. The facts presented tonight show that the businesses that are surviving are actually thriving. The closures have seen, the closures we have seen are because the rent is too high for the businesses to keep up with, not the decline in overall business. Opening the street does a bad triple Emmy. It makes Main Street less attractive to tourists and families, young and old, considering Ventura as their home. It makes the rent on businesses potentially go up with no guarantee of foot traffic, and it takes a safe, community-focused space and instead prioritizes cars. Keeping the streets closed and investing in our Main Street, like our businesses there already have, will bring the people to it. Thank you.
Carba Eckley, James Brotherton, Alex de las Casas, Sky Center, Jovan Center, Timothy E., Helen Elroy, Marco Cuevas.
Y'all, for, for years, we worked on this document together. Halter, McReynolds, I'm Carba Eckley, I live in District 6. I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee with some of my colleagues and some of you. Keeping Main Street closed, Option B, is in complete alignment with the vision that we set out for this city in 2050, for the next 25 years. Vibrancy, unique character, economic vitality, reduced noise pollution, and keep going. Climate change, sustainability, walkability, open spaces, reduced vehicle miles traveled. This, keeping the street closed, is such an amazing escape and opportunity for this city. The draft vision plan, just the draft that we've semi-started is already so exciting and such an awesome opportunity for this city. And I want to just emphasize that a hybrid or seasonal option is not an appropriate solution. The complexity, the difficulty, the instability that would, that that would bring to businesses and folks who are trying to get through that area would be way too difficult and not an appropriate solution. In the words of some of your own family members, this is the best thing that has ever happened to the city of Ventura. Thank you.
James Brotherton.
Thank you so much. It's a privilege and an honor to be It's a privilege and an honor to be here and see you all here in front of us and to hear all of my fellow townspeople here behind me speaking their minds and support of a lovely, lovely community benefit here that we have in the city of Ventura. I just got off the train from San Diego. And let me tell you, Southern California is beautiful. And Ventura is a beautiful city as well. But we have one of the very few public spaces where we can go out and see our neighbors, you know, having fun and dancing in the streets and playing the ukulele and walking their beautiful dogs. And yeah, buying $8 lattes as well. It's all a privilege and it's really lovely to be here. My boyfriend and I, we rent a lovely 500-square-foot apartment just east of downtown Ventura for $2,200 a month. And you know what? We love it because we can walk out our door and see this great public exhibit as well as all the visitors here to Southern California. I'm a volunteer for the Ventura Food Chair and it's just great to see this community spirit here tonight. Thank you so much.
Alex de las Casas, Sky Center, Jovan Center, Timothy E., Helen Aloyan.
Hello, council. My name is Alex de las Casas. I've worked in Ventura County for five years, but I moved here from Santa Monica just a year ago. And I bought a house under the pretense that that downtown would stay closed. And honestly, that was the best part of the city. This is what made me deal with, you know, a smaller city and move. And I have a family too. And now my baby, she could walk on the street and I didn't have to think like, oh, she might run off and get hit by a car. And if you don't keep this thing closed with option B, I'm moving. Like, I don't want to live here. Like, straight up. And also, you know, vacancy tax, please. That's it.
Sky Center.
Good evening, council and neighbors. My name is Sky Center. I'm a local kid who grew up in this beautiful city. A father, a husband, and a proud owner of Happy Place right here in downtown Ventura. I believe it is in the best interest of our community to keep Main Street close to cars and open to people. But more importantly than my personal view is that tonight, a decision is made. Because only then can we move forward and begin rebuilding unity in our community. I'm not even gonna read this. I'm just gonna speak from the heart. It is so beautiful to see everyone out here tonight and speaking about this. God, um, I would have to say that, ah, man. I'm sorry. All right, now I'm just gonna get back to reading. But more important, okay. So whether Main Street is open or closed, one truth remains: These are small, family-owned businesses. They are our neighbors. Kids go to the same schools as yours. They play on the same sports teams. And they're part of the same community we call home. We live in a world that is already too divided. Ventura deserves better. Let's choose unity. Let's choose each other. Together, let's support our local small family-owned businesses because they need you. And vote to keep Main Street closed because that is in the best interest of small businesses. Thank you.
Jovan Center.
Hello, council. So as a... So my name is Jovan Center and I am the son of Sky Center. A local... Okay. Growing up in Ventura is a... How do I word this? A very nice experience. And just being able to just walk my dog downtown and just being able to experience all the things and everything that... What makes downtown downtown, all the local businesses. Being able to just freely and safely just go to different businesses is such an amazing thing. Because in this world, gigantic organizations such as Amazon, right? As a couple people said earlier, are just taking over. But the emotion and the amount of passion that these small businesses have is such an amazing thing that you just have to support them. Like, yeah. And just having the security and just being able to just say, hey, guys, you just want to meet downtown? Is such... It's just... It's only something that someone that lives here can understand if you guys... No, if you guys get it. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Timothy E., followed by Helen Aloyan and Marco Cuevas.
Hello. Great to see you guys. Apparently, I have a different opinion than most everybody here. And that's the way it's supposed to be. We can come here and share our opinions. So I personally have lived here 50 years. This month, September, moved up here from Oceanside. Military mom and dad. My father's not with us, but my mother is still. I want the city to open it back up. And I want that because I believe the city will support whatever you decide. But I believe that the city was designed for vehicles. It's gonna continue to thrive with the vehicles in the city. You're still gonna be able to walk your dogs and cats. I forgot about the cat lovers. And I believe you're also gonna be able to shop and mingle and buy that item, park right in front of it, get it, and get out and go somewhere else. I miss that. The city needs to clean the entire environment. And I travel a lot. I work for United Airlines up in Santa Barbara. And I go to New York City. And I go to other places where they've shut it down and they've opened it back up again. And I can promise you it's thriving. The eateries down there are gonna bring the people down there. When you have the street fairs, expect it to grow tremendously. That's how you get the city to remember what it used to be like. Thank you so much.
Helen Aloyan.
Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Helen Aloyan and I'm here as a private citizen. I don't want to reiterate too much. I ran here after entertaining some clients on Main Street. They loved it. They want also me to advocate for us to keep it car-free. I just want to say that Main Street as is, as a pedestrian epicenter of our community, is such a powerful economic engine and recruitment tool for us. We've been able to attract a lot of new employees, a lot of interns, just even around... Because I, you know, I have two jobs, so I work at a nonprofit near Main Street as well. So many people have said to me that that Main Street being closed is one of the main reasons why they decided to take employment opportunities here in Ventura. And I think that is powerful in itself. So many investments have been made in Main Street after the street was closed. And I think it's amazing to see how these businesses are thriving in a changing environment and have been able to harness kind of that trend towards sustainable community and placemaking to leverage themselves and increase their business here in Ventura. Like I said, my clients love it. I'm proud to show off Ventura to them. I would very much like to keep Main Street as is. It's very evident that our community cares. I don't think I've ever seen this many of my staff come out to advocate for this purpose. And I think it's really a testament to this issue and how cross-cutting it is. So I thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final in-person speaker is Marco Cuevas. And we will attempt our virtual speakers again. Can't guarantee I'll get audio in the room, but we will try one more time.
Good evening, mayor, council, everyone here tonight. My name is Marco Cuevas, speaking for myself and as chair of the Westside Community Council. So much has already been said tonight, so I'm mostly just gonna emphasize a lot of stuff. But having lived in this city my whole life, I can tell you that I go downtown now more than ever. My roommate and others stay the same, so I emphasize, please build for the future. Main Street itself, for only five blocks, may be closed to vehicle traffic. But downtown is most definitely open for business, for the people. Just look at the support tonight. Look at the latest places that have opened recently, such as Corazon Cocina, Night Owl Cider, Happy Place Eatery, Yard Bar and Grill, Mobius on Main, and many more. The perpendicular streets allow for vehicle traffic. Utilize that by increasing ADA parking and spots for quick pickups. We can make investments in downtown and other areas of the city such as the Avenue and Midtown. We can revitalize those areas. This is a win for Ventura, for our economy, for our environment, for community culture. I urge you to set the vision and keep Ventura unique. This is a unique space. By my rough count of speakers tonight, 94% are in favor of keeping it closed. Let me restate that. 94% are in favor of keeping it closed. The Westside Community Council rises today to support Main Street Moves. It should be continued under the city's existing legal authority. Maintains continuity for businesses and residents. Allows for the city to deliver permanent quality improvements that community members have asked for, especially those related to accessibility, safety, and emergency planning. We support the city in its endeavor to keep Main Street car-free and look forward to your discussion. Thank you very much for all your time and consideration for the vision of Ventura. Thank you.
Okay, for our virtual participants, you can use the raise hand feature. We're gonna test right now. Pete, you should be able to speak. Pete, you should be able to speak. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. My name is Pete Edel and I am an educator here at Pacific High School. The students that I serve are mostly from Saddleway Avenue. And as the director of the after-school programs, a lot of the kids are facing homelessness and addiction and just hard things at home as well as a tough academic life. And I just wanted to say that it's really valuable for me as the after-school program director to create a third space. And it's been wonderful to have an ally in the city because the downtown area is also a third space for our underserved youth. And the gentleman who spoke before about addiction and mental health, I see it every day at my school. And we need to support our youth and keep Main Street closed to cars to give them a third space. And then I'm also speaking to it as an artist and a father. My daughter is six. We live at Working Artist Ventura. Thank you again to the city for making that happen in San Francisco, which is a very walkable city. And I actually chose Ventura because of his walk score. So this has just been a great thing for me and my family to come to Ventura, to make it an art city, to make it a walkable space. And as an artist, I feel very nurtured that I can teach and share my knowledge with my students. And I'm very much looking forward to have an art-focused, community-focused, car-free downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other virtual participants, please use the raise hand feature. Virtual participants going once, going twice. Any other public speakers? Main Street Moves? Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And thank you to everyone who has stayed here to speak. I will bring it now to council for any questions that you may have. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, everybody, for staying and just hearing everybody. It just brought a lot of... I got a lot of goosebumps because it just shows me that this city, we can all come together for a vision. And I really want to also appreciate the staff. Really fantastic work. I had asked to see what this can look like and the renderings are just so great. And so thank you for all of that. I do have a few questions, just so that I can have some clarity on the things that you said, Ms. Diamond. The bollards, I know that is... Are they retractable or is it dependent on what we decide today?
So regardless of the decision that you make today, we're working on a hybrid of different designed bollards. Some will be screw-on, screw-off. Some will be retractable directly into the ground. And then some, in kind of a newer option that we're looking at design-wise, will actually fold down into a subterranean coffin for storage.
Is that just dependent on our budget, then?
No, they're all fairly similar in price. It actually depends on the location. Based on the EIR, there's different roadway conditions. The closer you get to the mission, the less subterranean we can go without running into concerns of running into archaeological items. And so we really want to make sure that we're not... We want to make sure that we're respecting the requirements of the EIR. So we are looking at a variety. And even within same blocks, you would have a multitude of those designs.
Got it. Thank you. And when are we expecting the SS4A grant? Is that already here or are we still...
We're still waiting for the award determination and it's likely to occur this fall.
This fall. Wonderful. And then you had said something about removing the temporary bathrooms. It was a successful pilot program, no? So what is the alternative for us for the people in downtown if we remove those temporary bathrooms?
So there are a number of restrooms, obviously, within downtown today. We're also on the consent agenda. You just approved the Portland Lou moving forward. So that will be constructed as is outlined in that staff report. Ultimately, regardless of the decision that you make tonight, we do want to move forward with additional permanent bathrooms. Most likely two additional locations for restrooms. Our plan is to remove the temporary restrooms at the end of September, though.
Got it. If the council were to explore option A, the removal of the parklets in one month, is that feasible?
It would be feasible in that we would require it of the proper of the businesses. What we plan to do, regardless of the option that you select, when the parklets are required to be removed, we did include funding for roll-off dumpsters to be located on every block to help assist with that removal and also to avoid having any trash put into our regular system of trash bins throughout downtown.
Okay. I don't know what my time is, but I'm just gonna finish it with this question. In the visioning of this, and I know that it was a draft and it was, you know, I asked for it pretty quickly, so thank you for the quick turnaround. I didn't see a lot of highlight in cultural and historical elements. And I would love to see that if, you know, as we move forward, whether, you know, whatever option we decide today. You know, as many we... In our general plan, as well as many of our speakers here talk about our culture is incredibly important, historical, both Chumash and also coming from the Museum of Ventura County, our Chinatown needs to be recognized much more too. Because I think that was... Although we have that little alleyway, I think it needs to be highlighted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I gotta tell you, I can't tell you how exciting and how... What a beautiful night this has been. Everyone's been so positive. The energy in this room is through the roof. It tells me again and shows me why I love this community so much. I can't thank you all for being here. Whether we all agree or not, the energy tonight, the feeling that we could do whatever we need to do and want to do with the city and make it the best it can ever be. I know that we can do that. And so I really appreciate you. And I think now more than ever, we needed to have such a positive night. So, thank you. And to staff, I want to say, I knew going into this meeting after the one in July that we needed a good follow-up report on what the vision is. Because a lot of work has happened. This has been a long road. And a lot of work has happened, but for a lot of reasons, we have not been able to really consolidate and showcase exactly what that work is and what the vision is. So it seemed disjointed. And I knew that we needed that tonight. And I can't thank staff enough for following through and making that happen. So you did a fantastic job. With that, I do want to say this because the downtown has truly been one of my loves in my life. The reason why I moved to Ventura was because I love the historic ambience. The fact that Ventura still embodies the quasidential beauty and creativity and uniqueness and diversity that's made California such an unbelievable place to live. And yet I saw a downtown that was being... That was rundown, that was empty. Basically, a lot of storefronts, buildings. We knew back in the 80s that 40% of the property owner... The majority of the property owners that owned property downtown lived not just outside of Ventura, but outside the county. Okay? A lot of the buildings were empty on weekends. They were open Monday through Friday, maybe from 9:00 to 5:00, but closed on weekends. And it was just... It was really difficult watching historic building after historic building being torn down. Seeing the Von Shopping Center tear out two city blocks for a strip mall. A grocery store we needed, but it was a strip mall. We saw all that happening. We saw the future. We... A lot of us banded together to preserve our history. We started the community council in mid-'90s with the support of our council at that point, which included Steve Bennett and Richard Francis and Gray Carson and Rosely Measures and Carl Morehouse. which included Steve Bennett and Richard Francis and Gray Carson and Rosely Measures and Carl Morehouse. A lot of these people believed in downtown for the first time in forty or fifty years and started investing money in a part of our city that most people thought was a has-been, old area that needed to be torn down. Then we all, after forming a community council based upon bringing back our downtown, saving our historic elements, showcasing the community center that it really is for our region, focusing on the creativity and the arts and declaring it our cultural district. Through all that, we started getting people investing in property owners, believing in renovating our properties. So thank you to those property owners, whether they agree with us tonight or not. Okay? They invested and they believe in what we're all doing in downtown. And then COVID hits, right? And it changed the world. It really did. And we scored big time because we saw, we did something that probably would never have happened had it not been COVID. And we created truly a community center, an outdoor community center in the heart of our community to showcase and build community. All generations can celebrate life and do what life is really all about. Inform relationships and share ideas and be creative and just be excited about what's gonna happen the next day and who you're gonna meet. All that said, things happened, lawsuits happened, okay? After COVID, we stayed open with the vehicle code. A lawsuit happened. We won that, that it was to stay closed for traffic through the vehicle code. And there's an appeal still pending. And then there's the reverse condemnation lawsuit that's out there, too. And then there's these claims that scared the heck out of a lot of us. But you look at it and you ask a question, okay? These forty-five claims average over $5 million a claim. Surely, they seem like these are really, really inflated, inflated and maybe even coordinated. So I think it's gonna be very tough to prove that there is that kind of losses and be very hard to believe that this kind of losses. And with this kind of energy in the room tonight, there won't be losses because we're gonna support the businesses. We're gonna support the downtown. And I know that. So I just wanna share that and know that we are on the beginnings of a real renaissance for our city. We know what our values are, what we believe in. I've stated most of that. And I know that there's any, there's nothing that we're not gonna be able to do. Reconnecting to the beach, creating those amenities that we need, whether the music venues or cultural centers, or showcasing our history and art across this community. There's so many more things that we can do that make the best future for all of us. And part of that is building the housing that we need so that people can afford to stay here and continue spreading their roots. I wanna share all that. Wasn't really a question. But hey, I break the rules once in a while, okay?
Always. Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
So I actually do have a couple of questions. During the presentation, you mentioned using some of the tiles as are used downtown. I don't know which ones you were talking about, but some of them are not real easy for people with mobility impairments, walkers and wheelchairs. So I hope that you will, before making a final determination, figure out a way they can either be made more accessible, which should be able to easily happen, or choose a different style for that. And then perhaps something can be done about mid-block curb cuts since a lot of the crosswalks are gone. That would also help people with mobility issues. I was, however, misquoted by someone saying my friends in wheelchairs couldn't come downtown. My friends in wheelchairs move through downtown as fast as I do. But it is people with mobility impairments who suffer the most. So if staff could find some kind of shuttle system or way to move people with mobility impairments, then that should satisfy anyone struggling with that. Can you do that, do you think?
Absolutely. I think some of the ideas that we saw from the audience can be implemented. And we're also looking at ways at connecting downtown to other areas that can create more accessibility through transportation options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Councilmember Duran, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, guys, for that presentation and staff report. Gen item six and eight staff reports were very extensive. I acknowledged that to you guys through an email, but I wanna say it publicly because over the last couple of months, I've been talking to merchants and business owners downtown, many of whom did not have answers to basic questions that were in the staff report. So that, I gotta thank you for that. I think if you haven't read it, regardless of what happens tonight, Gen Item Eight is five hundred or something pages, but you don't need to read every page. I suggest that you do so. So I do have some questions also. Can we go to slide eleven and? Okay. Was that it? Oh, man, I wrote down the wrong number. Forget about it. Okay, so on one of the slides, it said that we're losing a hundred and nine, or sorry, a hundred and ninety-six spaces will be restored if we reopen the street. It says it on there? It does say it on there. I was right. Thank you. I know there's back and forth about the potential size for, but ballpark, how many spaces will we potentially be gaining with the Oak Streets parking structure? I know it's, there's, you know, back and forth with the stories, but between this and this, which is, just for clarification.
If we could get back to you shortly, we'll look that up while you ask your next question.
Okay. In the meantime, slide twelve, please. Okay, so the overall cost on the bottom. So we're consistently going through CIP projects and public works projects. Twenty-three million today is not gonna be twenty-three million in five years. How are you guys accounting for that? Is that accounted for in those figures?
So it is cost escalation and inflation are accounted for.
They are accounted for in there. Okay, thank you. Slide thirteen. So there is, there has been concerns raised with, on the six-hundred block with the loss of access to a private parking lot, the Ventura Theater parking lot. How will that impact all six blocks remaining closed? Has, what's the discussion internally been around that?
So currently, the city leases a city parking lot to the theater to account for those lost spaces. We have a draft lease in front of them for a longer-term lease of the spaces, which would allow them to do towing and maintenance of the parking lot itself. But right now, they're utilizing parking permits to maintain control of the spaces in that lot.
Okay, so you are working on a new lease?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Slide seventeen.
And just to answer your last question, the new structure would have three-hundred-and-ninety-one parking spaces.
Three-hundred-and-ninety-one, okay. So this is a big misconception. I don't, I don't know if I wanna call it a misconception or misunderstanding or lack of understanding, but I need to point out that, the second bullet point, nearly all parklets require replacement or design. That's something that I talked to several restaurant owners up to two weeks ago who had, were not even aware that they would have to change the size of their parklet. So I just wanted to point that out publicly. Slide eighteen, please. I emailed this for clarification and I guess, sorry about this. Let me look at this picture. Maybe nineteen. Sorry, maybe we can go to nineteen. So the impacts on parklets will have on the, if the street remains closed. So I emailed this question. I'm still not super clear on it. We do have perpendicular streets running through Main. What impacts will there be on every restaurant or parklet on a corner adjacent to a perpendicular street? So I have some example, you can Maki Sushi, you have Capriccio, Dargans, Casabella. Just so you can kind of explain the red lines to me and if they are, in fact, impacted, how much? There's this discussion about fifteen to twenty-foot buffers. So I guess I could ask a very direct question. Would Maki Sushi have to kind of abide by that fifteen-foot setback from the perpendicular street? So that would mean they would have to reduce their existing parklet?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So there's kind of two conditions. As you're on the street approaching a crosswalk, so on this, it would be the opposite side of Maki or the opposite side from Dargans. Recent changes to state law require daylighting in those areas. That's something that didn't exist when we first planned for new parklets in the design guidelines, which lay out all of these standards. And so, we don't allow parklets where parking wouldn't be allowed otherwise. You're not allowed to park cars to maintain pedestrian safety within twenty feet of those crosswalks. So in an open street scenario, you would be required to limit any parklets within twenty feet of an approach of a crosswalk. On the opposite end, where you see Dargans and Maki, those are existing red curb areas that we want to maintain and are required to maintain as part of the design guidelines for public safety access. And so, those would be limited for about fifteen feet where there are red curbs today. They still remain in order to provide that ability for a fire truck or for a police vehicle to pull up.
Okay, so then all of those existing parklets, if the street remains closed, open to pedestrians, they will have to reduce the size of their parklets?
So if you look at this slide in particular, if the street reopens, any of the parklets outlined in blue to specify the ones on the corners, Dargans and Maki would need to be reduced by about fifteen feet on each of their ends. If the street remains closed, those do not need to change.
That was my direct question. Thanks for clarifying that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duran, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you. A great presentation and the renderings were beautiful and awesome. Just a question in our recommendation, your recommendation is to, A, reopen the street by adopting the resolution to terminate the vehicle code closure by November third, two thousand and twenty-five. And then it says, "or," and then we have B, and under B, we have authorizing a contract amendment number three. I'm guessing we could make a recommend, if we wanted to, if we wanted to open up Main Street, we could also say, "and we want RRM Design Group to continue with the planning," correct? Okay. With that, parklets, go ahead. The parklets, remind me the cost of the designed parklets that we have. Do you remember the ones that are kind of ready to go?
The cost for the pre-approved parklet?
Yes, roughly.
Let me actually turn that over to some of the rest of our staff. If you give us a second, we can look it up for you.
Sure. And just out of curiosity, were, have we spoken to any businesses saying that they would buy the, that they were interested in buying the new parklets, the ones that we, they would have to get?
We've generally spoken to businesses. We haven't had any guarantees of people using our designs. It would require them to utilize the design. Obviously, they're just seeing drafts now, similar to a lot of these other packages. But as, through the process, we've had a lot of businesses express interest in utilizing those should the pricing and design work for them.
Yeah, the costs for the parklets were estimated at thirty-five to fifty bucks per square foot for the non-fortified option and fifty to seventy-five bucks per square foot for the fortified option. In the context of the pre-approved plans, they're twofold. It's a, choose your own destiny of sorts. There's pre-approved materials that you can use or you can use standardized, standard construction methodologies. And we found that the standard construction methodologies, which are estimated here in the numbers that I quoted you, were a little bit cheaper than some of the pre-approved material options with pre-approved, like Mod Street Architect or other vendors that provide like modular units.
So we, so we, the property or the business owners, they, who are gonna buy those? Business owners or property owners? Property owners are gonna buy those or business owners?
It's actually something that we would offer to either one. So business owners could build their own parklets and contract directly with the city or property owners could do so.
But as of right now, they don't know what the prices are of these as of right now?
It's part of the item that you'll hear later this evening, but we're just rolling out this information. I think a lot of the business and property owners have looked into pricing and a lot of them have built the parklets to the standards today. Obviously, meeting our adopted standards will increase the cost and building fortified parklets also, of course, increases the cost of the construction.
And the reason I ask, obviously, if we wanna put a great, beautiful downtown, we wanna make sure everybody's buying in. So you know what I mean? So like if we, well, next question is, with those renderings that you did, was there, you, there was no input yet? That was all done by consultant or who did the renderings of?
So those renderings were done by RRM Design Group. They held a workshop with the community to talk about what people wanted to see on Main Street. But again, due to the, you know, nature of getting the draft to you for this meeting, this is the first time that we're debuting them to the entire community. So in moving forward, we would have additional workshops. That's what the amendment is in part for, to reach back out and get additional feedback from the community to further hone in on a design and a final vision.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duran. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to focus in on the lawsuits to start out on it. So let's start with the open Main Street versus the City of Ventura. So when is that appeal expected to be heard?
Councilmember McReynolds, that case is being briefed on appeal, so there's no argument date. And after it's argued, the court would have ninety days to issue a decision. So probably won't be decided until early, mid-next year at the earliest.
So as a talking point, so if the, if the case was heard February first, so it would be ninety days before we would hear, the court has up to ninety days to render their decision from that.
When it's, from when it's argued, right, yes.
So that would take us out to May thirty-first approximately.
Right, and sometimes even when cases get briefed, the courts look at it and they look at their calendar and they take a few months before even setting it for argument.
Okay, so, and then, so even, so May thirty-first might even be a best-case scenario?
I mean, it could be, it could be later.
Okay. And then, when does the decision become final? So they issue the decision on May thirty-first, when does it, how long before it? Or I guess, how long to appeal, I guess?
Basically, you have a chance to petition the California Supreme Court for review. Very few cases do go to the California Supreme Court.
And what's the timing if the Supreme Court?
Few months, matter of months of both making the request and then the Supreme Court getting back to you.
Okay. So then, in terms of, if we, regardless of what decision we make, based on that lawsuit alone, there's no permanent decision based on how this lawsuit rolls out?
Well, that lawsuit, when it, when it ends, there would be, there would be.
Until it ends.
Until it ends, we won't have, we won't be sure. We did prevail at the trial court. The other side did appeal, but it's not over, no.
Okay. So let's talk about the, so the, the city prevailed in the initial filing. So Judge Guasco issued a ruling in favor of the city. That's what's being appealed. So my understanding is Judge Guasco is the presiding judge for the county?
He is now, yes.
Okay, so, which means his peers elected him as the qualified judge to be, okay. And in my understanding, I followed up with you, so Judge Guasco has been appealed sixty-nine times since he's been on the bench, of which only eight have been reverse of his decisions. So he's got about a ninety percent, so I'm feeling pretty good about Judge Guasco and his rulings, but, on it. Okay, so let's talk about the reverse condemnation case on it. So how much are the claims in the reverse condemnation case versus the pedestrian mall law?
So we don't have claims yet. First, the property owners have to prove a lack of access. So we're not at a place where we actually have specific numbers that they're asserting yet.
How many, how many property owners are in that lawsuit?
I'm gonna look to Assistant City Attorney Chris Delavega. I think there's about twelve. There might be thirteen.
I believe it's twelve.
Okay. And then what's the timing of that case?
There's, there's no trial date set. And basically, for inverse condemnation cases, the access, the inverse condemnation claim, that would be a trial in front of a judge. And then if the property owners prevail, then that would move to a second phase of the case, which would proceed and move on to a separate trial in front of a jury.
Okay, so a long time out.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna be clear in terms of, you know, what we do tonight. Okay, and I know. I know the items got reversed, but we're going to do a license agreement and a fee structure was one of the public hearings. So what is the fee? Because there's the, there's the cost of actually putting in the parklets, then what is the fee going to be potentially?
So the license agreement fee would be 69 cents per square foot for a closed Main Street, and then in the open Main Street would be $113 per square foot, and that would be just for the license agreement. And then there's also, fee is required for pulling the building permit as well as the license agreement. So you're looking at, and this is all draft because you have not approved this yet, but our proposed subsidized fee would be a $740 permit fee for pre-approved parklet design. For the non-preapproved parklet design, it would be $1,003. The right-of-way license agreement fee would be $251. Again, these are subsidized, so you'll see that in your other staff report. And as I said, I misspoke, 61 cents for a permanent street closure and $113 per square foot for an open street. And then we would require a $1,000 deposit for removal of the parklet should the business close.
And who's going to hold the agreement? Is it going to be the business or the property owner?
So we would be open to allowing that agreement to be with either the business or the property owner.
So in the case where the business wants it and the property doesn't, does it still get issued?
It could, yes. We had considered requiring property owner's signature, but at this point are not requiring it. It's an agreement on city property for use of city property, so there is no required property owner sign-off.
Okay. And when would it start?
So when would the licensing start? So, for example, if you decided to keep the street closed and someone came to us, you know, in the next few weeks wanting to get started, we could get them going and start the process to get a building permit, get the license agreement going. So as soon as you adopt these fees, they technically go into effect after 60 days, but we would get the process going so that they could start construction, and then they would pay upon certificate of occupancy, similar to the way people negotiate deals for commercial rentals. They tend to not pay until they start operating.
Okay. And then jumping over to the parklets, the pre-approved designs, are those complete?
They're about 90 percent at this point. We've got about two weeks left of finalizing some details, and then they'll get submitted for building permit approval. Once those pre-approved plans get stamped by our building official, an individual could utilize them, and they would still have to submit for a building permit to give us site-specific information. So we're probably about a month out until someone could actually utilize those. But since we're at 90 percent, we'll be showing people the options. They can start to look at those, price them out, and decide if they want to utilize them.
Okay. And then, how long have we been working on those designs?
I'll defer to AJ on that.
I'd estimate about three months, with the majority of the design work occurring in the past month or so.
Okay. And then, going back, you gave a quote of $50 for the unfortified, $75 for the fortified per square foot. How many square feet is a typical parklet?
Between 500 and 1,000.
So it'd be $50,000 for the unfortified at 500 square feet, and it would be $75,000 for the fortified parklet at 500 square feet.
That would be for 1,000 square feet, so that's kind of on the larger end. And about half that for the smaller size.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to understand the costs, you know, in terms of that. So between the license agreement and the parklet costs, so we're looking at somewhere between $60 to $100,000?
Yeah, just to give an example, on the lower end for unfortified, for a 500-square-foot parklet, it's $25,000 just for the construction. And then you're looking at year one, again with a closed street, being about $5,650.
About $30-plus thousand.
Yeah, $30,000 to, you know, $80,000 on the higher end with an open street.
Okay. And then regarding the bollards, what is it going to take to have those installed on April 1st?
You know, that's our goal. So we're working towards that.
Instead of making it a goal, let's make it a, like, a reality. Like, what is it going to take to happen on April 1st?
It's going to take getting the construction drawings done within the next few months, which we are on track to do. It's going to take advance ordering of the bollards themselves. We've talked to the manufacturer, and we're working on sole-source ordering directly from the one manufacturer that we spec'd from. They're the only one that makes this custom bollard, so we're designing towards that bollard. Their lead time is only about six to eight weeks for ordering. So our goal is to order them and have them ready to go in early 2026. And then we would go to RFP in early 2026, once we have the construction drawings complete, so that we can get an accurate pricing. That's something that would come back to the City Council for approval, to select a construction company to do that work. And then our goal would be to pull the trigger as quickly as possible on actual construction. You know, one of the things that you had mentioned was completion in April. We do want to do that so that we can get them done in advance of some special events, some larger special events that are coming to town in early May.
Okay. My last question is, reading through the staff report, there was a discussion regarding community engagement when you had the businesses owner, and it seemed like there was a big concern between the, how the staff was treating equitably the restaurateurs and the retailers. And it seemed to be, based on what I read in the staff report, there's a favorability to the restaurateurs on it. And then when I read through this, it never mentions the retailers. It talks extensively about the restaurateurs, but it really doesn't talk about the retailers. And I think we just need to do a mind-shift, focus on it's the entire retail experience. The restaurateurs benefit by having the retailers where people are strolling and doing something like that, so.
I think one of the things that was mentioned that we can certainly adjust is, with an open street, there's really no need to have a complete barricade around a retailer's parklet. And having access from an open Main Street onto the parklet may be something that's beneficial to create more openings for people to wander into that space, to look at retail merchandise. So that's certainly something we can look at as well, and amending the plan to allow for that cutout, and perhaps maybe a ramp that helps you into that space in a different way. I think that was kind of the key concern, that the design is very restaurant-focused.
Yeah. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to make a comment, and then I'm ready to...
I have some questions.
Oh, good. Go ahead.
Sorry. In regards to the entertainment zones, you talked about that council can direct staff to go back and do a study. Would that be concurrent with whatever decision we make tonight? In other words, will we have to wait and see before we move on to the next step, or can you do it alongside, at the same time as we're moving in whatever direction that you can look at the entertainment zone as well?
So right now, we didn't present a resolution that would authorize that entertainment zone, so we would need to come back with an actionable resolution should you want to establish the entertainment zone. Obviously, whatever decision that you make tonight, whichever option, we could cater it towards that and come back with a resolution that would authorize that, and council could make that determination at a later date. We could do that fairly quickly. It's something that's been happening regionally a lot, so we have a lot of examples to pull from.
Yeah, my concern would be just to prolong, I don't want to prolong, and so I'd be just wary of, how long is it going to take before we can come back with something?
We are coming back with changes to our alcohol use permits to make it much easier for alcohol use permits to be amended, to allow them to extend into parklets. So that's something that we could bring back at a similar time. So I would anticipate it being within the next few months.
Okay, thank you. And then, in regards to the, you talked about the renderings, obviously, this was the first time the public saw the renderings. How quickly, how quick of a turnaround would it be to go back out, get feedback, so that we can get closer to a more finite rendering?
So our plan, again, whichever option you choose, is that we would spend the next few months and have a draft vision plan back to City Council for adoption by the end of this calendar year. We would then spend the January through June developing a capital improvement and implementation plan. So truly just the next three months to refine the plan, get feedback, and finalize it.
Okay. And then, in regards to the parklets, just for clarification, I wasn't too clear on, so there will be, let's say, option A and option B to choose from, and any business can choose A or B. They don't all have to choose the same one. I was just trying to think in terms of continuity, like, what is that going to look like?
So we have pre-approved designs that they can choose, and then, basically, the way the design guidelines are, is they create a menu of options, so it allows businesses to pick from a palette of materials. So there would be, probably, it would be likely that a lot of businesses would utilize the pre-approved designs, but then I think a number will want, you know, their own custom designs interspersed throughout, but they all work really well together.
So there won't be any, like, cookie cutter, per se, but there will be some sort of matching design that will make it look a little bit more, I guess, nicer?
Yeah, I mean, the design guidelines will make these really, all of them, no matter what decision businesses go in, if they are meeting these standards, they will look a lot more like a lure level of quality than some others.
Okay, great. And I think that is what I have, because I was going to ask all the questions you asked, Councilmember McReynolds, so thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Just a quick comment. I know that, if we can go to slide, I think it's 13. Okay, more questions. So on 13, I'm going back to Councilmember Manganay's question in regards to the theater. So where is the lease for the parking for the theater?
Great. Sorry, it's hard to point and talk, but basically, across the street from the theater, there's a parking lot that connects to the alley, and so the theater has use of this parking lot, which includes 13 spaces. Their parking lot, I believe, had 10 legal spaces, but they could fit at least 13 cars in there. They also utilize on-street permits that allow them to reserve the on-street spaces when they have events at the theater.
And that's being enforced to make sure that it's only for the theater when they need it?
So what's challenging is, right now, they don't have a lease, so they can't do the towing, and that's why we want to go into a long-term lease with them, so that they can call the police and get cars towed in that parking lot. Right now, it's permit parking, but I believe that they're able to utilize it generally and are able to clear out other cars in advance of the events where they need the space.
And when are we finalizing this lease?
We have a draft lease out to them. Obviously, changes in schedule based on pedestrian mall law hearing, and this hearing put it on hold, and so they asked us to wait until there's a decision made.
Okay. Can we prioritize in getting that completed after tonight's decision?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Manganay?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Great points. I also spoke with the owners of the theater, that's why I brought it up earlier. They have real concerns, everything you stated, obviously. The biggest issue with not being able to enforce their permits, it's not going to stop somebody from parking there anyway, and they can't do anything about it if they can. So getting them as much parking as we can would be awesome. I just wanted one clarification after something Councilmember Reynolds said. So we have hard dates for parklet deconstruction if we reopen the street. But if we keep the street closed to cars, there's no dates for when people have to remove their non-compliant parklets and construct compliant parklets.
We're proposing end of January. So by January 31st, we would want businesses to both remove their parklets, and then they could, in advance of that or in the future, construct their new parklet.
Okay.
But we would plan for a late-January kind of dumpster party on the street to help remove the parklets. We would only have them out for about three days.
And then, what about construction timelines? So obviously, it would not be a benefit for the closure if we had a year of parklets being constructed in the street. So has there been discussion around that?
So obviously, you know, businesses, once they remove their parklets, are going to want to replace them as quickly as possible to regain that space. Our plan, should the street remain closed, is that we have time between now and the end of January to help people get permits, get their license agreements in place. We have staff ready to go for kind of an expedited review of all of those parklet permits. And, you know, it's possible that some would linger, but generally, we're looking at about one week of construction for each parklet. That's typically how long it's taken, maybe two weeks at the most. So, you know, we'll try to keep it before that. Our goal is also to avoid any construction occurring once the summer season starts with a closure.
Okay. So January 31st, kind of use it or lose it, is kind of the approach, right? You have to rebuild and start rebuilding a new one, or?
Or yours is out, so you wouldn't have, yeah, so you would have to remove your parklet by that date.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So just a quick follow-up to that. Do we anticipate any sort of backlog on these materials or requests for parklets? Should there be, you know, more requests than actual parklets available?
We don't anticipate there being a backlog. Obviously, construction materials can be challenging, depending on the material, but obviously, they can source regionally. They're not required to source through us in any way. We don't have any specific companies that we're working with, so they would be able to utilize wood or a wood substitute from anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you. I want to revisit the parking stalls for the theater and the lease that they got. I want to make sure, like, in terms of the lease that we're doing, it only refers to the 10 parking stalls. So if we're asking for indemnity language, we're only talking about the 10 stalls, not the entire Main Street moves and everything like that. That we're very focused in, that the lease only covers the 10 stalls, and not any additional claims, liabilities, or anything like that.
Okay, we can make, I believe that should be covered in there, but the lease will have to come before the City Council for approval, so you'll see that language before it gets approved.
I just want to make sure it's really focused in only on the 10 spots.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think I'll move us into our council deliberations, and a motion will be required. I know you want to make a motion. Councilmember Campos has a comment.
So I just want to loop back on what all we heard tonight. We heard comments from one state assembly member, one former council member, one academic from Grass Valley, an academic from Ventura College, one Unitarian minister, 27 business owners, three from outside the primary area of Main Street moves. There were 77 total speakers. One spoke for a flex model, two spoke for a full opening to cars, and 74 were speaking for no cars on Main Street, full closure, or fully open to human beings. I also, I also heard from a former council member who did not speak, who reminded us about the importance of hearing from the community. And I think that was a majority voice tonight, and I wanted to lay that in front of us while we deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. Councilmember McReynolds, and then Councilmember Duran, and then Councilmember Manganay.
So I have kind of following back up on Councilmember Manganay's comments regarding the parklets. I have a real issue with requiring the parklets to be installed before there's a final decision regarding the appeal, because how can we ask a business to spend what we just worked out to be somewhere between $40,000 and $80,000, and then we're going to tell them to tear them out because the ruling goes against it? I mean, that's a lot of candy to be selling over at Rocket Fizz on it. So I don't know how we balance that. I mean, I would be a no vote on requiring parklets to be installed in the January timeframe. Until the case is resolved, I don't think it's fair to ask these businesses to spend between $40,000 and $80,000 on a design that they might have to lose on it, on a thing that we're implementing, you know, on it. So I just, I put that out for consideration on it, that I just have a real issue with that January timing on it.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Michael, if I, I don't know what the time is, so I just got a bunch of random thoughts I'm going to be throwing out here right now. Thanks. So I met with a lot of business owners, and recently, I've been down talking to a lot. And so I know a lot of the business owners aren't here, the ones that were telling me that they would really like to... The ones that were telling me that they would really like to see the street open. And I mean, it was really sad because I met with one business owner. He says, if the place stays closed, I'm going to close two more days a week. And I thought, ah, man, that's a bummer. And then I spoke to somebody else and said, you know, Jim, we're getting bullied. Where people are telling us it's, and I saw the printout saying that if we decide we want it open, we say we want it open, they're going to give us one-star reviews. And I just said, I can't believe this is happening in Ventura. I can't believe businesses are getting bullied. It was like ridiculous in my thought, but it was true and it was happening. So I just want to throw that out there as well. I think the entertainment, what we're talking about, it absolutely needs to be studied because walking around with alcohol and stuff like that, and we're talking about all these children that are going to be out there. I don't know, just a little bit of a concern. So I think a study on that would be great. Long-term vision, absolutely, 100% let's do it right. I don't, I don't know if we're there, only because there's so many unknowns. We don't know how many businesses are going to buy parklets. We don't know how many want to install them, how many want to spend the money, how much the rent is going to be, if they're willing to pay that. We don't know how many stakeholders. Because I think if we're going to, if we're going to really do a great job closing Main Street and making a pedestrian mall or making it just a beautiful place to go, a space to go, I think we need to have buy-in from people that are down there, from the property owners, from the business owners, where they speak into it.
Hello, hello, please hold the corner.
I understand, I understand that you're not all here. All the business owners aren't here. What I've heard from others is different. And so if, like, I sat here, I sat here for three hours listening to you without interrupting you at all. Why is it, why can't you let people talk? What is so hard for you just to let people talk? So.
Please hold your remarks. Thank you.
So I also heard, there's like, remember how it used to be? Gosh, there was all these cars down there. There was so much traffic, which to me, sounds like it must have been pretty busy. It must have been pretty profitable if all these cars were down there. The best part of the city, somebody said, was Main Street. And I would just say, look around, because we have an incredible city. We have beaches and we have promenades and we have piers and we have hills. And I used to feel like the best part of the city was the people that lived in the city. Red shirts, somebody brought up red shirts. Red shirts were around before. I mean, that's our agreement with the downtown Ventura partners. They do take care of our city. Arts and culture, yeah, that's a great idea. The reason I say all of these things is that I would say, I would say, let's take time to develop this incredible plan that you've already started. You know, what people are saying, if you open, it'll be better. Some businesses, if you open, it'll be better. You're saying, no, it won't be better. Well, how would we ever know unless we actually open? And if we open the streets up?
Please be respectful. Thank you.
So as a business owner, as someone who's owned businesses, I look at the long-term vision and I think, okay, well, wait a minute, are we there yet? We don't know who's committed completely. We don't know what streets, we haven't really looked at what streets make the most sense to close. And so I would say, let's take this time, let's open it up. Let's take this time and authorize the contract to the Amendment 3. But let's see what kind of revenue would be generated. That's my opinion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Manganay, followed by?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, man, there's a lot going on here. I will also bounce around on my thoughts, so bear with me. You know, this is obviously an emotionally charged issue. A big part because you have people in this room that really have invested everything in their business within the closure. So I understand the frustration. I've talked to many people in this room, business owners, you know who you are. I've talked to, and, you know, Councilmember Duran is right. There are primarily merchants downtown who want the street back opened. That's just a fact. So I'm not going to ignore that also. I also, to kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember McReynolds stated, is I too have an issue requiring, in particular, restaurants to invest by a hard date if we don't really know what's going to happen, right? So there's this kind of, there's a bit of a utopian kind of view on this closure. But being a little bit more realistic, we do not know. There is no definitive answer on what is going to happen. We all have an opinion, but the legal system is taking its course. So I have a problem with requiring restaurants to remove their parklets and invest in a new parklet when we don't know what's going to happen. At the same time, I have a problem requiring the city to invest funds for the same reason. For the record, I have, I have no desire to ever drive down Main Street again. This is not what I'm talking about. So just for the record, I don't care if I'm ever behind the wheel driving down Main Street. Or I have two kids too. I don't care if they ever drive down Main Street either. So if it was up to my daughter, she's 14, if she was up here, she would say, keep the street closed. I mean, that's where kids go to hang out nowadays. But so I have some real concerns that I think need to be, need to be discussed or at least brought into the open. This pedestrian mall, this concept, it has flaws. This is not, again, I'm not, I'm not going to pretend like, you know, to have some utopian view on this thing is just going to be successful. Because the fact of matter is, just putting people downtown is not going to make this closure a success. It's just not. Historically, pedestrian malls and specifically ones of this size, the facts and the data suggest that in most cases, they're not successful. This is a large-scale pedestrian mall in relation to others. We had a gentleman here from Grass Valley. Grass Valley is two blocks. Santa Monica Third Street is three blocks. Santa Monica Third Street is having a whole plethora of issues. They are too considering the outdoor consumption of alcohol to save the pedestrian mall. That's why they're considering doing that. These are all things that are kind of going through my mind the last couple of months. Councilmember McReynolds, he touched on the clarity of the, kind of the overall cost of parklets. Again, up to two weeks ago, I talked to restaurant owners who had no idea what the cost of the parklets were. They didn't know there was pre-approved parklet design guidelines. They didn't know any of it. That's just unfortunate. And that just goes back to how kind of flawed this whole process has been. And that's also a concern of mine. And that's something that I'm not going to ignore. Sorry, I have a lot of notes. I got like five pages of notes from the last two days. We touched on the parklets. I don't need to revisit that. The Ballard Plan is awesome. I would also like to put pressure on you guys to get that done as soon as possible. I think that's a critical component, critical component for downtown regardless of what happens here tonight. I could keep going on. For now, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
So tonight, we heard from in the room nearly 30 business owners. We also received email from many, many other business owners. I think I counted 27 that I answered the email from. I was answering email today until 1:40 PM. So there also is a scientist from Ventura College who sent us an email which shows that there's a lot more success in pedestrian streets than you're talking about right now. I know that the business owners, I mean, the property owners were saying a lot of things to us and sending a lot of letters that could be a little confusing. But this is a scientist, and he sent us an email, which I guess slipped past you, Alex, because it says a lot about pedestrian malls. And they're not all unsuccessful. We can be very successful in this. I also am at the point now, sitting on council and having spent years watching council meetings, where decisions were made based on being held hostage by people threatening to sue us. We heard from one person tonight, and we've had three or four email from people telling us that they were able to verify maybe none of the claims, recent claims we received were valid. Perhaps the theater has a very valid claim, but the other property owners don't. And so for us to say, we have to wait, we have to wait, we have to wait, they're going to sue us, after hearing from this many people in the community, plus all the email we received, if you read them, you know how important this is to our community. What you may not know is that a lot of business owners will shut down and leave Main Street if we open it up to cars. So we have to think about all of these things carefully and not be held hostage by a few property owners.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify is that I think part of my concern and why I was so excited, and I used all my time with my jubilation, thanks to all of you, is because I knew after five years, three of COVID, two to three afterwards, because of the need to fight lawsuits, because of the EIRs that we had to go through, we have seen less than beautiful parklets on Main Street. We have seen and witnessed what it could be in the excitement of seeing our friends and family out there shopping and saying. As a landscaper, I go, my region goes down to North Los Angeles County. And when I mention I'm from Ventura, what people say is, oh, my God, we love what you did in downtown. I hear that constantly. As a business owner, I've had five businesses in the city, three of which were in downtown. And I know, I weighed the hybrid versus open versus closed. And is, did tax dollars go up? Did it go down or do property values, you know, lost? All of that conversation for the last three years. Well, we look at some parklets that look like swap meets. While we look at barricades that look like we're in Ukraine in front of a war. That's enough. That's enough. And at some point, we got to say, we're going to move on. We won the first lawsuit. There's another one for an appeal. I kind of, I get the idea that we can insist that people spend a lot of money on something that may have to become fortified would be the worst case. So maybe there's an adjustment there in time until we get through that appeal process. But we need to move forward with the ballards, with the planters, with the beautification, and then encourage people to believe in the future and maybe take a risk and do the parklet, knowing they may have to fortify it, right? So anyways, I just want to throw those out. But I am solidly in the camp of leaving this closed. And was it 81B? Plus, the entertainment area. I would throw that into it. I'm hoping that somebody else makes that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran, followed by Councilmember Manganay.
Yeah, just three quick things. One of them is the, there was a lot of talk about mental health and, you know, being in community down there and open space. But, you know, we do have a lot of open space. Matter of fact, it was about, gosh, I'll tell you, it was a couple Sundays ago, about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It was a beautiful day. And I looked down, there wasn't a lot of people there on Main Street, hardly any at all. And then the, last week, I was actually at Branca Vista Park. It was Sunday about 3 o'clock, 3 o'clock or so. And the only family at that park was us. And there's this beautiful park, nobody was walking on the park. And I thought, dang, the next time somebody talks to me about open space, I'm going to say, go to a park. Because it was absolutely beautiful. So I just want to bring that to people's attention. And then also, you know, I'm looking at, what about a clean slate? Like, what about, you know, I know we're talking about, you made a comment, Doug, about, you know, let's get this thing rolling. I'm just saying, there's, like, it looks pretty bad right now. And, yeah, it'd be kind of nice just to get rid of everything and start completely over. But as far as hostages, the people that I've talked to on Main Street, some of the businesses that I've talked, quite a bit. As a matter of fact, based on the numbers I saw tonight, I heard we had like 100 businesses and 41 of them were for keeping it closed. That means there's still others that don't, and they're not, they're not here and they're not talking about it. But when I spoke to them.
Stop, please. Thank you.
When I spoke to them, it's amazing. When I spoke to them, they were saying, you know, we never signed up for a closed Main Street. We signed up for an open Main Street. And after COVID was over, we were hoping that it would open up. And so, you know, you have all of those people as well, all of those business people. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Councilmember Manganay, you still had, I'm going to start wrapping this up.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. Just a couple of quick points. So I have no intention in kicking this can down the road, maybe my point wasn't clear enough. That's something that I told every single business owner that I talked to in the last two months. I have no intention in doing that. So, but I'm also not going to pretend like there isn't real problems with what's going on and how we got to this point. Because there is, and there's a potential for there to be real problems for business owners if eventually this thing flips around. So I'm not going to ignore any of that. And I think, I honestly think it'd be silly as someone who's seven people tasked to make the, ultimately make the decision on people's livelihoods. I mean, you have people here that are obviously really passionate about this. I think it would be crazy to ignore that fact. So I think if that's the direction that council wants to go, then we have to do that. If the community is expecting the council to buy in on this, on this idea, and be the ones who are ultimately going to make the decisions to invest upwards of $30 million of the taxpayers' funds in the city of Ventura, then the business owners have to commit too. So that's what I'm saying. It's not something that, a decision that I take lightly. But that's a direction that I'm going to go, is that if the community here wants us to buy in, then they have to be willing to buy in. And that means investing regardless of what the potential is to happen, to your point. So I just have to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll go ahead and make some quick comments and then I'll ask for a motion. I think tonight, I have seen so many new faces and so many new people and voices that came out on this issue. And I just want to, once again, say thank you and appreciate you hanging out this late as we deliberate here. At the end of the day, I hear what my colleagues are talking about in terms of the uncertainty as a challenge. Because I do recognize just the instability that some of the businesses might be feeling. I too have also talked to several businesses who reached out, who wanted to voice their concerns. But I also heard from them that I think the biggest challenge was that council was not making a decision one way or another. And I think as long as we can make a decision one way or another, hopefully, that will give them some sort of sense of stability in which direction we're going to move forward in. And I think tonight, for me anyway, the whole appeal process that is out there, to me, could be jeopardized if we decide to open Main Street. Because then the appeal would not be in our favor. The appeal would be in the favor of those who are appealing. And that, to me, we're shooting ourselves in our foot if we do that. I get that, you know, keeping it closed to vehicles could be a challenge. To me, it's also an opportunity, though. It presents an opportunity for us to be even more innovative, to be even more just out-of-the-box thinkers and to work collaboratively. Because of all you here want to see this change, then I'm going to also expect all of you to help us come up with solutions, to help us come up with what do we do next. And I appreciate that you are here, and there was so much effort put into the voices that you gathered, whether through signatures or emails or what have you. So to me, it's a powerful moment to have so many people involved in something that will mark what Ventura becomes for our next generations. And to me, I love the fact that so many of the younger voices came out, so many of our youth are advocating for this. And I can't turn a blind eye to that and say, well, I think we need to do X, Y, and Z opposite of what they're asking, because it's their future. They are the ones who are going to be here, hopefully, way longer than the rest of us. But anyway, I think it's a chance to create a downtown that's going to reflect the uniqueness of everyone who's here and that will inspire, hopefully, the next generation. And so with that, I ask for a motion so that we can vote. And so with that, I ask for a motion so that we can vote on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna say a, a few quick things. Councilmember Campos, when you went, were going through your list, you forgot one singer and one song, so that's important. And then, so, I know that when we talk about parklets, right, we gotta do one thing at a time, we, I mean, the parklets is, isn't a different issue, that's gonna be a, a separate item that we're gonna be talking about a little later, so just understanding that, you know, let's focus on what, what this item is first, and then we can talk about how the parklets is gonna be something that we can discuss. And that, I feel like, you know, will help us kind of, you know, really understand how we're gonna be moving forward with this. And I wanna address something that Councilmember Duran was saying, when businesses are being bullied, that is a response from some very prominent property owners that have started a lot of that bullying in the first place. And yet, and yet, we have to stop that practice. So the best boards that I've ever been on, and I've been on a lot of boards, there are, the best boards here is because we have differences of perspectives. And that definitely needs to be accepted, because it's, the nation, there's a national rhetoric, right, that if we don't agree, then we attack each other. And I just don't think that's the shared value that we want here in Ventura. And so, you know, when, when we did the CARES Act, Councilmember Duran and I, we hugged afterwards. It was a very heated discussion, you all, most of you were there, and yet, there is still a collaboration that needs to happen with a strong board like ours. And so, the reason why I'm saying that is because it is very difficult to have the courage to voice and, to be unpopular amongst people who believe in something different. Because he's voicing, we have heard those other perspective from people who are not here. And, and, and I get it, this is a, like Councilmember Mangone said, this is a very heated issue, and yet, we're gonna hold on to quorum and, and, and respect in this, in this discussion. So I just wanted to say that, because that's a shared value that I really want us to mirror, and we're gonna lead that as a board here. So I wanna say this final thing, the vision that was rendered is stunning. It is amazing, and I want that. I look at the Botanical Gardens and the Harbor, and I think of all the brave people in the past that made those decisions for us, for this city. And I gotta say, you know, on top of them having that, that courage, they had a vision, they had a dream, and on top of that, they had perseverance and resilience. And I, when I'm older, when I, when I, you know, my husband and I, when we are walking down in this city, I wanna look at Main Street Moves, and I wanna say that I was part of the people who built this. And I wanna have that pride, and I wanna share that with my family and my kids and my grandkids, oh my God, I'm gonna have grandkids, this is a great future. So I wanna leave this legacy, because this is a legacy that I wanna keep for Main Street Moves to be car-free and ensure that this area thrives for all of our families. And I wanna echo what our mayor said, because it's really, really important, friends, that the success of Main Street Moves and when we, whatever it looks like, or however we vote, is really, the success and failure of Main Street Moves depend on all of you. And what that looks like is just, you know, really making sure against the, the concerns that Councilmember Mangone was saying, is that we need to make sure that we help in building what that looks like, whatever vision that we all want, participate in everything. The Main Street Moves doesn't stop tonight. This is a conversation that didn't start three weeks ago. This is a conversation that happened years and years and years, and years and years and years ahead of us as well. So I am moving for us to, I move for us to go with option B.
I'll second.
Second? Oh, you did.
Yeah.
Mayor, to be clear, that's option, capital B?
Yes, capital B.
Capital B.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yeah, I have some amendments I'd like to propose. So I would like to have the ballards installed by April 1st of 26. And if that can't be done, then staff can bring a report back to us at a later date. I would like the restrooms to remain open until the Portland Lou is installed by the parking structure. And then the other restrooms to remain in place. No parklets until open Main Street versus the city of San Bueno Ventura is settled. That the second bathroom location is brought forward to us, mentioned in the staff report by March 24th, 2026. That the coastal development permit appears before city council and not the planning commission. We're the ones making this decision, we need to be the ones to, to ratify it. That the vision plan and activation plan appears before the city council on December 16th of '25. That the capital improvement and implementation plan appear before the city council by March 24th, 2026. And that the entertainment zone appear before us by December 16th, 2025.
Got that? I'm, I, maker of the motion, are you?
I accept, but did the clerk get all of it?
Councilmember McReynolds, could you clarify the CIP date that you had for CIP coming back to city council, March?
24th, '26.
Are there concerns from the staff?
I mean, I think that you're, the way that the, the motion is written, we have an opportunity to come back and report back if there are any issues. I think the ballards installed by April 1st, 2026 could work, the restrooms would remain open until Portland Lou is installed, and we'll come back to you with some budget updates for that. We probably need some contracts then amended and brought back to city council. Just to clarify, not no parklets until the appeal is determined, but businesses would not be required to replace their parklet. They could, but they wouldn't be required to until the appeal of the-
Till the case is settled.
Until the case is determined. As far as the second bathroom, could you clarify that item?
Staff report mentions that staff is working on a second bathroom location on it, so that-
Permanent bathroom, yes.
Yeah, so it says, under bathrooms, staff will continue to explore options for a second permanent restroom within the downtown area regardless of which option is selected. I'm putting a date that, that comes back to us by March 24th.
Okay.
'26.
And then the coastal development permit going to city council, generally that would go to actually the director's hearing, I was going to elevate it to planning commissions and some sitting before you right now. Can we bring that to council?
I was gonna ask you the same question.
I think we can. Should that not be an option, we, we can come back and report to you if that's not an option, since you're the appeal authority of that, but so is the coastal commission.
We just need to double check what the municipal code says, it's probably fine, but we need to double check.
Before making the decision, I want us to be the one making the decision.
Fair enough.
And Councilmember Mangone, did you have a?
Yeah, I just had a, kind of a question for clarification regarding the, the discussion around the entertainment zone. So that's an item that you would bring back by December-
December 16th.
December 16th. So that would, at that time, would that be a resolution for, or would that be something, a plan that the council could adopt that would then come back for a resolution? How would that, what's the process for that?
So we would bring back a resolution that would allow you to establish the entertainment zone within thirty days of that ordinance being, or resolution being adopted, and it would include a plan of the management, how we would operate it, all of the details, so that we could start fairly quickly.
And we don't have to accept it if we don't think it's what we want.
Correct. So how, just for clarity, how much staff time is involved with creating this plan?
Like I said previously, a lot of other cities have been adopting entertainment zones, so there's a lot we could pull from, from other places, probably like a sixty to seventy hour task for staff members, for two to three staff members.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second, so I think I wanna move to vote. So call for a vote if everything is clear.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Are we clear with the motion?
You clear with the motion? Yes.
Councilmember Duran?
Just to be clear, I am not against a closed Main Street. I'm not against that at all. I, I'm just against this plan right now. I would love to see it open so we could get the data to see how prosperous it would be if it was open, that's all. So I'm gonna vote no on this.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Six eyes and the motion carries.
Okay, I get it, you're excited. We still have a meeting, we still have a meeting, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the time and effort you put into this as well. Do you need a break?
Mayor, point of order, we will need a motion to continue past 10:00 PM if we decide to take a break.
We still have a meeting going, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to continue past 10 o'clock.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to continue past 10 o'clock.
On the motion, Councilmember Duran? Is absent. Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
No.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Five eyes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna do a five-minute break. We'll be back at 10.
And then we'll go to Rachel's item. Are we doing Rachel's, right? They'll go back to number five?
Yes.
Okay, seal the break, yeah.
I wanna see that resolution. I was like trying to write it down.
Hi, that's Tony with the star.
I know.
So the parking stuff is still on the agenda, except, it sounds like they just approved it. They vote to approve the staff appointment. Well, that can go through, so.
So I mean, you know, I mean-
Exactly.
You apply to do my cell phone number?
Oh.
We can do our cell, and I'm glad we're here.
I love to see how I did that.
You actually should have.
I'm just sorry.
You reply to do my cell phone number?
Oh.
We can do our cell, and I'm glad we're here.
I love to see how I did that.
I'm just sorry.
I think I might have got that actually from the talk earlier, but that, that's it.
They said the only thing left on there is for public comments.
No.
This is my, I love it.
In a public hearing, I know.
Yeah.
What is it?
Yeah.
Public, in a public hearing, and he said this list only shows public comments.
That's because I need to straighten up.
The head of the two public hearings.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah, I would say just a little bit. I don't think you got less busy, did you?
No, never.
And that's fine, I'm a business, I don't like being honest.
Thanks for being here.
I'm on the business side.
There's lots of errors.
Nothing that you probably haven't all been talking about.
They're talking about people getting around.
Like I said, they're talking about your job up in Vegas. I was like, seriously? Yeah, I just, I was like, I know, I was just like, she's gonna, cuz I saw your hand go.
You made each other, I was like, I hate when they come to the project management bar.
It hurts, thank you.
Oh, that was your case?
Right after.
Hello.
I don't see you with this podium there, I don't need to tell you.
I know, I'm getting off.
I go to work, I remember, there's twenty bucks, I don't know where it is, I actually made it.
Now I feel like I really, I really need to support downtown.
I was going through Stanford for today, I was doing math on like, yeah.
I feel like there's plenty of nothing, I had a whole leg brace and four ligaments torn, and this ligament, and this, two, two are still torn right now.
And this ligament's torn, and I had a whole leg brace on, and I still toppled around all over. Went out and party once, danced around my birthday, and you know, my leg was hurting so bad. And they're still playing and parking because the law says that all you are handicapped and you can park anywhere in those spots and in the, even the time zone. Get to the campus.
What about something, do you want to add color to the, color to the whole scene here? Sort of like a brick shop, you know, they do the brick shop, where people buy a bicycle, what about that for two, four people who have the ability?
Cause I remember it had a sign, it was a side phone, and the little microns with the, the characters and something like that. They love to be in the car, and they take the car, drive to the car, and that's just the kind of employees will ride and have, will ride the car. So that's actually, I did it too for like, and it's also created with stuff. And I was also gonna ask you, um, the thing about the stage, was that deadline, the fifteen is not gonna be when you're gonna have it, ready to go by?
Oh, is that what it was?
Yes.
You missed the vote to extend the meeting.
Are we ready to come back, council? It's been five minutes. Hurry.
Dead? Dead or locked out?
We're doing good, right?
Hey, are you riding? Hey, still here to talk to you?
Okay, let me know, after we get away.
One.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna sit here, so you sit here, I'll sit on the end.
So my wife is maybe wanting me to come home.
We're going to In-Lu, In-Lu. Oh, I'm not doing a good job at protecting the dais, nobody's supposed to walk into the dais.
Okay.
Uh, hey, folks?
We're, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. Live meeting, we are on item number five, where we'll have staff, this is a resolution to amend fee schedule for lot line adjustments to meet housing element program eighteen, objective eighteen point four, infill first strategy. Oh, nobody's here.
We've lost our city manager and city attorney.
Live meeting, city manager, city attorney, we need you here.
Councilmember Mangone?
I think Councilmember Mangone and Councilmember Schumacher.
Councilmember Schumacher.
And then is this one on?
Sale, sweep up on, behind the dais?
Let's go ahead and have staff presentation.
All right, good evening, city council, my name is Rachel West, and this is a public hearing for the lot line adjustment fees.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just need to make sure that we have confirmed the noticing requirements for this item, Mr. City Clerk. Thank you. And now, I will open the public hearing, go ahead, thank you.
All right, this is the public hearing for the lot line adjustment fees to meet housing element objective eighteen point four. The housing element was certified in October of 2023, and within it has program eighteen, which is the infill first strategy, which has four objectives, including eighteen point four, which is to facilitate lot consolidations. The main aspects of eighteen point four include lot line adjustments being done ministerially, waiving lot line adjustments for affordable housing projects and mixed-use projects that are less than half of an acre, as well as conducting outreach and communication to property owners about this lot line adjustment fee. The city has currently met the lot line adjustments being processed ministerially, as well as providing flexible agreements. However, to fully meet objective eighteen point four of the housing element, we would need to waive the lot line adjustment fee for eligible projects. The current lot line adjustment fee is $3,354. The city would also have to conduct outreach to eligible property owners and developers, this could be through workshops and flyers. This is a little graph that shows how many lot line adjustment fees or applications have been submitted since 2022. This is a little graph that shows how many lot line adjustment fees or applications have been submitted since 2022. So about four a year. City staff brought this to the Planning Commission on April 1st, 2025. After deliberation, the Planning Commission made the following recommendation. Waive lot line adjustment fees for projects that are 50% affordable regardless of their acreage, as well as reduce the lot line adjustment fees by 50% for multifamily and mixed-use projects that are half an acre or less. Staff also brought this to the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee on May 21st, 2025, and the Subcommittee did have the same recommendation as Planning Commission. So the recommendation before you tonight is to hold a public hearing, as well as adopt a resolution authorizing the Community Development Director to waive lot line adjustment fees for projects that are at least 50% affordable regardless of their acreage, as well as reducing lot line adjustment fees by 50% for multifamily and mixed-use projects that are half an acre or less. And staff will be able for questions, comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If no council questions, I'll go ahead and take any public comments if there are any.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor. There are no public comments on item number five.
Okay, so we'll come back to council for final questions. Any questions? Councilmember McReynolds?
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I need to close the public hearing though, right?
Yes.
Okay, no questions, no further discussion. I will close the public hearing now. And I have a motion and a second to move the item.
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes, thank you.
Seven eyes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, on to item number six, another public hearing ordinance amending San Buenaventura Municipal Code, Chapter 18, creating section 18.400 for parklet encroachments in the public rights of way, and resolution adopting new regulatory fees for parklets. And just confirming once again, any noticing requirements? Have we met them, Mr. City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item has been adequately noticed.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, members of the public and staff. My name is Shiana Farley. I'm the Planning Manager for the Community Development Department. Tonight I am presenting to you a proposed ordinance for the municipal code amendment and parklet fees resolution, which would provide a parklet permit process for the parklets that we discussed in the earlier item tonight. As noted in the background, and I will go through this a little quicker maybe, parklets were first initiated in the city in 2020 as a way to address COVID-19. Parklets were meant as a temporary solution for businesses and restaurants and retail establishments to have outdoor gathering during the lockdown. But more formally, in March 2024, the City Council formally adopted a citywide parklet design guideline and standard to make permitting of parklets more consistent and to address safety and other accessibility concerns. Again, although the guidelines can be used citywide, it has been used primarily downtown. Since parklets have, currently exist in, in the city throughout the city, most of them were built without using the parklet design guidelines. A few of those have been built since then, but we're also not using those guidelines. And so the solution today would be that new parklets that would be installed would need to be, all the existing parklets would need to be removed and rebuilt to meet those current standards. And we hope that in the next few months, provided the guidance on the previous item comes forward, they would be rebuilt in the future. So over the past few months, staff has been working with other departments and other agencies in order to prepare the parklet permitting process for you. This would include a building permit and certificate of occupancy process to ensure that they're built to current codes and standards. The parklet would also be required to have a parklet operator maintenance agreement and license agreement, which is much like a rental agreement with the property owner, which would be the city. We would include an insurance and indemnification clause within that license agreement. And it would also include any updates to the expansion of alcohol services part of an alcohol use permit process. A parklet encroachment permit would be required for those parklets installed within the right-of-way. Again, most of them are, although they can be on private property and we have a couple of permits in process right now to permit parklets on private property. We're also proposing the adoption of a fee process and fee schedule update to address the fee concerns that go along with permitting. So in summary, we hope that in late September, early October, if the parklets, permit, excuse me, if the pre-approved parklet plans are approved tonight, that those folks would be able to use those 90% design drawings in the next few weeks if they so choose. We will have an application process that will be online at Ventura Ops. You would apply once and any piece of the permits that you need would all be gathered under one permit process. And you would have like a permit liaison in our Community Development Department that would help you navigate all the different pieces of that permit within the one application. The fee collection would be generated for the applicant so they would understand what those permit fees would be and they'd be required to pay those fees by occupancy, but they could pay sooner. We estimate that the pre-approved plans that are approved would take about two weeks to do plan check on them. If someone were to do a custom design plan, there might be several rounds of corrections if we need to meet any building standard requirements for that permit. So we're proposing a new section of our municipal code, which would fall in Chapter 18. Chapter 18 is where the Public Works Department manages many of the things that occur in our public rights of way. We're proposing a section titled 18400, Parklet Encroachments in Public Rights of Way, which mirrors our other encroachment permit sections earlier in that chapter, but is very specific to the parklet permitting process. And it would authorize improvements within the right-of-way specific to parklets. It would also do one thing differently than that permit process currently requires and that would allow staff to issue a license agreement at a staff level rather than having to come back before you for each individual parklet with a particular license agreement. I think a few years ago, you may have seen a few of those license agreements become before you. Very time-consuming. The applicant would then have to wait some time for us to get onto an agenda. And so the minor tweak to that code section would be that staff could approve those license agreements, which are in form attached to your staff report and be able to process those in a quicker fashion. The license agreement functions much like a rental agreement in the right-of-way for using that property in perpetuity as long as they stay in compliance with our program or so choose to, to keep in operation. The parklet encroachment guideline requirements that are in 18400 would not apply on private property. This would only be in the right-of-way and it would be citywide. I'm gonna say that again, just to make it clear. If there are places in town where someone might want to propose this outside of the downtown closure area, this would also work for them. They would likely need you to fortified parklet because they would have moving traffic near them. But this would be operational for those as well. So on the screen here, you'll see the proposed parklet permitting fees that are included in your staff report. As noted earlier, some of you have read this already, is that we recommend a fairly substantial subsidization of those fees. On the left of the blue box, you'll see what we've estimated the staff time to cost to actually do these things. And in the blue box to the right, the subsidized fee that we're recommending tonight. So on the left, you'll see that we've estimated using all the different plan check staff in the different departments, it would cost roughly $3,304 to do a plan check on a pre-approved parklet design. We're recommending that this be subsidized to about 80% and that would be a fee of about $740. And this is assuming that we're going through one, maybe two plan checks and it should be pretty straightforward because the parklet design plans have been pre-approved, pre-vetted. We just need to make sure that all of their diagrams for their site plan match. They show their fire hydrants or curb cuts, whatever they need to show. And it should be a pretty streamlined process. If a parklet operator chooses not to use a pre-designed plan, we estimate that there will be additional plan check reviews. We've included in this three rounds of review at a subsidized rate of $1,003. And then if they were to need to go through four or five plan check reviews, they'd have to pay the normal hourly rate, which we would charge on any plan check review. But they would be heavily subsidized if they were able to get through that plan check review process more quickly. So that fee on the top of the chart is just our construction permitting fee. So that would apply on both private property or public property. And now if you're in the public right-of-way in the downtown, they'd also be required to get a parklet encroachment license agreement for that perpetual use of that property in the long term. The license agreement fee that we've estimated staff time to require would be $895. We're asking this be subsidized to $251, which is about 72% of the cost. And then below that, you'll see the actual license fee, which is a per-month estimate, like a rental fee, for the use of the property. And I have another slide that'll show you an example. And as Rachel mentioned in the prior presentation, this mimics the 2022 fees that were adopted for the same permit rate. The only thing that's different here is that we've taken out the net zero fee because it's no longer applicable. And the main difference between these two fees is an open street fee or a closed street fee. So in the case of a closed street, which you voted on earlier, the closure fee would be reduced to 61 cents per square foot because there would be no parking available in that situation. There would be no need for the additional in-lu fee that's included if we have an open street. So the fee that is included, because there are places in town where we won't have a closure of a street, that would apply to those parklets that might be on an open street. In addition, lastly, there is a removal fee of $1,000. We hope that most businesses, when they so choose to leave or need to remove their parklet, they'll do so on their own. In the case that they don't, this fee will be used to actually do that work and have staff remove the parklet for them. But we hope that this is a deposit that they can recoup once they've removed their parklet. So on the screen is an example of a 500-square-foot parklet and what those scenarios might play out to be if they choose to use the pre-approved parklet design construction plans that we've prepared. In that situation, the first year, they would pay a $740 building permit, construction permit fee. They would pay $251 for the license agreement to be prepared. They would pay a $1,000 deposit, which we would hold until it's removed. And then they would be required to pay throughout the whole annual assessment of that monthly square foot fee, either $3,660 on a closed street or if it's on an open street, which would not be on Main Street in this situation after the vote you had, of $6,780. The ground totals at the bottom show that, that rate of either $5,600 or $8,700. The next year going forward and every year beyond that, they would only be required to pay the license fee. And so those fees that they pay the one time at the beginning, they won't need to pay the next year. So their operational costs are noted in the column 2 under year two. So there's definitely a financial impact in creating a new fee on our fee schedule and a fee impact to subsidizing those fees. So we're hoping that the subsidized fee still helps to offset the review of permit plans, issuance of permits, the inspections and management of the permit process. We do think that this will support local businesses and help offset the cost of them actually installing a new parklet because they've already invested a significant amount in their current parklet. Removing that and rebuilding one is going to be a financial investment. And so we're hoping this offsets that slightly. We also hope that into the future, these are maintained with license agreement fees into the future and that that, those funds that would be generated in that monthly rate fee could be used to help reinvest and manage the program. And that we also see that there would be increased sales tax revenue from parklets in the city. The action before you to adopt the new code section and fee schedule supports the City Council's strategic priorities of economic vitality and development and infrastructure, both of which make notations about Main Street move and the closure in particular. So staff recommends that you conduct your public hearing tonight. You find that the action before you is exempt from SEQA under Section 15061, which is a common sense exemption for a request that isn't triggering any impacts. Actions of ordinances or fee adoptions typically fall under this category. Next, we'd ask that you introduce and approve, excuse me, introduce and approve the first reading of the ordinance as titled on the screen for the new code section 18400 and set a second reading and adoption date for that ordinance at your next City Council meeting to provide adequate notice for the public. And lastly, we ask that you approve the attached resolution to adopt the new fee schedule as described, including the fees subsidized as described. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any council questions? If not, I will go to public comment. If there are any public comment, Mr. City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There is one public comment. Michael Harasser, and we have three minutes for the speakers. Michael, are you still here? Uh, Mayor, it looks like that concludes public comment.
Okay. Back to council. If no final questions, I'll go ahead and, Councilmember McReynolds?
Question for the city attorney. In lieu of the previous vote, do we need any clarifications to the recommendation? That's my question.
To this recommendation?
Yes.
I don't believe so. And also to keep in mind the, this is citywide. So unless staff feels that there's a need, I'm not sure that there's, I mean, the two are related, but they're not intertwined, I think.
Thank you.
But isn't the timeline changed?
So you had changed the timeline based on the legal cases that were waiting on appeal for. What that would allow is for businesses to maintain their existing parklets, but businesses could opt to build new parklets or new businesses could come in and opt to build new parklets and they would utilize the structure. And as the city attorney said, this applies citywide, so it also includes businesses outside of Main Street moves that would want to use on-street parking spaces for a parklet.
So it doesn't necessarily need, it's not part of the motion? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. This is, this can remain as is and it includes fortified and non-fortified.
You have a question? Yes.
Sorry, I should have just kept going. So I, I know that we changed the timeline a little bit and I just wanted to understand one of the issue, not issues, the observances that Councilmember Mangone pointed out is that the business owners don't know about this. So what is the communication plan that we're, we're gonna do once this is approved?
So I will say that when the design guidelines were established, every business that had a parklet had a one-on-one meeting with our consultant to talk about the design guidelines and what it meant for their business, in addition to most of them participating and creating the guidelines themselves. Moving forward, should this be adopted, we will reach out to all of the businesses that have parklets as well as really doing a kind of wider net at public engagement with businesses throughout the city to let them know that this is available to them.
Great, great. And, and they're not obligated to, like, I guess, okay, yeah, I, I, I was just gonna ask you, they're not obligated to keep their parklet even, I mean, it's just an option that there's some guidelines that we're establishing?
Correct. They're not obligated to keep theirs. Most of them don't meet the current standard, so they would need to be removed. So if they so choose to put one back in, they'd need to meet the current standard that we're adopting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. On, I believe, Slide 5, the bottom line says it does not apply to parklets on private property. So if there's a restaurant or a business that has parking on their property, does, does this apply to that if it's not using spaces in the street?
It would, Councilmember Campos. So the way the original guidelines were adopted would be to be flexible, to be used citywide on private property or public property. In the case of that situation where it's on private property, they wouldn't need to get an encroachment permit or have a license agreement with us because they wouldn't need to have that legal obligation with us into the future. We've got a couple of these that we're working on right now. They would need to show how they're achieving their parking requirements on-site. Some shopping centers have excess parking and they might be able to navigate that pretty easily. And they'd have a legal obligation to the property owner, but they wouldn't need that with us. So they would only need to pay for the building permits and get what other use permit they might need.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for final deliberations and a motion is required. Councilmember Schumacher?
Shoot, I had another question, but I don't want to open up the public. Never mind.
Okay. A motion is required.
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'm second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven eyes, the motion carries.
Thank you, staff. Thank you. And our last item, formal item, resolution adopting revised benefits and additional compensation for unrepresented employees. And I believe we have our Human Resources Director, Valerie Baroso. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the City Council. Prior to July 8th, 2025, the retirement benefits provided to the city's unrepresented safety employees are included in the benefits resolution via reference to other external documents. The California Public Employees Retirement System, also known as CALPERS, which manages and administers the city's retirement benefits, previously notified the city that special compensation related to retirement benefits for unrepresented employees must be fully described in the benefits resolution without any reference to external documents. To satisfy CALPERS requirements, council approved Resolution 2025-49 on July 8th of 2025, which explicitly states the retirement benefits information for unrepresented safety employees in the benefits resolution rather than referencing applicable union agreements. CALPERS subsequently informed the city that such modification- that such modification should include a five-year period. And as such, it has recommended this evening that the effective date of the changes previously approved by council in Resolution 2025-49 on June 8th, 2025, be modified to be effective on August 1st, 2020. There is no additional cost to the city as this change simply transfers the existing retirement benefits information for those unrepresented safety employees from the external document, which were the MOUs, directly into the Unrepresented Employee Benefits Resolution. At this time, staff is recommending that council adopt the revised resolution providing for benefits and additional compensation for unrepresented employees and salary schedules E, M, C, and D. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any council questions? No? Okay, I will go ahead and recognize any public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. No public comment.
Okay. Back to council deliberation, and a motion is required for action.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven eyes, the motion carries.
Thank you. And this brings us back to our public communications section of our agenda. Do we have any public communications?
Thank you, Mayor. We have six speakers. Speakers will have three minutes. A reminder to our speakers, this is for non-agenda-related matters. Our first speaker is Nirvana Kha, followed by Heather May, Hales King, Spencer Norin, and Trevor Gottman will be our final speaker.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. I'd like to talk about today. I thought I saw a sign here on the campus that says today is Constitution Day. Has anybody mentioned that today? They have, you have? I'm kind of late getting here, so. You know, I got a constitutional issue. I got some, the red shirts, the red coats are telling me I can't use my amplifiers out there. And I run puppet shows, and, and some of them have a jaw movement, kind of like a ventriloquist show. I can't do that without a microphone and my, my own music that I recorded, original music, as a backup. And I don't think that my little one-watt amplifier is a disturbance. It's only one watt and runs on batteries. So I feel like my constitutional rights are being trampled on, and hopefully, maybe we can resolve this, possibly. So, you know, you know what's coming next, right? I'm gonna try it again. I'm gonna try this with the world's smallest harmonica.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Heather May. I don't see Heather in the room anymore. Heather? Next speaker, Hales King.
Hello, good, City Council. I actually hadn't planned on talking again here at the end, but I missed last week. My wife and I, we finally moved her firmly back here to Ventura. We spent all of last week driving across from Iowa City all the way here, actually happening to pass through Denver and Utah on the day of, of the assassination last week. So we definitely were very shook up by that. I'd like to thank, this is slightly tangential. I'd like to thank Councilmember Campos for recommending, after the last City Council meeting, where I have public comments about the graffiti, the Ventura Care, sorry, the Ventura Connects app, which we actually made another report on a few days ago. After getting back to Ventura, we saw another swastika on the freeway. So I, I want to, both in light of everything that's happening, remind everyone in our community that we are a community together, that any form of hate is not acceptable, and that we do have to come together. I'd like to thank Councilmember Schumacher for the statements today in response to some of the aggravation that was happening in the room. Yes, we sometimes will have differences of opinions. That doesn't devalue our individuals' characters within that. Councilmember Duran, you are my council member as a member of District 6. I was taken a bit aback by your comments when you were talking about the different things in the city that are, that make our city beautiful, the mountains, the ocean. And then you commented, "I used to think people." And that, that rubbed me in a way that in this divisive climate, I know there were people who were disagreeing with what you were saying, and they were voicing. There was some attempt from the City Council and the mayor to quell that. And that is important, that we do keep an honorable decorum. I just want to say as a constituent that we, we expect that as well. And that rubbed me a little bit because it makes me think as, especially as a transgender person and with your vote for the care policy, that perhaps you don't see every member of Ventura as what makes this area great. And I'd like to remind you that everyone who is here and speaking is coming from their perspective. People who have emailed you are coming from theirs as well. But attacking individuals' characters or the ability of the people in the city to be great, I think, just... That's, that's my main. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Spencer Norin.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Good evening, Mayor and Council. VPD times two, and translation in the back, I appreciate that. What a meeting we've had and how much I've wanted to combine all of Ventura with City Council and the residents that were here. Boy, oh, boy, does everybody want to just say, "Go community, go public voice." And that sounds fine and dandy. But if you use a scale of majority and minority, I think that me and Councilmember Campos can agree with this, being in the stands, that the majority of the time when the public's here in favor of something, we lose the vote. Our community doesn't get listened to in the city of Ventura. So kind of seeing tonight does have a real fresh, but more importantly tonight, who was giving that voice didn't represent Ventura. It was a majority, again, of special interests, new business owners, people that have moved during their last five, 10 years. The one voice of reason was the woman who came up here and lived here for 40-plus years and was a senior citizen, about reopening, right? Getting after what is the intangible about major projects in our community. Because if you really care about the community, said, we'd have a grocery store at the Village Center on the east side. We'd have community meetings about stuff on the east side. But we don't. We keep getting four gas stations and not what the community wants. So why does downtown, the people that come here and rally and force and put bells and whistles and have great designs, Mr. City Manager, why do they seem to get what they want? But then the majority of the community capacity that don't live downtown don't get what they want. Weeds, trash, potholes, the day in and the day out. And we've got another $25, $30, $35 million to spend on a new project? When as a former Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I know we've got over hundreds of millions of dollars of projects, of parks, of infrastructure. But now a bunch of people come into town, start a new group, get a new sexy name, talk about what's going on?
Point of order. I think this topic is already discussed.
You're not the mayor, sir.
That's why I'm doing a point of order.
Mayor, I'm, I'm speaking, okay? Thank you, Councilmember Schumacher. Know your order yourself, okay? It's the mayor's meeting, okay? As you talk about bullying, and you're the one doing that, sir. Everything that you do in this meeting, you discuss and are talking about yourself.
Can you keep the comments to the entire council?
I will, thank you, council. But when council wants to talk about the community, right, as another public speaker, when a public speaker, I, I, I just asked Councilmember Duran, you didn't stop that meeting, right? It's not fair here. And we see that as a community, that's not fair. Mr. Clerk, I would love your help, too. If the mayor can't have fair indecency when a public comment says Mr. Duran's name and I say something, Schumacher, I think it should be your jurisdiction to look over that, sir. We need that, just as we need fair representation for all of our public speaking, from born, raised, transplant, local. I see through all that stuff, trust me. But we see what's going on in this town, that the people that love and care it the most aren't getting their voice being heard. It's being drowned out by money and special interests, and it's not happening moving forward. Thank you.
Marco Cuevas, followed by our final speaker, Trevor Gottman.
Wow. First, I want to thank all of you. I don't think you guys get enough thanks. And I think, you know, Councilmember Schumacher was mentioning that you as a board may disagree with each other, but you still come and collaborate on future issues. You're not always going to agree. We as a community are not always going to agree with your decision. But sometimes, especially tonight, there is one, and we have to call it a victory for what it is. And honestly, as a member of this community, what I, what I just heard insulted me. I am a member of this community. I'm not a special interest. I've lived here my whole life. And if that is something that matters, and I think all voices matter, whether you've lived here one or two years or whether you've lived here 27-plus, almost 28, as I have, or 60, 70, 80-plus years. People are moving to Ventura for various reasons that you as a councilor are deciding to do. And I think you guys don't get enough thanks and appreciation. I do know there are so many issues here that need to get solved, and we get frustrated with you as members of the public. But tonight, honestly, it brought a joy to my heart when we went on break, and I'm just like, wow, we can have these victories. The community showed up, whoever that community was that was here tonight. And to make statements, and just while it's on my head respectfully to Councilmember Duran, yeah, there were voices that weren't here tonight, and that is unfortunate.
So again, let's keep comments to the council as a whole and not an individual, please.
Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you.
I feel that the people that did show up tonight need to be, need to be heard, and they were heard tonight. But anyway, I'm digressing and improvising this comment. I did, in general, just want to thank you as a council for, you know, serving in all your capacities and listening to the public. So thank you.
And our final speaker is Trevor Gottman. Give me one second, Trevor, and I appreciate your patience from the earlier portion, but go ahead. You should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes, Trevor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent, wonderful. What a wonderful meeting, what a wonderful community. City Staff Secretary, thank you. Thank you for your inspection. Thank you, everybody. What I want to share with you is something that I feel we're only just starting on this, this track. I've always spoken about having our off-leash dog areas. I say, these are our best hope for the future. Let us learn to commune with nature. Let us connect with all the creatures around us, not just our human folk. We are, this is a wonderful start. I'm asking you to please keep in mind, this is, as I said, this is a wonderful start. And you started off with the speaker, Assemblyman, who came out and said and spoke about the community and how we can walk from the beach up to, past City Hall, up to the botanical gardens, into the hillsides. I'm asking you to please extend that so that every community member is able to walk into those hillsides, commune with the natural creatures that live up there. My dog takes me out. He's waiting, he's whining, he's waiting for me to take him out now. He keeps terrifying. He doesn't want the coyotes in the streets. He wants them to stay in the hillsides. And that's natural, and that is healthy. So I'm asking you all, please keep that in mind as we go forward. As you saw, we have this wonderful community of people who are really committed to making this place and to making their lives whole. And the only way we do that is to, we've got to look at ourselves. We've got to see ourselves. But how do we see ourselves? We've got to see that in the reflection of each other's eyes. We've got to share what we know and be true to ourselves. Each of us has our own point of view, and we've seen that tonight. It takes courage to be yourself. And I'm asking you all to just be true to who you are and keep doing what you're doing because this is exactly how we get this place back to where we should be. And we can all rest in peace. And I ask you, thank you, thank you, thank you, to just keep, to carry on. I'm here for you. I've always said this. We are look forward to having these hillsides to be where I call the barefoot bathing backyard triathlon, where we can all run footloose into the hillsides, swim up and down the coast, ride our bicycles, and then come back to town and share what we've learned. And then, we have to pause in peace. And now that we have done our job.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you so much. And Mr. City Manager, any comments?
No, Mayor, do not, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, September 23rd. And at this point, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.